Microphone. Oops, sorry. For Wednesday, June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Brian, could we have a roll call?
Yes. Chair Qualisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
And Commissioner Starkweather.
Here.
Terrific, we have a quorum. And just to take a moment, I would like to welcome in particular our two new commissioners, Judy Murphy, Jeffrey Starkweather. All of you have been through the interviews that I was privileged to take part in, and I'm just pleased more than I can say to have you both on the commission. But welcome. The job here is to read everything front to back, think hard about it, and be ready to talk about it with an open mind when the meeting starts. Okay, let's, and I've forgotten. Who did this? Trent? And then, go see. Okay. Then we'll, if you'll, if you will all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Starkweather, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Had my bag down there. Gonna kill myself.
Thank you, sir. You're next. Next meeting. All right. Next on the agenda is Public Communications. That time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting. Yes, let's, we'll just pass it along. For items of city business. Item number one. Okay. Items of city business that are not on the published agenda. And we have, excuse me. We have one card, Mr. Bill Miley.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. I would like to make notice that when you're driving your cars on Ojai Avenue at this time, especially from the Y coming into Ojai Avenue, if you'll notice the difference in road noise, road sound, between the old pavement and the new pavement. The new pavement obviously is black. And many of you know, or maybe you don't know, that's rubberized asphalt. Now, it's been used by Caltrans for maybe fifteen years or so. And it reduces the road noise, not from the mufflers, but it reduces the road noise from the tires and the car and the engines and such, almost, in my opinion, forty percent. So you drive along on the old pavement and it's, oh. You come to the new pavement and it's, oh. So when I sit and see fresh and have lunch and can't talk because of the road noise and the mufflers, once that's all paved, and I don't know whether that's going to be all paved, because I just talked to our City Public Works Director, and she's going to ask Caltrans whether they're going to continue through the arcade. That will reduce the sound level in the downtown area amazingly. And it will benefit everybody. Tourists, visitors, the business people, the people who work in the businesses. And if we can keep that going year after year, I think it's only good for about ten years, and it wears out. It's made by recycled tires. It's a wonderful addition to the roadways. And I'm really pleased they're doing it now. Years ago in Clark Park, when it was dedicated, my wife and I were standing there with other folks. And she said to me, I can't hear the road noise. And they had just paved the area from the Y down to Cuyahoga, and you couldn't hear the cars going both ways. Well, you could, but if you, it wasn't. Anyway, I wanted to make that point because it fits into our noise element and our noise ordinance. And I'm campaigning now, I have a chance to talk to Jamie Fleming, the CEO, even though he's in the state. And we talked about adding an element to the branding of Ojai that we're quiet value. So I'm even going to talk quieter now. Thanks.
We're dark and quiet. Can I have a question from that? Is that possible? So we are paving as part of the budget, I understand, from being at the meeting.
It's not paving the state highways, though.
No, not saying the same. What jurisdiction, because I haven't read the whole code yet. We made it through page sixty-five or something, and the ones that we were doing tonight. What jurisdiction do we have over paving?
The city paves non-state highways on a regular cycle. Whether it's a sufficiently short cycle is another topic. But the paving program comes out every two years, or has, at least in the recent past. And it's all residential streets. And I'm sure Lucas could fill us in on that.
So I was talking about what jurisdiction the commission has, if anything, over. Okay. Well.
I doubt that it's any. I think it's the City Council, at the recommendation of the Public Works Department, determines which streets are going to be paved in each cycle.
So, but we do have complete streets, which is kind of related to paving, I guess.
A little bit, yes. Complete streets is a, is a standing subcommittee, I guess, of this commission.
Part of our ordinance, because it's incorporated.
Oh, yes, sure.
So is it going to be streets and complete streets? Is that going to be part of the general plan, an element or part of an element or something?
Complete streets is.
I'd rather not get in.
The circulation element of the general plan, so.
So the, one point, it's, we're not having a deliberation regarding this item.
No.
I said questions.
I know it's questions, but the reality is, is that it's public comment. We can certainly take back, take that information back and then come back at a subsequent meeting.
Sorry.
Yep.
I have one here that says Bob, but it doesn't say which item you want to speak on. Is this?
This is the open, this is the open.
Okay.
That's why I didn't write a number on it. And so for the new commissioner, we have a thirty-year paving cycle. Our roads were out every fifteen years, and we have a thirty-year paving cycle. That's why we need to raise the TOT another twenty-five percent again and to get some more money. Anyhow, I wasn't going to speak about that. I was looking at the agenda. One of the things that was started here a few years ago, and I know we had an epic event where we needed to kind of cease normal business. And that was taking a look, evaluating, dropping, reconstructing and modifying our city codes and ordinances on Title X. That thing stopped, it stopped, and it stopped. And it's really time to make this the highest priority. It seems like the highest priority now is historic. I think that's fine. We'll hurry up and get the votes, get this thing over with and historic, and then maybe we can go back. Our codes are unintelligible. They say nothing. Again, they are word salad. Harmonious architectur is embarrassing. When we have words that are so vague as to have no relevance or meaning, give no instruction to applicants, give no one an idea of where they need to go by reading our codes, it's really terrible. I mean, we're supposed to be about zoning and land use in Title X. Unfortunately, you guys have got design review because about fifteen years ago, there was a little tiff with City Council, and they decided to get rid of our design review group, and they decided to put it together. That was an unfortunate thing. They should have kept that thing separate. So I would hope that you folks can move as fast as you can, get back on some type of a track and start moving through these. When we did Title Nine, we found out some amazing things. A third of Title Nine wasn't Title Nine. We gave a bunch of that garbage to Title X. The other third, we threw in the trash because it had nothing to do with the city of Ojai. And then the other third, we went through and updated and did some modifications. And so I would hope you guys would make that your highest priority because it is very tough. We have a great restaurant I went to in Carpinteria because they couldn't open up a vegan restaurant here because the handicap van parking lane was six inches too narrow, which didn't really matter because the city-owned alley behind that particular block of Ojai is not maintained or paved, and you would never take a handicap van down there. And we lost a hell of a good restaurant. So I would hope you guys would go back and also review this parking issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And in a partial response to that, Lucas and I are working on the updates. We have three different batches of updates right now and hope to get into more of them to recommend to the City Council. Yes, sir? Of course. The chair recognizes our council member, William.
Given that he just mentioned that alley, yeah, I want to mention that alley, too. Because that's been, I've been, that's been an issue with me because if you look at our code, it says that the preferred access for parking is through an alley and not off the main highway. And yet the city does not maintain that alley, so it's not really usable for the purpose that our code elevates it for as a priority. And these are the kind of things that frustrate me. Thank you.
And which alley is that? Which alley?
The alley where, you know, the alley where you turn off a park if you're going to go by, get to go the back way into the medicine shop? Okay. That's a city alley.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
And if you look at the, and there's parking lots off that alley, and if you look at our code, it says the preference for parking access is for those businesses, it's in fact that kind of access.
Parking off the alley, yes.
Yeah, to access through the alley, not off the street. And yet the city doesn't maintain the alley. You know, it's the kind of thing that frustrates one.
May I make a suggestion that you talk to the City Council about?
Yeah, I have talked to, I have talked to the staff at some length.
Or maybe even the Public Works Director.
Yes, I have. I just thought, but that is the kind of thing that's of some interest.
You're expanding our scope as we talk.
Okay, I have a card here from Barbara Bowman, but it says item number one. I think you mean item number three, the Formula Business Ordinance?
Yes, I listened to these.
Okay.
Okay.
So our consent items, then, there's no more public communications. Anyone, anyone in the waiting room, Brian?
No, no one's on, has their hand raised.
No hand raised in the, in the waiting room. Okay. Then we will move on to the consent items. The minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, May eighteenth and June first of this year. Do any commissioners have refinements to those minutes? Ordinarily, the newest members would recuse themselves since they didn't attend.
Definitely.
On the other hand, I understand, Epi, that it is legal to vote on past minutes if you have in fact.
It is.
Watched the whole minutes.
I was there.
Watched the whole minutes of the meeting. And, because what we're talking about is, are the minutes reflective of what happened in the meeting? So, correct.
Yeah, I think it looks, it looks fine to me.
I think they looked fine to me. Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items one and two. So move.
My second.
Okay, thank you. And any discussion?
I'm going to recuse myself.
Yeah, right, right. Okay. Then Brian, let's call the roll on the consent items, please.
Okay, Qualisi.
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Recused.
Thank you.
And Starkweather is recused.
Yep.
Okay. Very good. Disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. We have one, two. We have two sites. The AT&amp;T Switch Building and the three forty-five East Ojai Avenue, which is where the Topa Brewery and the Dry Cleaners and Decor are all housed. And there's something else, there's a fourth business in there. I think, or restaurant inside the brewery.
Yeah.
And so I'll start because you're new. But I am familiar with both sites, have visited both sites and had no ex parte contacts. That's discussions with principals about the cases.
The same.
Yeah, familiar with the sites, no ex parte contacts.
Familiar with the sites, no ex parte conversations.
I've visited both sides. In fact, one of them I visited today, but I have not talked to anybody.
Okay, very good. Then let's move on to the discussion item, number three.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Sure.
We don't approve minute, I mean agendas?
No.
Okay, okay. Just wondered about that, okay.
No, Lucas and I talk about the agenda ahead of time. And if there are two commissioners that wish to have something agendized at a future meeting, just say so.
I see.
And it shall be done.
Okay.
Takes two.
Yeah, it's typically done during the commission period, comment period.
At the very end, commissioners' reports or whatever.
Okay.
Then we can, you can bring that up. And if there are two that ask for it, the City Council does the same thing. If two, if two council members want something agendized, it will be done.
Okay, standard procedure, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Item three, a progress report on the Formula Business Regulations. Lucas, will you lead us through the minefield, please?
Yes, thank you. I, so I wasn't going to give the background, but then I realized that we have two new commissioners tonight. So I am going to go through the history, the background. I know for the three of you, it's, it's, actually for Bennett, it might be somewhat new for you, too. So we've actually only got two commissioners that have experience and have gone through this from about a year ago. So I'm going to go through the background. I'm going to talk about the progress up to this point. And then just kind of talk about the meeting that took place, the Zoom meeting that took place on June first. And I know I've got representatives here, and I think there's people online as well that can, that can also take some questions as well. But we'll need to open that up for public comment at that point. So let me just go through the background first, and then we'll go from there. Kind of just unpack it here. So bear in mind here, so in two thousand and seven, the Formula Business Ordinance was originally adopted. So that's fifteen years ago. Fast forwarding then about five years, there was a minor change to the ordinance itself that spoke to formula businesses not including automated standalone vending machines and provided some, some, I would say, some minor cleanups to it as well. So that's, that's the ordinance that we have today. And that ordinance we have today has two pieces. One is a number in terms of more than ten. So a business that's more than ten and a business that fits criteria for two of roughly the seven that are identified within our code currently. And those seven include standardized array of merchandise or standardized menu, standardized facade, standardized decor or color scheme, that's the third one. Fourth is uniform apparel. Fifth would be standardized signage. Sixth would be trademark or service mark. I don't have a seventh. Actually, trademark or service mark, it's a sixth or seventh. That's, that's, that rounds up our seven. So two of the seven, that's how we, anytime a business comes in that wants a business license, we put them to the test for that. And that's, that's our standard procedure.
Part of the ordinance, though, is that gasoline stations, financial services business, and real estate businesses are exempted from this ordinance.
They are not specifically identified as being exempted.
It's really, at the moment, in my opinion, is it's, it's to protect purveyors of fast food.
Fast food, retail, it's really any of those, those businesses. It includes service businesses as well, unless we've, unless we're potentially identifying ones that we're wanting to carve out or exempt from our.
Sorry, we haven't excluded anything.
No.
Okay.
Not at this point.
Statutory, at least.
Yeah, so let me just, let me just go through gasoline station. If it's an existing business, then yes, obviously, pre-two thousand and seven, two thousand and eleven, yes, those are considered to be exempt following our code. We don't have a timeline for which those businesses came online. So yes to the existing businesses. No, if a gas station wanted to come in today, that was Shell, or that was Chevron, or some other nationally recognized business, then yes, it would have to follow those regulations. It's not expressly identified as being exempt. So I want to just go through this quickly here. So in April of two thousand and twenty-one, last year, a little over a year ago, City Council reviewed the matter and referred formula business ordinances to the Planning Commission for review and identified if revisions are necessary. The number of businesses was initially discussed, but then there was also the broader perspective of the ordinance to be reviewed as well. And really, that was, it was a numbers issue. That's what was really kind of being discussed in the beginning. So leading forward, a month later, the Planning Commission reviewed this matter, received public comment with research on, for online sales regulations. The review of other jurisdictions, staff took a look at that as well, as well as the downtown description, definitions to clarify the intent. Review and analyzing the lower, and lowering the established number from the ten or more, or more than ten is the way in which the code currently reads, minus the moratorium, which I get to in a moment. Methods to establish ownership and then small, medium, large business definitions, which are identified within the code. There really is no definition for those. In June of two thousand and twenty-one, City Council adopted a moratorium lowering the number from eleven or more to five or more, including businesses with one or more, include businesses with one or more establishments, and adding collective marketing as a new standardized feature for formula businesses. Now, collective marketing really codes both online presence as well as a physical presence. That's kind of the simple way to identify collective marketing. It's the combination of the two. In July, a public hearing was held at Planning Commission. And the reason why it was a public hearing is because what was brought before this commission was a draft ordinance. That draft ordinance requested, requested really kind of a change in the number, and it included obviously the collective marketing aspect to it as well. There was quite a few businesses that came out, asked for additional information, clarification. Certainly, the commission at that point did a deeper dive into it and ultimately decided, hey, let's take a deeper look at this aspect. And from that standpoint, staff went back to the drawing board and kind of took a step back in terms of bringing, instead of bringing back an ordinance, started reaching out to the business community and starting those conversations. So that's where we've been since, I would say, August of last year, leading up to where we're at today. The, the meeting that I also want to reference is just recently in June, June first, there was a Zoom meeting that took place with the business, business community. Nineteen, in talking with the chamber, working with Jamie Fleming, he reached out to nineteen different businesses of those nineteen, and he began confirmation to nine of those businesses attending the Zoom meeting. Unfortunately, only four ended up showing up. But from that, there was quite a bit of discussion, collective discussion in regards to, to potential changes, not necessarily related to the restaurant aspects, but related to the retail. And, and I think that's really kind of in the focus. And I think that's what you're seeing with the comments that have come in. More focused towards the retail component than it is to the restaurant or any other business or use aspect as it relates to it. So I think the focus tonight is likely to be discussing kind of that retail component, but also having kind of a broader discussion of what the formula business does, how it, how it performs when businesses come in and, and just kind of the ultimate results from that, I suppose. So I should also mention within this timeline that there was a moratorium that was passed, and that was in August. Well, first in June and then continued in August of two thousand and twenty-one.
That can go for up to two years, I think.
Yeah, so right now, it's, it's set to expire on August third of this year. There could be a renewal for an additional year, but that would obviously be something that council would have to, to consider. So tonight, what we're looking to do is, and it's part of the recommendations or the considerations for recommendations to City Council in regards to two pieces that came out of the discussion with the chamber and the business owners on June first. And that is two pieces. Looking at a separate criteria for retail formula businesses and then reducing the overall number of establishments from the more than ten, which is what our current code states. However, the moratorium that we have has five or more. So that moratorium has.
Kind of meaningless since it's a moratorium and nothing happens, but.
Right. But in that time, we continue to have businesses come in and either do a renewal or it's a new business that's coming in.
Less than four, they could come in.
We're reviewing, yeah, we're reviewing those on a case by case.
Renewals don't fall under the moratorium, it's only new businesses.
Renewals don't, but new businesses do, yes. So I think it's important to, to note that. So it's the, it's the reduction from ten to roughly five, and then the separation of the criteria, which currently has the criteria across the board. So it's restaurants, it's retail, it's any of those uses that would potentially be coming in that are new would be then tested against the formula business ordinance. So what came out of that meeting on June first was carving out a specific section that focuses only on retail. And then obviously having that reduction across the board from the more than ten to basically less than five. Or five, five or, five or, five or more is probably the better way to describe that. So with that, that kind of concludes my, the overview and presentation. I, I do know that there's going to be quite a bit of discussion and Q and A that comes from this, so. I opened it up to the, to the commission.
In short, my understanding of it is that the changes that have come about so far are in reducing the number of franchise outlets, or whatever you might want to call them, from more than ten to five or more. And also in adding to the seven criteria, one or more additional criteria that could serve to identify an applicant as, as a formula business.
Right.
Okay.
But only the number is, the question, sorry. Only the number is in the moratorium at this point, I assume.
The moratorium has the number, but it also has the collective marketing criteria as well.
And it defines collective marketing?
And, and one of the, one of the reasons that we have waited in between here is that collective marketing is not, is not absolutely clear to the commission. So what do we do with it?
So you have a moratorium that's not clear, in other words?
No, I think.
No, no, no.
No, I think we do. I don't, I don't, I don't want the point to get across that the moratorium isn't clear, because it is. The, because we've been using that to test against any new businesses that have been coming.
Moratorium uses existing code plus what the City Council did last year.
Right.
But the terms, the terms in particular collective marketing were not clear to the commission, and I think staff has been working on that. And my, my personal concern is that if we are going to ban a business on the basis of some criteria, that we had better have clear and legally defensible criteria. And so I think that's part of what you've been working on.
Right. And I think really what, if we were to boil it down, I know I have an attachment that kind of goes into some detail on a lot of those questions that the commission had from roughly a year ago. It's important to note that we're answering those questions, but then we're also looking at kind of what the business community is looking for. And I think we've got to figure out the balance between those two. I know a lot of times this body asks for, you know, what are other jurisdictions doing? Or what, in terms of, you know, clarifying some of that. That's certainly embedded within here. And I think it provides some pretty clear understanding of how those other communities have handled it. Obviously, Ojai is unique, and certainly we want to continue to continue that unique branding to a certain degree, but it's also the body of this commission to kind of make that determination as a recommendation to City Council as well, so.
Okay. We don't have an applicant in this case. We have, we have staff, you've told us, you've given us the context of why we're here talking about this.
Yeah, it was-
Is there, is there something that staff is putting forward to say, we recommend that the commission recommend this to city council? And if so, kind of outline that?
Yeah, if you look at the first page, it, it speaks to two pieces. One is review the progress regarding this item and discuss the matter further. The second piece is provide additional direction and potential recommendations to the city council on points outlined at the Chamber of Commerce-led local business meeting of June first. And that includes two specific items, the separate criteria for retail formula businesses, and then reducing the overall number of business establishments that qualify a formula business from the ten to five, to the five. Says more than ten to the more than five.
Okay. Any, any questions of staff at this point?
I've got a lot, so we take turns, or?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. This letter we got from a whole bunch of business people, one of whom's here tonight, Barbara.
Yeah, there's about forty-two in total that signed it, yeah.
Does that, because none of us were at the Zoom meeting, obviously, and there was no minutes of it. Is, does that reflect?
Yes. That's about that.
Okay, yes, well, I'm just one of the, yeah, okay. Ask, look at that question.
Does it reflect the-
What, the input you got from the Zoom meeting?
It does, yes.
Okay, cool. And, looking at this moratorium, it has language about marketing, but it doesn't really define it. It's, that's my reading of it anyway.
Yeah, read the collective marketing out loud, if you could. Because it has collective marketing, and then it describes it afterwards, right?
It says, standardized collective marketing of the business proposed to be located within city, including but not limited to via digital or online means in conjunction with other qualifying establishments.
Yeah, so that's, that's about as, as details you're going to get.
So, let me see if I understand this. If a business has more than one business in town, but they're not the same kind of business? But they market together, is that collective marketing?
Yeah, it's both the physical and the online presence.
Because we have something like Sage and the, the Wainboro Bridge, and they're all owned by the same person, and I, I don't know if they collectively market or not, but I mean, they seem to self, you know, promote, I'm not against it, I'm just saying, does that apply?
I think that was part of the, I think that was part of the idea with it, is if you do have, say, for instance, one business owner that owns two different businesses, collective marketing, I think, is where, where we were looking at that.
So, you only count that collective marketing once? Because you could have three businesses, and each of them have their online stuff. Would they, would that be six businesses, or?
It would be more, yeah, it would certainly be more than one, because we're also including the online presence as well.
So, if each business has an online presence, they're, they're two businesses. Is that how you're interpreting that?
Please, you had to clarify that a little bit more. So, you're saying there's one physical business?
So, let's just say there's three physical businesses.
And then it's, it's identified online, and there's two more?
They market together, okay, but they do it online, and they all have, you know, the similar names, and you can go from one or the other. Are they, is, does each online marketing count as a separate business?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Interesting.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
That's a follow-up to that. We have a, a shop on the main street, and it has a, is, the people who own that also own one on South Montgomery, no, North Montgomery. And they're similar stores. And let's say each of them, I don't know if they do, but let's say each of them also has an online presence. Does that mean that's four, four, and, and they can have no more?
You got to remember, these are existing businesses, so if a new-
Yeah, I know, I know.
So, let's say there are those four, let's just use that as an example.
One of them just started two years ago, so.
Let's also say, for instance, another one opens up under that same criteria, and we end up doing our due diligence to, to figure that out. And let's say it gets it to the number of ten, or five, depending on what the ordinance states specifically. Then we've also got to look at, in combination with that, the criteria. So, we start really kind of diving into the details of it, the seven that I identified previously, as the trademarks and the uniforms and the, and the site.
Let's say it's got none of that. It's just got common ownership and, and they, when they buy, when they buy something-
Common ownership is not a term that he mentioned this time.
It's collective marketing.
And I don't, and I don't recall seeing it in here either. Collective marketing, I took to mean if there is a, a single website that has all, all two or three or whatever of these businesses, then that's collective marketing. But, you're saying-
That's true, because-
You're saying a website with three businesses?
That's the same thing as-
On it is three businesses, as well as the three physical businesses?
Well, what I was referring to in my question was, sometimes, businesses all have their separate names, you know? But they're connected, and so, they may each have their own websites, but they link people to the other website, because they're, you know, associated businesses.
People link to other websites all the time.
So, they're trying to promote their fellow business, who own by the same person, so I'm just, you know? Maybe I'm going crazy here, but.
No, that, those are called, those are called affiliates, but I don't think the city can regulate anything like that. We can't regulate online marketing and affiliate marketing.
It sounds like we are.
No, collective marketing doesn't include online marketing.
So, think about it this way. When we're doing our due diligence for a new business, remember, it's a new business. Any existing businesses we're talking about are established. And to a certain degree, I'll use the term grandfathered. However, however, if, for instance, a new business comes in, and we start doing our due diligence, and online, we're seeing five or six businesses, and we start looking at those businesses individually, that's really where, I would say, the collective marketing piece comes into play. Which gets to your point as well. If there's an online presence, which is what I'm talking about as well, I think we're on the same page, we're just saying different words. If there's an online presence that then shows that there's other businesses, physical locations in other areas, those all count. Towards the ten, or the five, depending on, right now, it's five.
But we're, we'd be really doing four, aren't we? Which we're doing five or more?
It's five or more right now, so if you qualify as a five.
So, four, four is what we allow, then, then.
Well, if you, if you have three that each have an online presence, that's six.
And you pass the number.
If you're counting the online presence as a different business from the physical business, that's what has me confused right now.
No, 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 that's, if that's the way that I just described it, that's incorrect.
Okay, good.
That's incorrect. It's a, it's a one business, one physical location.
But you, I thought I read in here that if they are online sales, like, anyway, this is in the letter here, retailers who can also include online web retail sales as a store outlet. So, I got the impression that we were trying to say that if they had an online web sale, that counts as two businesses.
No, it would still, it would still be one.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, we wouldn't, we're not double counting them. It's just saying that the presence of them being online is the one.
But if they're on a, if they're in a collective online presence, that's, that's one of the criteria now that could make it a formula business.
Right, it's the additional criteria through the moratorium.
Okay, I had another question. The beginning of the current formula business says the purpose is to maintain the tourist-attracting, small-town character of the city. Now, my reading, what the, the business people that are giving input are asking for is really more of a maintaining local business than promoting tourism through local business. And it seems like our purpose, if that's the intent, and that's why they're pushing the, the issue of buying power of a, of a, of a chain store or something, then it seems like we ought to have our intent more in line with what they're talking about. And I would add one other thing. This is just a comment, but if, looking at the San Francisco one, their purposes, I thought that was wonderful. That was really, I don't know if you've looked at it, but a really a good description of much, I, I think would give us much more strength in terms of if anyone tried to challenge it, but also, it would tell the citizens exactly why we're doing it, because it actually has some good information in there about like, a locally-owned business has three-point something, I can't remember the number now, more, what do you call it, multiplier effect. And, and, you know, and that's always one of the biggest arguments for local business, which I'm totally in favor of. So, I think I would like us to see maybe expanding our purposes in this ordinance. If we're going to go ahead and, you know, tighten it up in that way.
Okay. Commissioner Bennett, do you have any questions of staff at this point?
The, the recent spike in interest around this issue, has, what you have been hearing as, as the front line on it, has it changed, has the issues changed? Like employment, this, this one around the end of Cattywampus and the new business called Blue, and it, it having a, an advantage, because they're, the owners of Blue have other ownerships of other things, so they can use that economic muscle to drive a better margin from their wholesalers. That came, you know, when that, when that issue came up, it's sort of like, whoa, that's the first I've heard about that in the public discourse. You know, we're all, we're all aware of the fact that we don't have, except for those things which have, and grandfathered is not the right word, it's really, but, but have those businesses that got here before the ordinance got here. But I always presumed it was to encourage the diversity of small, locally-owned businesses. And the whole idea of somebody in a bigger business having a better margin as a result of it having other sources of, or other, other places that the merchandise could be sold, is new. And is, it, it, when did, is it the Blue, is the issue around Blue and Cattywampus where that came from? Or, you know?
For the purposes of discussing tonight, I would stay away from calling out specific businesses. But there is, in every case, especially even when this ordinance was first drafted, the, the ground zero. Something happens that then causes a reaction. And I think you're hitting on a point. That's a reaction to something that happened. Something that happened pursuant to our code, and certainly identifying an issue that the business community had identified. And then, obviously, council had identified and asked for this body to review and have staff do further analysis. The same thing is true when the ordinance was adopted in two thousand and seven. Something happened that caused a reaction. So, I, I think it's important to note that, that yes, in two thousand and twenty-one, there was a business that came in, and it caused some concern that was raised by the community, business owners as well. And that's, that was cause for concern from the council, which is the reason for the moratorium that we have in place today, and the reason why we're, we're taking such a due diligence approach to this review.
And, current businesses, if this moves forward, are, will be exempt, right? Is that correct?
Businesses that have been established, yes.
Unless there's a retroactivity clause in the new ordinance, which, you know, is probably going to, which I think would spur a legal response. But, it's certainly something that could be done.
Right, okay.
I mean, it certainly could be discussed.
Just a question for you, oh, sorry, John Jamie.
Well, I, I've got a bunch of things, and I guess they're just sort of more granular, but they're around this, because this issue came out of, you know, and I started thinking it through, and the idea of coming into town and not seeing a lot of Wendy's and Taco Bells, and, and for that matter, Starbucks, all, all positive in my mind, I, you know, I think that's great. This is a town where you find local merchants who are, they're selling in many, in many places essentially the same goods, but they're, but they're owned and operated, and the formulas are developed for the purpose of the one store that happens to be here. And you don't see people wearing the same badge that they wear, you know, five miles down the road, and twenty-five miles down the road, and a hundred and twenty-five miles down the road.
Again, I'll men, I'll mention, please don't mention businesses. Let's talk generally about business types or use types, and not call out specific businesses.
I, I, did I call out a-
Yes, you did.
The franchises in the first part, that's okay.
Leave franchise names out of the discussion.
Thank you.
But, this idea of margin, the, the lack of competitiveness of a, of a local store with somebody who has economic, the ability to economically compete because they may have other locations, is a completely new thought to me. I mean, and, I just, I, I'm troubled by that, just because I think there are other things which cause organizations to have specific additional competitive, you know, benefits. And we get into a whole commercial code here that, for instance, there's a, there's a, a large multi-product store in the middle of the arcade, which, which shall go nameless, but it's been here for a hundred years. And they, they have a brand of men's shirt, and they're the only purveyors of that men's shirt in town. If they, and they, their volume is, is high enough that somebody else would never be able to probably get to the volume which would give them the ability to get the kind of discounts and other commercial benefits. So, all of a sudden, you're, you jump potentially from, you, you jump to size being a determinant. And are we to be thinking that that is also then potentially a necessary measure of, well, you're going to have a big store, and you're going to be buying a lot more goods of this type, and you're going to get a better deal than John down the street, or up the street, who's been here, and so.
You mean from the retail aspect, as a retail store coming in?
I'm saying-
Having a square footage?
A retail, a small retail store, and there's a larger retail store, and they're competing, and the larger retail store is able to get a better margin.
So, that's, there's, there's a phrase that was, that was used several times, and I think it was included in the information that was provided by the business community, and that is buying power.
Right.
I think that's kind of what you're getting at, to a certain degree. And I, I think, I'd, I'd turn to the business community and have individuals kind of describe that a little bit better. I am not within the business community and, and have even a hard time understanding the buying power aspect as well. But I think the, I think the business owners can probably do an excellent job of explaining what that means, and the impacts that it has on those businesses.
Can I follow on Jamie's question?
Sure.
Because, what you're talking about is purchasing power. The ability to buy goods. And actually, this thing is talking about marketing power, which is a different form of power, although the two can combine. My question is this. There are, in this country, because I remember dealing with this before, purchasing co-ops that sometimes small businesses become part of, like bookstores. How does that in any way relate to this? If you're part of a purchasing co-op, you know, like Barts, I think they are, in fact, does that, is that-
Yeah, it's not collective marketing, because you're not presenting that business arrangement to the general public necessarily.
But if you had, if you had four bookstores, and they all were part of the national-
And they all had, and they all had different names?
Different names.
And different ownership? And they were not on a common website? But they did purchase things together? That's the situation you're talking about.
But they don't actually purchase together, they're part of a co-op that purchased them, but yes.
Okay. But I think, I think that does not fall under this formula business ordinance.
Yeah, that wouldn't.
Okay.
But there are others, if, if a particular business had enough purchasing power, it could conceivably say to a wholesaler, I want to be your sole out, retail outlet in this city. That would depend on how much purchasing power there is. And I suspect that's an issue here as well. But I don't see it covered in the formula business ordinance. It covers how many outlets are there and what are the characteristics of those outlets?
So can I ask attorney something because follow up on your question?
The attorney is here to answer legal questions.
That's the question. When do we get to the point that we're, we're regulating commerce? Is there some, some aspect of what we're regulating that we're violating the U.S. Constitution by regulating interstate commerce?
Right, so the, the way that the ordinance and the moratorium are drafted is intended to regulate land use. And if by, uh, there's a kind of ancillary byproduct that it regulates commerce, there've been cases upholding, uh, cities' ability to do that in a limited, limited manner. As, but, uh, I would encourage the planning commission to focus on its ambit, which is, um, land use authority, which is why, um, kind of this ordinance and, uh, most of the, is focusing on, one of the, the main aspects here is number of locations, again, which is focusing on, on this. But, uh, uh, formula business ordinances have been upheld, um, in California and across the nation as not violating, um, the commerce clause or the dormant commerce clause of the constitution.
But, but the city, does the city have the power to say to an individual business owner, you are allowed or you are not allowed to purchase product at the wholesale level from any particular other private business? Or you are not allowed to do this, but, but you are at a certain price, but not another certain price? I think that's outside the power of the city.
Right, so that there are multiple questions there kind of to unpack, but, but generally my understanding is that, yes, that would be a kind of, city would be overstepping its authority. The city has the ability to impose, um, sanctions, but that's not, you know, saying like no, no trade with, you know, the country of Myanmar.
They'd be hard to legally defend, yeah.
Hard to legally defend, hard to enforce. As well as, uh, I think the, the risk of, uh, overstepping the city's authority is, it would be quite large there.
And, and so the city takes the approach of limiting the number of similar outlets, shall we say, and other characteristics like collective marketing, however we wind up defining that, as an indirect way of trying to manage purchasing power. Would that be fair to summarize?
In my understanding, that would be fair to summarize. As part of the planning commission's discussion, along with, um, what else is, other, other things that are being bandied about.
Wouldn't it be better not to mention purchasing power in our purposes? Because then we're talking about land use and if we start talking about purchasing power, we're looking at.
Right.
More commerce.
Right.
I mean, the San Francisco, uh, ordinance mentions a lot of things, but they don't mention purchasing power. They're getting at it indirectly.
Because I think that's outside the, the city's purview.
Right, and.
Yeah, I think it's, it's a hidden goal.
Yeah.
That, that is to be achieved with certain other restrictions.
Yeah.
And in regards to Commissioner Starkweather's comment earlier about the, the purpose section of the ordinance, generally, uh, we recommend that the purposes section be kept, um, quite succinct because generally these sections, uh, only get you in trouble.
We fill it with vague language like preserving the, the bucolic atmosphere and unique whatever of Ojai.
I believe we, we said it on small town character.
Small town character, there you go.
I would say, and, and definitely reflective of the, uh, actual state of, uh, Ojai, its beautiful downtown area.
Uh, Commissioner Bennett, were you, have, have you asked all the questions you intended or do you have more?
Let me try another one because I'm, I'm aware of, of a business.
What we're trying to do here is, is clarify.
Right.
What staff is presenting to us.
And I, I, let's say, and I'm not saying he has any interest, but Dwayne Bocalli, who has two restaurants, wanted to, a person like Dwayne Bocalli, a restaurateur, like. Somebody who sounds like, uh, somebody, somebody has a, a restaurant concept here with, um, you know, with, uh, type, style, logo and trade, what's called trade dress, which is identifiable to somebody upon first looking at, has a similar menu and so on and so forth. Decides they want to take something they've developed here and take it to other places. And the first one is fine and the second one is fine and the third one's fine and the fourth one's fine. But when he gets to the fifth, fifth one, then, um, Ojai Road TV can't have another one or it's gotta shut the original one down in Ojai.
Right, so let's stay away from business names, but, but think through.
Uh, let me just disclose, I'm, I'm an investor in Ojai Road.
I think what he's saying is, is concurrent businesses expand beyond five if they grow and they find a need for that. And I think we have a, we have comments in here for that, right?
Yeah.
We allow for that.
The, the, the original, the seed business here, once properly licensed to operate here, I believe can expand without limit, without, without breaking this ordinance. And I'm not sure why having a second one in the city breaks the ordinance. If we had, if we had two businesses with the same name, one at the east end, one at the west end of the city, does that vi, given the potential that some of these other seven or eight criteria might also fit? But does having two businesses in the city violate the ordinance in and of itself? Is that a, is that one of the criteria that's bad?
If it's only two businesses, no. But let's just use the example of a business that established as an Ojai, grows nationwide and then wants to open.
To beyond five.
Yes, and then wants to open another business in Ojai.
Now.
Okay.
Now question, is it world, is it nationwide or worldwide? It's worldwide.
Well, I mean, I'm saying nationwide, but.
Galactically.
Uh, there, there are ordinances out there that identify.
Mars.
Not necessarily nationwide, but they do mention worldwide.
Yeah, Malibu says worldwide.
Yeah, worldwide, yeah.
Actually, you're not banning them, you're just making them have a conditional use permit under this or section.
Conditional use permit with certain criteria, qualifying criteria.
So they still could apply. And if they show that they, they're in the character of the city, they could still be approved.
If, if the number settles at five and the one that started here grows to ten, then trying to put a second one here would be an eleventh.
Yeah, but.
And that second one could not do it because there are now ten or more.
So does the ten, is that an absolute prohibition? Or is it, it puts you into the conditional use category, doesn't it?
You fall into that category, yes.
Yeah, so you can still apply to be approved, but you're, it says here, a formula business may only be established on the site after obtaining a conditional use permit from the city from the operation. So there's, they, if they meet that criteria, then they have to have a conditional use permit. So they're not just banned, except for a few cases.
So they come back to the planning commission and say, may I?
In a public area.
Right, if I may jump in here also, so the ordinance is currently drafted. So in addition to the regular, uh, CUP findings, um, the commission would have to, to make additional findings that the proposed formula business would not result in over-concentration of formula businesses. It will contribute, won't, will contribute to the appropriate balance of small, medium and large businesses, um, as Lucas mentioned earlier, um, and that, uh, it will preserve and enhance the city's small town character. So, again, there's, that's what would come, those are the, uh, additional factors.
There's one section below that, no permit application, and it looks, sounds like you're talking about food trucks. But it says short order or quick service food and drink, serves food and drink primarily in a paper, plastic or disposable containers.
That's one of the reasons this is.
Is that why that is?
This is very specific to, um, to, to food, restaurants. Brick and mortar is really the part of it.
But don't we have a place on, I won't mention the name, that there is no, actually you don't go into the business? People stand in line because I see them on, on Signal Street, I think, is it Signal Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, Signal Street. There's a line that they're getting tacos and stuff and, I don't know, do they do it on? I don't think, if they're takeout, I don't think they're giving.
It's all takeout.
So they're giving paper plates or some plastic plates, they have to. You're not gonna take a permanent plate and give it to somebody to walk away with it. So, uh, wouldn't they fall under that? Of course, that's an existing business.
Yeah, I mean, one, it's an existing business, but also I think it's important to note that, that is a restaurant, actually.
Yeah, they have seats in there.
So we've got to, we have to go through that test. So if it's a new business, we'd be asking those specific questions and vetting that out.
But it says no permit, so they, seems to me they would meet that criteria, they wouldn't even be able to be there.
No permit sure sounds like they can't be here.
Yeah, it says short order cook, which they are, food and drink in plastic or paper disposable containers. And then the third one is payment by, made by the customer before the food or drink is consumed. Of course, you got to pay people when you're in a line to get stuff, so they meet all that criteria.
Sure.
Yes, but there aren't, but there aren't five or more of them.
Right.
No, but this sound like it was a separate prohibition, that, this doesn't say anything about four, five or more.
Can I pitch up there?
Sure.
The way I, I read the ordinance is that, uh, this is under section ten, uh, two point seventeen thirteen. Subsection B is that one in, subsection one and two kind of have to be read together. So the, the section two that Commissioner Starkweather is referring to says, no permit application of any kind shall be accepted or processed for a formula business that also possesses at least two of the following characteristics. And then the characteristics are.
First it has to be a formula business, then you look at the criteria.
Correct, so if it's retail, then we, we kind of go under, you know, the, the, here are the seven, uh, trade dress and, and the like. And if it's a business that specializes in short order or those other characteristics, there's a, a different test. It's a, so it's a different branch of the tree.
So there's, the, the food businesses on Metellaha Street, I won't mention the names of them, but they're all owned by the same person. If they did a short order thing on, on, uh, Metellaha Avenue, because their customers wanted it, then they would be in violation, they couldn't do it.
Only if it's a new business.
New business, okay.
Yes.
And, and it's only a formula business if there's enough of them.
Yeah, I know there's at least four, but I don't know how many, how many that owner owns.
Yeah, so it's the numbers and it's criteria, so it's the combination of the two.
So the fifth one, they would become a formula business by applying for the fifth business.
Right, so then we look at the criteria piece then as well.
Right.
Right.
So can someone explain to me why that provision's even in there?
I, you're asking me to.
What are we trying to stop?
To identify why these provisions are in here?
I mean, why, why did we decide to?
To protect the community, I think within it, I think you.
Ban those kinds of businesses?
Well, not necessarily to ban.
Or to.
For the purposes of this section is to regulate the location and design of formula business establishments in order to maintain the tourist-attracting small-town character of the city, the diversity of the community's unique commu, commercial areas and quality of life for visitors and residents. That's the purpose.
That's become a thing though in most, most tourist places, is those kinds of businesses.
Sure.
I mean, really, if you go to any tourist place, you find a bunch of those. I don't know why we're even trying to prevent, you know, put them as a separate category. I just don't see the reason for that, but maybe there is one, but I miss it.
The, uh, the city council decides why and they ask us to work on how.
Okay. Anyway, I just, that's a question, I don't have an answer, you know?
Jamie?
Uh, no, I, I guess I, um, I am, I'm concerned about the issue of, um, doing something because of a commercial advantage that someone is perceived to be having and both stating it in, in our documentation, but also, um, even raising it to a point. For instance, we didn't have this, but recently we have approved several commercial, um, uh, establishments. And, um, somebody could have said, well, I don't want it because it'll be successful and, and the number of people are gonna show up are gonna be far too great and it's gonna, the parking problems are gonna be terrible and so on and so forth. And it's gonna be a measure of, well, I believe based on my, my judgment that it's gonna be successful and instead of the twenty-four people at the restaurant, there's gonna be a hundred and twenty-four and we don't want that because of parking issues. And I just think there's a slippery slope and I'm just a little worried about.
That's, that's why I think the ordinance is, is drawn rather narrowly right now and only talks about the, the number of similar or connected establishments and the criteria of, and the criteria of them that characterizes their use of the land. The other, the other things that you brought up are going to be argued for every new business that comes into town.
That's right.
So, but this is strictly about formula businesses.
I got some questions.
And, and this, and this is public opinion, it is not staff recommendation, it's not city ordinance or anything of the sort. That's part of what we are here to discuss and decide on recommending.
Except, sorry, except that I thought Lucas said that the, the city council gave us these two tasks and one of them is, is, is the marketing online task.
Yes.
They've added to it.
We need, we need to understand what it means to us and what version of that we might recommend or not recommend be included in the ordinance.
And it sounded like the, the letter that was sent kind of spelled out what the merchants were.
This is public opinion, it should be considered.
I re, I realize that, but it sounded, what I was hearing from Lucas was that was what the city council was kind of intending us to, to try to do, but I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. I think consider it for sure, yeah.
John, did you have?
Yeah, yeah, I have a couple of questions. So Lucas, there's just a question on your, the research, as you went through these other cities and you looked at, uh, what they're doing with their, with their plans. Did you find that what we're recommending or what the, the business community is recommending is the most restrictive out of all of these?
You mean in terms of the retail aspect?
The retail aspect, the number of locations and the collective marketing.
Yeah, I mean, the, the number is kind of all over the board, the larger cities seem to have larger numbers. Bristol, Maryland, I think it was, is, it has the five number, which I thought was interesting. I couldn't figure out why, I reached out to them.
How big is the city? Is it the size of Ojai, seventy-five hundred people?
No, it's larger than that, it's about, it's about twenty thousand.
Don't most of these concentrate in certain, like Bristol talks about downtown, they're not talking about every business.
It is.
Certain locations.
Well, other places talk about shopping centers, Malibu, city of Malibu.
Yeah. Like San Francisco is the same way.
Yeah, Malibu identifies it by square footage for the, for the shopping centers, so.
So have we, have we considered that doing it like for downtown?
Well, right now, it, it does specify, um, as one of the criteria that no CUP shall be issued for a use that is a formula business, meaning it meets those criteria, within the area of the downtown commercial land use designation, which really would be the downtown core area, including the arcade and, and some carved out areas, um, to the east and to the west. Um, and that's identified within our land use map for the, for the general plan. So it's a pretty small area, but then it also goes on to say, um, if either of the following criteria, um, and then identifies such establishments have uh, street level frontage exceeding twenty-five linear feet on any street or the usable area of the building or structure wherein the formula business is to be located exceeds two thousand square feet. So.
Would be everything in the Y, obviously.
I mean, there's, you have some businesses that are, that are within those parameters, but, yeah, it's, it's a pretty strict standard.
And then, uh, another question, um, do you know how many vacant storefronts we have along Ojai Avenue?
I don't have the number in front of me today.
Just curious. Did we get that?
All, you're, so you're talking along, all along Ojai Avenue?
Yeah.
As well as Maricopa?
Yeah.
There's one across from Sea Fresh, but I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Oh, and they're, they're constantly turning over in the arcade.
Right, yeah, I don't think there's any vacancies in there now, but you're right.
Yeah, I can't think of any right now that are vacant for the arcade, but I, I mean, there's a restaurant business on the north side of Ojai Avenue that's currently vacant.
I got you.
There's one on the north side that's just off the east end of the arcade, it's yet to be leased.
The economic a, argument implies there's high demand.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, there's not a lot of vacancies.
Yeah, now if there's a lot of vacancies and we're very restrictive on who can do business here, then, you know.
But we don't, we haven't had that problem as far as.
We don't seem to have that problem right now at least.
Right, and even during the pandemic, I, I mean, I would argue that we didn't have a, a ton of vacancies.
Well, I, I think it, you know, this, the formula business plan that we currently have certainly adds to our unique character and, you know, obviously that rolls into tourism and the whole thing, so I, I get all that. I just, I get, I get a little concern that sometimes we're being a little too restrictive, you know, and I look at these. You know, and I look at these other cities and what they're doing, and it seems that we would be the most restrictive. Which is, I I guess that's okay, but I just, you know, want to make sure that everybody's aware of that. And then to to Jamie's point, it seems that we're, we're doing this because of one particular issue or one particular location.
Well, I, I think it might be fair to say because of a particular situation.
Right.
The city council has decided the issue is worth discussing.
Yeah, so then I think about, well, why, and then I think, well, if if it's this collective bargaining that they can get and they can get, you know, more goods at a cheaper cost, well, then, then we got to think about, well, our businesses are just commodities? Are they all the same? Our businesses are not. Our businesses are very unique. They they're not a commodity. You know, if we're, if they're selling apples and someone else is selling oranges, who cares what the price of the apple is? You're selling oranges. Your oranges could be whatever you want them to be. So if if price is the big issue, then maybe we need to do a better job of diversifying the product so we have a unique offer to the to the public. I don't know, and I I feel like we have that, but I'm not, I mean, that's up to the business community.
I would think that if you're looking at the whole issue of wanting to be locally-owned business, you know, the whole um, we're, we're. Know all the people that buy the, you know, own the businesses and so forth, it's just friendliness. And and so um, then you might look at ownership, but I don't think we even can do that.
Well, I was talking, I was talking about the goods, like if everybody's selling apples, then yeah, the price of apples is very important.
Yeah, what we are trying to do here is clarify what staff is recommending to us. And we're, we're slopping way over into deliberation right now.
Thank you, I was about to say that.
We should finish asking questions of staff.
I apologize.
And then hear from the public.
Yeah.
And then come back and deliberate. So Judy, do you have some questions of staff?
Yes, thank you. The criteria, which I understand are, is city ordinance, are are seven items. Does the business uh, community want us to increase or decrease those or just make separate ones? And if so, what kind of criteria for retail?
Yeah, so it would be separate.
Separate, okay.
Making it very, very, very unique, very um, authenticated that it's, it is meant for retail business establishments. And then these are the criteria if you're a retail business establishment.
Who will decide on those criteria?
Well, it would be, it would be council giving direction to this body if that was to be the case. If that's what this commission recommends as a discussion item for council to consider and potentially an ordinance that would then be drafted. Um, because staff's not necessarily going to move forward with an official ordinance and spend the time on it until this body's reviewed it and has had a chance to kind of um, to dive dive in, which is what we're doing right now, dive into the deeper details of it and then provide that, if if so, led by this commission, provide a recommendation to to council to consider.
Did the uh, meeting that you had earlier with the bus, with the business community, did they suggest criteria that they wanted to have included?
Uh, not, not specifically. I know that they are wanting, the way, what what I think they're identifying is that the criteria that's that's there currently is really more for um, restaurants than it is for retail. So carving that out, that really kind of defines the retail pieces, um, the qualifying features, uh, that criteria. I don't have that, that draft criteria in front of me. Um, I, that's something I had to go back and research, but I'm not doing that research until this body is recommending that to council and council then says, yes, staff, go back and put something together.
Um, the only other comment that I have is that as I read through the the material, I thought that reducing or restricting it down to the number five was quite reasonable because I really appreciate the the mom and pop that we, uh, storefronts that we have. Um, I've been in communities that are all, you know, big franchises and and don't like that at all. However, tonight, as we've talked about the, the um, online presence and and the way in which that can multiply, the five is making me, or the four, really, is making me a little nervous. I think that really is going to be very restrictive, depending on how we count that online. I I'm not for or against anything at this point. I'm just pointing it out.
I've got two more questions.
Can I? My turn.
Oh, you have a question.
Sorry.
Page, page four of the admin report, next to the bottom paragraph, existing formula business regulations. That calls out the sixth criteria, the sixth current criteria. Okay, I understand that there is a suggestion that we add collective marketing as a seventh criterion. Are there others that staff is recommending that we consider? Other terms or other concepts as an eighth criterion for identifying a formula business?
Yeah, not at this point.
Okay, so we're talking only about the number. Should it be ten? Should it be five or something else? And should we or should we not add collective marketing as a seventh criterion? Whatever collective marketing means in legally defensive terms, defensible terms.
That would obviously be teased out um, during this, during this process. I should note that the way in which the business community came out, it was in those two, two aspects. The first is carving out retail, and the second is identifying a number and using that number as the definitive number with the argument for buying power.
Okay, was it, was it the, the consensus of this meeting that you had? And I've read the notes and I don't understand yet, that these six criteria should, should apply to food establishments, but not to general retail? And there's some other list?
Yeah, it would be.
That applies to general retail?
It would be a different list. The criteria that we're seeing here with the six or seven.
They're generally food-oriented, I agree.
Generally food-oriented, coming up with retail-specific criteria. I don't know if that's four, if that's five. I don't know what that number looks like at this point.
So.
And I'm not sure if one then would qualify it in combination with, there's a lot, a lot of that to be sorted out at this point. Um, but that's, that's what we, that's what I got out of, um, and certainly in talking with the um, Chamber of Commerce CEO Jamie Fleming, that that's what we got out of that meeting was those two pieces. How that ends up getting worked out from a detail standpoint, I think we're, we're looking at it from kind of a bigger picture standpoint. Carving one specific, it happens to be retail uses, out of how this, this um, criteria is met um, from a formula business standpoint, and then identifying a retail formula business is this.
And it may have some of these six criteria in it, and it may have common marketing as an additional criterion. Is it staff's recommendation that we consider having that seventh criterion apply to food establishments as well as general retail? Or are you looking at creating a wholly new Title X, Chapter Two, Article seventeen?
Point five, I don't know, yeah.
Point twenty-two or something that is retail formula businesses and and renaming what we have now as food purveying formula businesses? I I don't.
Yeah, it could get retitled as well.
What it is that you're asking us to consider at this point.
It's really the two, it's just the two points. I'm not, not getting into the details of how, how the ordinance would then be modified. I'm still looking at the big picture. Is, are these two criteria that came out of that meeting, the number and the carving out?
And the collective marketing concept.
Are those pieces um, from, from this body's standpoint, agreeable to move forward? Or is one of those pieces agreeable to moving forward? Or are none of those pieces agreeable to moving forward? I think that's, it it gets to kind of that, the questions and the deeper thought that we had with cannabis, right? And the, the questions that were asked of council for this body to look at and doing that, that kind of deeper dive and deeper thought process, same thing, same concept here.
It will help to focus us a lot if we understand exactly what you're asking us to decide on.
Yeah, and I, I didn't want to complicate this matter anymore, because I know there's a lot of 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 information that I've poured through and have provided to this body. So I think narrowing it down to just those two pieces um, is appropriate, given the magnitude of what we're looking at here.
Okay.
Which of these seven wouldn't you think applies to retail, I mean, to uh, restaurants? It seems like, I mean, to retail, it seems like almost all of them do.
Might well. What we're, what we're trying to establish right now is, do we recommend to city council that the number that city council gave us, which was five, five or more? Is that the way it's?
Five or more, yes.
Five or more, okay. Uh, so really, the limit is four. And, and the collective marketing, however we wind up defining that, as the two things that we need to decide on tonight in a general sense about formula businesses. Because I think if it comes back to doing one or two different pieces of code, we need to look at that again to make a formal recommendation to city council. Is that correct? Okay, and, and go ahead.
Just clarifying, um, is it three? Is it number of businesses, collective marketing, and retail-specific?
In my recommendation, it doesn't identify collective marketing. Mark, collective marketing is already identified within the moratorium.
Okay.
As one of the pieces that we, that we apply.
Right.
But I will say this, um, being that it's a part of the moratorium, um, moving forward, that's already included. So these two pieces are separate. These are new.
Got it.
As a discussion piece.
Perfect, I just just.
Well, five is in the moratorium as well.
But it's, it's identifying five or more for retail.
Not for food purveyors?
No, it's retail. Carving the whole, carving the whole thing out.
I didn't realize that.
Carving the whole thing out.
Okay, so, so it's.
Definition of retail?
Five or more if you're, if you're a food purveyor.
Goods, or if, if somebody has an insurance agency and has twenty feet on, in the arcade?
An insurance agency is not retail.
Pardon?
An insurance agency is not retail.
It is not retail.
No, it's professional.
It's, well, and, and, and financial services writ large is excluded.
Okay, if you, okay, and how, how about um, Roto-Rooter? I mean, a, a, a business which.
That's professional.
Service.
That's a professional service.
Professional service. Uh, same thing with a doctor's office, same thing with dentists. Those wouldn't fall into retail.
Well, you may, you may collect sales tax on services. Let's not, let's not go there right now.
But we don't have one.
Okay, so we're, five, five was in the moratorium, but that only applies to retail?
Moratorium applies to all. But what we're talking about here tonight is carving out retail moving forward.
So we would have ten for non-retail, or eleven, and we would have, or excuse me, what is it? I I was confused whether it was eleven or ten, but anyway.
Again.
Yeah, more than ten.
So it's nine.
No, it'd be more than ten. So if you're ten, you're okay. If you're eleven, you're not.
One is five or more, the other is more than ten.
Ten uh, non-retail would be a formula business, and five retail would be a formula.
It's carving it out, yeah, carving it out completely.
But the criteria need to be different, even though.
They may be, they may be different, but that will all come back to us to make.
Yes, because it's a part, yeah, it's part of, it would be part of Title X.
Look at, we have to look at all the sections of this to see whether they're going to apply to the retail.
We will, we will ultimately have to look at both the number and the criteria for retail and for the existing businesses, which I thought were all food-oriented, but maybe they're not. Um, but when this comes back, if it's two different sections of code, I think we will need to understand what puts an individual business in retail or in whatever we decide to call the other one. And that's part of what you will present when you come back to us with a draft ordinance.
Right, you, I mean, it would make sense to define what retail is.
Don't you normally do like a percentage of of uh, floor area or a percentage of, to define? You know, if you're more than, I don't know, fifty percent or something, then you're retail. It's more, more than fifty percent of your business is selling goods?
No, the code doesn't describe it.
Not here.
But I meant, I'm just saying, when you're going to define it, because some, what if some business has both? Is it retail or is it service?
Or is it food?
Or is it food?
Right, that, that's something that can be considered in the ordinance drafting phase, if if that's something you, that.
Right.
Tonight, we're more on the ten thousand foot level. If that's something, you know, that the, wants to be specified in the recommendation, um, that we, that can be considered and passed on.
Okay.
But.
It seemed like we need to be clear so that we don't get in.
And, and again, co- common, common ownership and purchasing power, however you may decide to define that vaguely or not, are not part of what we're considering tonight. Is that correct?
It's something that was discussed during the June first, but it's not something this, this commission is considering.
It's a purpose, it's not an ordinance. In other words, someone wants to regulate it indirectly.
Okay, have, have we exhausted staff with questions?
I have one more question, sorry, um, about the current ordinance. And maybe this is irrelevant at this point, but um, under uh, section ten-two, one-seven-one-three.
Yep.
B, four. So bu- above it are the findings, if we decided to uh, consider a formula business to be approved under CUP. Then it says, the commission may promulgate regulations to further define the scope and meaning of the foregoing findings to ensure consistent implementation of the section. We haven't done that, I assume, but we could do that. Okay. We wouldn't even have to go to the city council. We could just promulgate them ourselves.
Right, we can, we can research it or ask staff to research specific points.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, then let's hear, let's hear from the public. Uh, I have two cards for item three. First, Mr. Wirick. Oh, we have another?
He has left.
He left?
Well, maybe he's on Zoom.
Talking about Bill?
He got too cold.
Do a card, do a card.
All right, um, calling people in the order in which the cards were received. Next is Barbara Bowman. Please step up, ma'am.
Hey, everybody. Welcome, you two new commissioners. Uh, this is very hard being quiet back there, so hard, because I could have answered so many of these questions. And what I realized was how little, unless you're a retailer, how strange this animal of retail must seem. Uh, before I get into the whole speech I wanted to give you, I want to talk about what retail buying power is, okay? What they're talking about here in the prom, I'm not going to mention any names, Lucas, I promise, is when someone comes in and they have four stores and you have one store, and they're coming in, and let's say they, they have been in business, and they've been buying a product that you already carry in the town of Ojai, and they're been buying for five stores, let's say, or four stores, and you're buying for one store. Now, when they come in, and everybody wants to be exclusive, the wonderful thing about this town, we are all exclusive. We do not lap over each other. It's sort of a gentleman's, gentlelady's agreement. And what would happen if that store came in? Are they going to quit buying for their four or five stores because this one store has it? What would the manufacturer would say? What, who would the manufacturer want? Who would have the choice right there? Well, of course, the person with four stores. And they could, even if legally they have to sell them, the person with the one store doesn't want to have the same things as the person that has the formula store. So that is one thing, and also you had mentioned that you thought, uh, John, that there was very restrictive. The towns that were being mentioned before were bigger than Ojai. Ojai's very small. So we have a very, very tight retail community, and retail's very important, so the description of retail is important, too. So we have a very, very tight retail community. And retail's very important, so the description of retail is important, too. It's not restaurants, it's not fast food. So therefore, we went around and got all these signatures of everybody and told them about what we were doing. A new formula code. And they said, oh, my God, thank God. I mean, if you see the signatures, I think every one of you have copies of them. There is not one person that said, well, I think that we shouldn't do that. I mean, everybody thought. So, you know, this is talking about governance. And here, we're doing good governance. And part of good governance is you listen to your community. And you have an exceptional retail community here. I've been doing business for forty-two years, so now that Alan Rains is gone, I've probably on the line longer than anybody. So I can tell you, I've seen people like Mimi from Bird of Paradise come, had her wonderful business for years. She left, and who do we have now but Porch Gallery? Have you ever seen two people more involved in a community than those two women? They knocked themselves out for it. We used to have my friend Gloria Jones owned around the corner. Now it's decor, again, an Ojai person. And these gals threw a whole thing, Jamie, if you remember rightly, for the music festival. They're totally into Ojai. Now, I know that they have, I think, one other store. I think it's in LA. But they are completely vested in the community. If you go up and down the street and go in and talk to every one of these retailers, they live here, their children go to school here, they pay taxes here, everybody sends them things to contribute to this auction or that auction, they're here. If you have stores in Martha's Vineyard, Palm Beach, Montecito, I could go on. But if you have that kind of a store, you don't live here. You're probably living in Martha's Vineyard or New York. You are not someone that's going to be part of the community. You're not the person who, when you leave, like Gloria, when she left around the corner, she's still totally involved in the Chamber of Commerce. These are your citizens. These are your citizens that are looking to you to govern for them. And I am going to go further because I know that Lucas would like us to stay on the number. But I want you to realize you have an exceptional history here. If I went through every one of these stores that came and went all the way back to David Mason, who had his store here, you know, we all know David. I mean, he's got a plaque on it. We all have very personal businesses. And you're not going to find that. You don't even find that in the little shopping center in Montecito. You have, no names, you have formula stores. So it's like, it's like cookie cutter. Oh, I've seen this store before. This one's shaped, you know, in a rectangle. The other one was in a square, but everything else is the same. The merchandise is the same. So let's deal with what you're dealing with just tonight, because I could, I, if you have any questions, please ask me regarding retail. So I think it's easier for me to answer than for Lucas, you know, the blood and guts of retail. And I mean that. It's not an easy business. So he was talking about, you keep hearing the number five, and the number five keeps being repeated, meaning four freestanding brick stores and one online business. Now, the online business, which they're describing this multiple marketing is, like, let's say you have stores in four locations, Ojai being one of them. But you advertise in that online business that you are in all these five locations. And people buy online, and you have Ojai on your banner now. That is a big deal. This is what all of these chains have done. I'm talking about high-end chains that want to go around the world and be in the hottest places. We happen to be a hot place all of a sudden. We are the place everybody wants to open a store. Lucas is getting calls all the time. Where are these people when we're not hot? When we're not the happening place? When we're not the happening place, you have the same Barbara Bowman's, Gloria Jones, Jeannie Prebor. We're there, we're there every day. We're not going anywhere. When this is not hot anymore, I've had forty-two years of being and I'm still here. So, I mean, that's one of the reasons you want a small town. That's one of the reasons you want to protect them. And however you can write it to make it absolutely ironclad, because, and I will tell you about the numbers. If you have, let's say, four locations, and then you have an online presence. If you have four locations, you're already, to me, starting to be a formula store. You're, you know, you're going to start having them all over. I would say, I would even move it down to three stores and one online. Because if you go around Ojai right now, there's only one location, one location that has got multiple stores, one. And when you were talking about multiple stores, what if they have different names? Once upon a time in my history, I had a store called Alexander David True West, Barbara Bowman, ages one to ten, and then I was Barbara Bowman at the Oaks. Each one of those stores had totally different merchandise. I was all in Ojai. We're not talking about that. If somebody comes here, opens a store, an individual that lives in Ojai opens a store, and then they decide, like I did, oh, I want to do a children's store, or I want to do a men's store, that's not, that's not the issue in this. That, and if we have someone that comes here and starts a business, and all of a sudden, they're going to expand and become this wonderful chain across the United States that had its birthing in Ojai, we're not talking about that. We're always for local. We're for the local person, the person who started their business here, that has a business here. We're not for people coming in. It's, this is what this is all about. And I tell you, there's only one way, because we're such a hot commodity right now to protect us. And that is for you to really try and figure out how to make this, I would like three, with one online. And we are smaller than all these other locations, by the way, that you're using for the formula. We are the smallest one. So it would not be out of line based on our population at all. And based on, we are one block long. I mean, we are literally, the merchants community goes, you can go around the back of the arcade, but we're a very tiny part of Ojai. It's right sandwiched right down there. So I think, you know, as good governance, and as you see, all the people agree, and it's not because they are afraid of competition. I don't care if five young ladies become a Barbara Bowman. I would be thrilled. I'd be happy to mentor them, which I've mentored a lot of the people. In fact, Julia Rose worked for me. Hattie worked for me. I mean, I've had people work for me, and they went on and did their own store. Bravo, bravo that they did that. And if more stores come in, that each person that comes out of Ojai starts a store, great. We don't mind competition. We want Ojai for Ojai. Ojai merchants for Ojai merchants. This is what this is all about. And so when you think about this, and you think of all the different combinations you can come up with, think of how do you keep this Ojai? How do you keep it when I walked down the street and got all these signatures? I knew all of those people. There were no repeats. They did, there was not somebody living in New York. You know, everybody lives in Ojai. If you want to go get your owners, you can go out there and get them. Every Friday, I guarantee you, they're all in their store. And isn't that fabulous? And this is what this is about. And thank you for giving me the time. I really appreciate it. Do you have any questions of me?
Can we ask a question?
Yeah, I've got one.
Yes.
John?
So, uh, just because you know the, the industry, I'm just making sure I understand the root cause of the, the problem. So, uh, particular businesses that have a business model where they've got like one online platform, and I'll just call out like a giant retailer. I don't want to say the name, but we'll just say some giant retailer. And let's say that giant retailer has this massive online presence, and they want to open a small little store in this town, and they'll just change the name, but they're going to sell the same merchandise as they do online. And then they go to another town, change the name, but they sell the same merchandise that they do online. And they go to another town and do the same thing. Is that what's happening?
This is where his due diligence comes in. This is what he has to examine. This is why he will look at that. They will come and apply for a business license, and they will look at that business license. And this person has to, you'll ask the question, do you have an online, you know, are you online? What's this? And he will start tracking them down. That's what you do. If it looks like it's somebody like that, he'll turn them down. If it looks like it's someone that has a store in Santa Barbara, they have an online presence, and they would love to have a store in Ojai, he'll approve it. Do you see? I mean, it get down to that simple. Yes.
So I wanted to follow up on the, on what you talked about, the website. I guess you tell it the online.
I wanted to add one more, sorry. That's okay. So is, if, because you were saying one online, one online presence is a, should equal a store.
It's equal to a store.
So what if I had three online stores and I had one physical location?
Well, that wouldn't make a lot of sense at a retail point of view. Because let's say you are a hat store. I'm going to have to make it specific so you'll understand. Okay, you have hats. All you do is hats, and you have an online business that says hats.
Yeah.
And if you have another online business that says, I, I sell shoes, I have shoes.
Well, it's a different, different style of hat.
It, you know what? You're creating things that don't really happen. I mean, if somebody, people that have online stores don't do that. That would be wasted energy and confuse the public. They're usually trying to zero them in and not go like that to confuse them. So I, I don't think it's a relevant question. I mean, if I didn't, wasn't retail, it would be.
No, that's okay. I was just.
But I'm not trying to say, yeah.
So I, the way I was understanding, you were explaining the, the advantage, one of the advantages, is that this online presence is clear to the buyer that they're in like five really cool places. So is it going to have to be required that identifies on their, on their website that they are part of something?
Well, they would anyway, because if you're a retailer, that's what you would do. Otherwise, they're a very bad retailer.
So if they don't do it, are they considered joint marketing? In other words, if, if you had ten businesses.
Right.
But they all carried their own local thing, but you're actually going online to, to buy from one entity, is that joint marketing?
Well, you wouldn't buy from one entity unless you were a manufacturer. In other words, if you, you would have to be somebody like, let's say, a James Pierce, who makes his own clothes, and then he has a big online site, and he sells his manufactured clothes. Anybody who isn't a manufacturer has to go buy from multiple people. Okay, so that would not apply. Does that make sense?
Well, I just wondered, is some, so what you're saying is this online presence has got to be clear that they're actually have multiple outlets where you, multiple physical outlets on the website.
Well, first of all, anybody who is a formula store would have listed those outlets, or they're not, they're not very good business.
Yeah.
Because they use the online thing to promote their image. See, being in Ojai is promoting a formula store's image. We have become the place now to say, we're in Ojai. Do you see what it is? That's like gives them status, like people would use Martha's Vineyard or, you know, it's, it's just, it's a status symbol now. We're in, we're in Montecito. That's a great name. You know, you pick these, we happen to be like that now. I know, I've been there all these years, and we weren't that. But now we're that. And this is why we have the problem. Somebody said, why did this all of a sudden happen? This was a problem coming. The more popular we got, it was just coming. There was no doubt. And because we are considered very chic right now, I don't know if that's a good word to use, chic, happening, whatever you want, because of that, we are the place that people want to open. And so even if they opened a little six hundred square foot store, and their normal stores are twelve hundred square feet, they would reduce it to six hundred just to have the label to put on their online business. Any other questions? I think you have.
Judy?
Um, yeah, I'm confused now.
Okay.
What I hear you saying is you would like to see it limited to three physical presences.
Right.
And, and one online site. And that that one online site would list all three physical presences.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I, this is why I'm confused. Earlier, Lucas was talking about.
Five.
Each of, okay, you've got five stores, one physical, I mean, one online site. And if they list all five of those stores, now we've got ten.
No, six, if they, if they.
Okay, the, I'm getting two different answers.
Oh, okay. Lucas, what are you saying?
I thought, I thought Lucas at one point said, "The online presence is a separate store," and another time, he said, "It's not a separate store."
I thought it was just a definition of what it meant to be a, a formula business as opposed to counting the number.
We were counting as one business.
Well, it, it matters because you're talking about an actual cap. So whether this online presence is counted for each of those three stores or five stores as a separate entity makes a big difference.
Current, current code minus moratorium doesn't count. Moratorium counts because it's collective businesses. That's the key.
Collective marketing.
In the, in the moratorium.
Marketing businesses.
You would count each one of those mentions on the online site as a separate business.
I agree with you.
But not in the code.
Is that clear in the?
Oy, oy, oy. That's really confusing.
All right, you've got, you've got four physical businesses, and they're all on a website. How many businesses are we talking about?
We're talking about four.
And they're all on a, those four are on a website.
They're all online.
Because they're advertising them.
Because the online becomes part of the common marketing, which is a criterion, and that's the criteria are separate from the number.
So you're saying the online presence counts as a, as an additional piece.
Not as a, as a definition of what the number of the business is. She's talking about adding them.
We've got, we've got numbers and we've got land uses or criteria. We've got numbers and criteria.
They're separate.
And that's my question. Four physical businesses, one in Ojai and three elsewhere.
Yeah, let me, hold on.
And a website that talks about all four. How many businesses are we talking about?
Just, just five.
But the moratorium doesn't do that. That's.
It's, well, let me pull up the moratorium, because I want to make sure that we're all on the same page, because there's some confusion from Commissioner Murphy. And I can tell Chair Quillisi wants to make sure that we're all on the same page.
I just, I, I want legally defensible and clear criteria.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm getting not that right now.
I, I'm likewise confused. We're talking about a website, but, um, a fancy magazine which has a store, let's say, a Tiffany's, and let's roll the clock back fifty years or eighty years, and it's in New York, Paris, Beverly Hills.
And London, yeah.
And Palm Beach. And there is no website, but it's an ad for Tiffany's with its products, and then it's listing where its stores are.
But there's big magazine ads that name all those locations. Is that the same thing as collective marketing?
Well, it is a form of collective marketing, obviously.
It seems to me it is.
Is that collective marketing?
Newspaper, obviously, it's a form of marketing.
But is, is collective marketing a criterion? Or, or is it a separate business?
No, careful. We're getting into deliberation, so I don't necessarily want to get into the deliberation at this point.
Well, I.
You're responding to questions, but that, yeah, I'm looking it up right now.
I'm sorry. We still have one other public speaker, yes.
Sorry.
Let's get into the Q and A, and I'll, I'll look up this particular piece.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, excellent. Appreciate it.
Uh, our other speaker on item three is Bill Miley. Bill? Bob Daddy for number three?
Yeah. Well, this is, in, in more than a quarter of century watching this, this is probably one of the worst things I've ever seen. The worst thing I've ever seen out of the commission happened to do with the Kelvin color for Seafresh, where they hung them up forever to figure out if it was going to be a three thousand or a four thousand Kelvin color on the sign. And this is the next worst thing. I, I'd recommend, if you folks want to know anything about this, you've talked to Kenley Newfield. He's the one that gathered all the signatures, got the city council to do the thing, put it in here. And you want to know what the intent is, you ask the author. And he's the author. Here's what the intent is. This is so we didn't have a Starbucks on every corner and run the small local businesses out of town. But we lost something. Hell, we, we, you know, when we say formula, there's a formula. We had the CEO of Trader Joe's come to a rotary, and Ron Wilson said, when are we going to get a Trader Joe's? And the guy said, when are you going to get a hundred thousand people? Because there's a formula to put a store in, right? That's kind of like the Colonel Sanders that went broke that we had here once before, that we don't have anymore. There's a formula to this stuff. This thing was put together to allow for local ownership of small businesses without them being over-franchised. It was put together to have a uniqueness, where we didn't see the same brands over and over and over again, like Shell Gas Station. The Shell, the, the other end used to be Ojai Gas. And, and they had to compromise, because they couldn't get rid of Bank of America, certainly not going to get rid of State Farm Insurance. They're not going to get rid of Allstate or Farmers. So you had to start putting these special classifications. Mr. Bennett, I, you know, you said something that was different. My understanding is this whole thing was to protect one single business, one individual business against this formula thing. I don't really like that kind of stuff, but I will say that it has moved down the road a little bit. but I will say that it has moved down the road a little bit. And I really do think that the number one item here was to protect the unique character. Since that thing was written, and they went ahead and pimped and pandered and power broke to allow Jersey Mike's in, which has got thousands of pizza places, and so they argued at 10, and then they figured, well, we'll go 10 plus 1, 11. Everything we do is archived. Why don't you ask the clerk for the tape of the meetings? Barbara and I are the only two in this room that was at all those meetings. Nobody else was at any of those meetings. And so the intent was, want to keep it small. We don't want a Starbucks on every corner. We don't want to run Java out to a big corporate entity. We don't want to have all this stuff. And now you get to struggle with what the intent really is. But here's one of the things I want to have Barbara stand up and tell you. There's, there's a misconception that when you have this multiple buying power, that you're going to get, and my wife had a very successful clothing store in downtown San Luis Obispo. The bigger, the bigger the purchase, the bigger the discount, the more perks you get, the better 810 EOM, the better finance you get, the better line of credit you get. You get a lot of things. I'm here to tell you, not one penny is being passed on to local tourists, because somebody has better buying power. I happened to go into Ralph's. $4 for a jar of Best Food Mayonnaise. I went into one of our local stores that's on sale for $8.99. So we're not passing things on to people here, and it's not that we're going to have these formula stores like these ABC stores in Hawaii. Every single block, there's an ABC store, if you've ever been to Honolulu, or, or some of these things. It was to protect the small-town character. It was to prevent McDonald's. Who doesn't have enough people to come here? But Starbucks does, and a few other do. And so you're going to have to struggle with that. I think the thing that makes it pathetic, this is pathetic, is we don't have a way, we don't have a track, we don't have the staff, you know, there's no way to stop these kinds of things. When, when I owned the newspaper, I didn't use my name, I used Downhill Publishing LLC. You use all these LLCs for all these reasons, for taxes, for separating your businesses, for liability, for a whole bunch of things. We're going to have to have, you know, like, an investigation unit, but I really don't think we're going to be overwhelmed by these. And if it's two or three, if you folks know anything about branding, John does, because he was a liaison of mine for years. We now have a different thing with State Farm. We've got Blackstone Finance, HSA Bank, we've got USA Bank. We've got affiliates like crazy. Look at Yum! Brand. It's got 20 or 30 restaurants. Look at Comfort Inn, which has got 20 more. That, that's not what we're doing here. So, you know, I, I don't know what to tell you. Good luck with this thing, but I really, kind of like Yogi Berra, nobody goes there anymore because it's too crowded. We don't have vacant buildings where we've got all these predatory corporate entities trying to come in here and stuff all these little things. And so I would be really careful about commute, you know, buying power and all these things. If you want to say three stores, that's cool, you know, make it simple so people can understand. And having something different for food than retail in this community, 4.138 square miles, we only have a couple of hundred buildings that are commercially zoned. We don't need to make this thing over complex, because we're not having a Taco Bell, so, okay?
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Bill Miley? Sorry about that. I thought you were next in line.
Good evening, Bill Miley. I have a couple of comments to make, starting with what I think are some problems to look at. Number one would be penalizing more than one local business, which gets involved in collective buying with several other businesses that happen to have some of the same products. Seems to be very unfair and anti-profit. Two would be penalizing more than one local business, sharing a website with another business in town that has somewhat similar, like food service. Also seems to be unfair and anti-profit. Three, the number we pick, 5, 10, 3, would seem to prioritize, as it gets lower, younger, early-developed businesses than those, and prioritize those that more, that might be more innovative. Four, larger number of formula businesses have more capital, I assume, to purchase real estate and close out the sites for local businesses. Like, if I had 20 stores and lots of millions of dollars, I'd buy, buy all the empty land in Ojai right now, on Ojai Avenue, and then use it as real estate equity, put some of my stores on it, and sell it to other people. Five, to lower the number, like three, we have, would seem to encourage unique businesses to establish here, or develop here, or be here, and help promote our town as one of a kind. And that's a branding concept, as you know. Like, come see us. We are unique, different, and best. Number six, by restructuring the number, it reduces the likelihood of volume, volume product buying discounts, which would then undercut single stores. They don't have as much buying power, okay? And seven, but what about cooperative purchasing power? Or I join a cooperative of other people who have other stores, like Lemon, the Lemon Growers. It doesn't seem right to penalize that. And then number eight, online should not be penalized. It seems like in our digital age, if you're not online in some way, you're economically archaic, unless you happen to have something super neat, unique. So I join my colleagues over here thinking that three is maybe a high number, maybe we should go to two. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Ryan, do we have any, any raised hands out there?
Yes, there's one person.
Uh, please go ahead, then. Bring him in.
Did you want me, is it me that you wanted me to speak? Jamie Fleming?
Yep. We can hear you.
Okay, please go ahead, Jamie.
I mean, sure. I'm just glad to have the opportunity, because from the Ojai Chamber's perspective, we definitely take this very seriously, and I want to thank Barbara Bowman and Jenny Prebar for also putting a lot of time in as retailers, talking to all the retailers. What I really like the most, and I've been in charge of the chamber for four years, but I've lived in Ojai almost 19, is just this unique business culture we have downtown. And as has been brought up, when you walk down the arcade in Matilaha, you, you just notice that all those stores are mom-and-pop stores. And, except for one unnamed store that recently came in. And it's incredible. It's just, you won't find that, I don't think, in any other city in this country where 100% except for one is a mom-and-pop store. And I just think that makes Ojai, Ojai. But I do think why this code is important to be really addressing just retail is, and how we can really preserve the type of store we have here, is really, we have to address this buying power without using the word buying power in the ultimate draft. But it needs to be taken seriously. As was mentioned tonight, a store that has five or more outlets has tremendous buying power over our small one-store owners. And this became painfully apparent when this larger unknown store, unnamed store, located to Ojai recently. It immediately impacted one of Ojai's most iconic local stores that I think had the best Ojai brand of a lot of our stores. But they shared the same clothing lines, and because of the larger buying power of this larger store, the suppliers pulled their merchandise and went exclusive with this new unnamed store. And the owners just couldn't believe that this would happen, and they finally just gave up, and we lost one of our mom-and-pop stores that I thought really represented Ojai, and, and Ojai's brand, one, one of the best ways. So we have a real painful example right here in front of us as to why this is important. We've also learned from this same experience that larger unknown stores, often under a parent umbrella, have many, many different other stores under different names. And so we're requesting that part of the code needs to address that, under a parent company, those stores need to be counted also, even if they're different names and all that stuff, because ultimately, one, any store that has a parent doesn't even fit in Ojai, because if you walk down and look at 100% except for one store, 100% of all of the Ojai local stores, none of them have a parent company, so already is, is not even a fit. I wanted to quickly address the new world of commerce and being online. Yes, it, it is actually becoming important to look at this, because I, I get a little confused myself about the collective marketing. And I think, and as was just brought up by even Bill Miley, I think everyone has a website. I think the difference is, and we shouldn't penalize people for being online, I don't think, and having a website, because that is the norm. But I do think having a online store does open up buying power, and we need to figure out how to write that correctly. I'm not sure it needs to be per store in a, in a company, but I think it should be at least one store factor in their total, that there is a online store presence, because that buyer is suddenly in that position where he can go to his supplier and have a lot more, just like if he had another store. Lastly, I enjoyed the fact that even Barbara brought up that the stores, and, and I learned this also from talking to a couple retailers. The stores seem to feel very comfortable that, yes, okay, we have multiple clothing stores, but if you look carefully, we cater to a completely separate type of customer. That's smart retailing, and that's what happens here in Ojai. If you walk down the street, yeah, there, if you really go and ask the retailer, they'll tell you, yeah, but my customer is a very specific one versus someone else down the street. So I, I like the wonderful balance we have right now. And so in summary, I'm really encouraging that the code needs to be a special section for retail stores. The wording of the code is critical. If a store has five, or if we want to look at lower, but five or more stores, including any stores under the umbrella of a parent company, and factoring in a one store into the count if they have an online store. I think this five or more stores is a good red flag for Lucas to start going, oh, maybe I better look into this. I also, I think, have encouraged, and it was brought up in our June, our June first meeting, that we want to encourage Lucas, if a store still is near five, six, but looks like it would be a wonderful fit, he should call the chamber, let us talk to retailers, because maybe they would be a wonderful fit. We don't want it just to be a closed door. We want to have the dialogue and encourage that. And I love the idea of encouraging local stores to have the chance to just grow and make Ojai a brand. And so I, I really am hoping that we include that in the write-up. So that, in closing, yes, I, I really would love to keep our shopping district a small-town, you know, character.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Are we done with the public?
Yeah.
We're going to close the public hearing, then, and bring it back just to the commission for deliberation. Yes, Lucas?
I, before we went into the Q and A with the, well, the comments received from the, from the public, we were in a pretty heavy deliberation regarding the numbers piece. And I wanted to, to go directly to the moratorium and kind of clarify what I was getting at before, because really, the, the language is what matters, not what I'm spitting out, without actually verifying that. So through the moratorium, it's five or more establishments, and then within that, there's the standardized or collective marketing as one of the following features. So two of those features, which would include the collective marketing. So it's the five in addition to the following features, and it identifies one through seven. So if there's two of those.
It's a two-step decision.
Yes.
Are there five or more? And if there are not, if there are five or more, then they're out?
If there are five or more and.
And they meet these criteria.
The following features.
Okay.
And that share any of the two following features.
If there are less than five, then the features don't matter?
The features don't matter. It's got to be a qualifying feature. A qualifying number.
It's a two-step. Are there five or more, and then do they have these common features?
Right.
Okay.
I had a question about this standardized collective marketing and business proposal. Shouldn't that be standardized collective marketing of standardized goods?
Standardized goods is another of the criteria.
I know, but just collective marketing, unless you're marketing the same goods, it's not really.
It says the businesses are marketed together. I don't know, does that, does that include goods?
We, see, we, we don't have, for me at least, a clear definition yet of collective marketing.
That's true. That's what I was thinking.
We also don't have a clear definition of online presence versus online stores. That is, do you have a website that advertises your product? Or do you have a website that advertises your product and allows people to buy it directly online?
Every business that I buy from.
Is one of those part of the five or more, and the other one is not? I don't know where we're going with the number right now.
Every business that I buy online is the store itself. It's got, you know, the staples, whatever, they have a store, and you can buy online, but I guess you can buy online without going to the store. Does that make it separate? I mean, it's still the same company. I could do it either way. I could pick it up at the store, I could have the store send it to me if I have it, or I can just have a set.
If there's an online presence, is that a separate store?
No.
Or does it have to be an online presence where you can buy online? Is that a separate store?
No.
Still not a separate store.
No, it's brick and mortar, the way this, even the moratorium itself.
So four physical locations.
Right.
And they could all be marketed, online sales through the same website, and it's still four?
Correct.
Okay.
However, within those features is the collective marketing. So the collective marketing as an online presence would then qualify it as one of those, one of those features.
It could be one of two criteria that makes it a formula business.
And then we look closely at the rest of those to see if it's also another qualifying feature.
Right.
We ask those specific questions.
Right. So if, if there, if you had the four stores and you were going to open up a fifth, then you would investigate the online presence and, and determine whether they were collectively marketed and, and other, and then the other features as well.
Okay. Okay. If there's only four, then you stop right there, and you say, okay, it's not a formula business.
Right.
Right.
Wait, I thought it was five or more.
Right. So when they're, when, if they apply, open a fifth store.
But you're saying that you can go to five, but you can't go more than five?
No.
No.
Five or more.
Five or more establishments.
We apply the, we apply the analysis for the.
Look at the criteria.
Yeah.
If you blow five, it doesn't matter.
All right, all right.
This is an algebra test.
I think, I think the commission is, is now clear on this issue, and it's, and it's kind of ready to begin deliberations.
I have one more question of, of, of Lucas. So there's some suggestion here that you're going to be investigating these things, and then you're going to reach out to the chamber to investigate further. Are they going to have an application where you ask them these kinds of questions? Written application where they say, do you have, you know, businesses in other, other names?
It's got to be part of the research.
Just like we have to, you know.
Yeah, we already have that application in place.
So you'll be asking those questions?
With each business license, new business license that comes in, we also include those very, very specific questions.
When it gets to five, you would be asking those more detailed questions?
We ask it for any business that comes in. We have them fill out information out. Even when they fill it out. Even when they fill it out, we go back and clarify and verify.
So when you get the five, or, yeah, five, and you're applying this criteria, and you have an application, what triggers some further investigation?
Answers to the questions, I would guess.
Yeah, so really it gets down to the questions, and it gets down to the criteria. So we start looking at one of those, each one of those seven, and going point by point through each of those. And, and making sure to get that information that clarifies each of those.
Confirm it with the applicant.
Absolutely, yeah. So it's, it's a, eh, I don't wanna call it a two-step process, but the application for a new business license come, comes in, we review that new business license with the attached formula business pieces to that puzzle. Let's say, for instance, they answer no to all those pieces. And I'm like, well, hold on a second, I've heard of this business. So we look online, and I, I look and I'm like, actually, there's six businesses that I'm finding online.
Yeah.
So that's when we start the deeper dive into the Q and A.
I, I, I would think at that point, if they have falsified an application for a business permit, that could be grounds for denying it.
Yeah, but if less we're really clear, that would be hard to prove.
I, I would say at that point, it's in the review phase. Denying it would then be identifying that all of those facts lead it to the road.
Okay.
So it's, the, the falsification isn't completely true, because just like any other application, when an application comes in, we're always going back and verifying and clarifying.
And you require intent, I don't know how we could prove intent by someone filling things out.
They may not just understand our regulations. We always go back and, and provide them with.
If you accidentally drive eighty down the freeway and they tick you for it.
Falsified it, you have to prove intent.
Matter, yeah.
But falsifying is, it, but it requires intent.
Right.
You'd think so.
Yeah. I would say so.
What say you, madam?
I think we've arrived at the point where we could consider voting on Lucas's point one and Lucas's point two.
Point, point one being the number?
One being separate criteria for, separate the criteria for retail formula businesses. And point two being reducing the overall number from more than ten to five or more.
Okay.
Wouldn't point three be the adding the marketing part?
Collective marketing or common marketing?
Nope.
No? You don't, you don't want our opinion about common marketing or collective marketing?
Can we add that as a point three?
You can certainly add that as, as a point three. Understand that I was only given the parameters of those two pieces, if the commission feels so led to add a piece, absolutely.
Okay. Understanding that collective marketing is, is.
In the moratorium.
Not a completely well-defined term at this point.
Excuse me, though, if you're gonna decide on a number, and you just chose five, why not think of four? And why did we go with five, just because you had that before? The whole discussion tonight was to lower that number, if possible.
I don't think the discussion tonight was to lower the number. It was to consider what the city council asked us to look into.
And, and looking into the number.
Well, currently it's a ten. If, if it's so, can you bring her?
Yeah.
Isn't it currently?
I thought we were, I thought we were talking about lowering the number, because if the number was already established at five.
It's not established.
That was a moratorium, not established, but was, we've been going under that for two years, is it two years? And then tonight, we're talking about lowering, I'm asking for three, even if I would even bargain for four, because I was trying to make sure that you did not end up with a formula store here. So, I mean, we're just kind of arbitrarily taking five, because that's what we had set out.
Five or more.
Five or more.
So the limit is four.
Oh, the limit is four, then?
Yeah, it's five or more.
If you hit five, then you go into the criteria, that's what you said.
Excuse me.
I would add that your letter does not suggest that we go below, what, the five? The letter that was come, signed by all these people, that was not suggested that we go below it.
Oh, thank you.
So it's a nice, I, I know you're saying it, but your fellow merchants did not say that.
Long, as long as you're here, I do have a question. You said everything's different, store to store. There are several stores, as I walk up and down the arcade, that sell T-shirts. Okay? Maybe different designs, maybe even the same exterior appearance. Are you saying that, that each of those stores has T-shirts with a different label inside? There's a different company supplying them?
Actually, most people that do T-shirts, particularly the kinds you're talking about, you're almost talking about souvenir T-shirts, I think. No, because if you talk about T-shirts, I carry a very high-end T-shirt, which has nothing to do, Julia Rose carries another one, which is totally different, so it's, it's, it's what you're talking about. If you're talking about what the Ojai Pharmacy or Camp, uh, Ojai carries, those are people that buy inexpensive T-shirts, have their design runoff and sell them. So they are different, cause they have their own design runoff. So they have their own, so they are different.
So you were saying, four, four stores that sell T-shirts, they're all different?
They all have different T-shirts.
Whatever.
Yes, exactly.
Very good, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. All right, so I think we do have three things to decide.
Okay. I would move, we go with the.
City council has given us their answer. Five or more is, i- is what gets you into looking at the cri- at, at the characteristics.
Can we do these serially, not have to do them in one minute?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Then there's, then there's the question of, should, should the collective marketing be a criterion for either retail or food? Let's call it retail and food right now for discussion purposes. And third is, should retail and food be separate parts of the code? Is that, is that right? Okay. So let's start with the first one, the number. Five or more, or something else?
I'm, I'm satisfied with five or more, which really means a cap of four.
I would second that. Is that a motion?
No, it's not a motion yet. I'm just trying to get a sense of the commission, because we're making a recommendation to the city council.
Yeah.
Five or more, okay?
I think five or more is good, I, I like the, uh, four, and then, yeah, the five was the review.
I like four or more.
Okay.
Um, I was persuaded actually in the con, in the discussion, um, that was held earlier by the members of the community, that, um, five is too large a number, that you really need to have.
Five gets you increased scrutiny.
Yeah.
And you're saying four should get you increased scrutiny?
Yeah, I just think, yeah.
Okay.
I would stick with the five, cause that's what they actually wrote in their letter and all signed.
Yeah.
So there's no statement by anybody but denied that they all wanted four, so. Or four, le- down to three, I guess, so since that's what they asked, I think we should, and that's what the commission has proposed, I think we should stick with that.
Okay, so just straw poll then, and I'm, I'm for five or more. Straw poll on the number then is four to one to have it five or more. Second criterion, or the second straw poll is on, should collective marketing be a criterion once you've got five or more?
To put you in the formula business category.
Should collective marketing be part of the increased scrutiny? Along with the six features that are listed right now?
Yes, sir.
In the absence of more definition, I would say no. If, if, if there was a better definition, I could understand it. And, uh, I think that you could easily say, well, let's say, um, pick a, pick a, a brand of men's shirt that somebody may have currently here. Um, you know, and that, and that company that makes that shirt markets the fact that it's available in Ojai at X, Y, Z store. Is that collective marketing? I'm not, I.
If it's, if it's the shirt manufacturer, I don't think it is. If it's the retail store in Ojai.
No, I'm saying if the, if the manufacturer.
That says, I've got these other places, and we all sell this great shirt.
It's marketed together.
No, I'm saying if the, if the product is marketed, and it's marketed as being available here in Ojai, is that collective?
I think they're talking about the store, collective marketing, not the product.
Yeah, not manufacturers.
I think they're talking about the store doing collective marketing, not the, not what they're marketing, not the product.
Yeah, exactly. Stores are all together and they're all marketing.
They're marketing their product together. Uh, I, I would like Lucas and maybe dealing with, you know, talking to the retail people, come with a little more clear definition. I would feel more comfortable, but I'm in favor of it as a principle. Uh, but I just, I would, I would like us to, to, uh, spell that out clear. So every, it's clear to everybody, cause obviously we're confused.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's one where we need a legally defensible criterion if we're going to recommend it to the city council.
Yeah.
But I'd like at least to have staff work on whether or not they can establish one.
Yeah, I agree, I think that's what I would like to.
John?
No, I, I totally agree, I, I like the idea of collective marketing, um, and the, you know, what we have here in the definition is, quote unquote, they're marketed together, um, which makes sense, and they, where they're common.
Outlets are marketed together, not necessarily the individual products.
Stores.
Yeah, the stores.
Retail stores are marketed together, or have a common uniform sales platform or tools. So they're, you know, they're all online and they're all selling and they're marketing all together.
I, I agree.
Yeah, but I, I like the idea of expanding that definition a little bit more, just making it a little clearer, cause it is a little muddy, you know?
And run it by the, you know, chambers, so I would suggest anyway, just so that you.
Well, and run it by Epi, because we need, we need to, uh, to keep this legally defensible.
It's real, because we could figure out some complicated thing, but then it doesn't really fit the real world, you know what I mean?
Right.
So run it by the, the people, just to get it.
Is it applicable?
Okay. So I think, right, my sense of it right now is that the sense of the commission is making collective marketing a criterion along with the other six is something that we would like have, like to have staff clarify before we decide whether to add it. But we need more clarity.
But we're in favor of the concept.
Yeah. Well, it depends what the concept turns out to be.
That's true.
Whether we're in favor of it.
So yes to the term?
Yes to the term, to the general idea, but we wanna see the details before we decide whether to recommend it to city council.
Okay. So no for it moving forward to city council, yes to staff?
Until it's clarified, then we'll decide.
Providing maybe, uh, a definition and whether or not that fits.
Bring it back at the next meeting, so that we, uh, retailers don't have to sit around waiting for hours.
Before we get to that, before we get to that. Point three is, should we have separate, easily separable and discernible pieces of the municipal code applying to, let's call it, food purveyors and general retail? Good idea, not a good idea?
Good idea, I am for having the retail marketing separated.
Yeah, I'm, I'm for it as well.
Okay.
Sure. I'm for it, I would like, again, to get a, make sure we have a clear definition of what is a retail store and what isn't.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, because, because the current code has exceptions for primarily services businesses. But gas stations are not just services, they sell a product.
So the, the, the current category.
What falls in general retail?
Yeah, and also the current category, is it just eat, eateries, or is it broader than that? We should make sure we understand.
Well, if you look at all these criteria here, it sure looks to me like eateries.
But couldn't it be a service business? Like, uh, some of the places where you get your, your oil changed?
We ask specific things about that, like Roto-Rooter. Not to say that that's even here in town, but the answer was no, that's not general retail.
Professional, sir, yeah, it.
So they're not counted at all?
Yeah, I think it's important to remember what those, those, um, criteria or following features are in terms of one of the seven. Standardized array of merchandise, or standardized menu, standardized facade, standardized decor or color scheme, uniform apparel, standardized signage. I mean, you, you would potentially see that in some of those service.
Oil changing places, what's, I can't think of the name of them now, but.
Well, I can think of a couple.
You know, but anyway, some of them, yeah.
Preparation companies.
Mm-hmm. Those certainly have unique, identifiable.
So are we gonna, as long as they meet this criteria here, and, and the same number of businesses, doesn't matter what the business is, is, unless it's retail, they would be in this category.
Well, and they have to, and they have to meet two of the characteristics.
That's what I'm saying, but.
Correct.
As well as the size.
It is.
Because I would expect that, that trademark or service mark is gonna be common amongst retail purveyors in the city now. I'm Julia Rose, I don't know. That's one of the criteria, trademark or service mark.
But that's for the business, not for the product, isn't it?
That's for the business, that's right. Okay. So separate pieces of code? Yes?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay.
Clearly the final retailers.
So so help us understand collective marketing, and we'll make a decision on the third point, sir.
All right, so I'll take one and three forward to city council, and three, or, sorry, two, collective marketing.
If we ever understand it.
Maybe we'll get a tutorial next time.
I look forward to that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lucas. All right, let's move on to item four.
Short break?
Or I need to use.
You need five minutes?
Sure.
It is eight twenty-seven, eight thirty-two, we'll restart the session. Who'd have thunk it was that interesting?
Right.
Good night, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I did this time. Did you want more water, Epi?
I, I have one more, I'll take a. Yeah, that will get real stuff. It's a difficulty in what you were just going through, it looks like going through my head. Yeah. Yeah. Looking for. There's a lot of stuff in there. I mean, when you start researching the cities and having those conversations, it wasn't the.
Did Ryan talk to him?
He did.
Okay.
Yep. It's, it's just.
Chair, we were taking you apart, by actually reading everything.
We are the hall of city, though, that I found.
Yes. Good on you.
I mean, he's mollyboded a couple of times, so. It's, yeah, it's not too much.
Yeah, I did it, I understand why.
No.
I, you could argue we're getting too into the weeds, but on the other hand, if we make a mistake, has unintended consequences. The weeds, the weeds are what, this, you need.
Well, in some, in certain cases, you gotta ask those questions, or figure out what your response, what the appropriate response is.
That's fine. Well, I mean, you know, there, there's sort of a, you know, that's why someone reads the rules, you know? But if you're a parent case, you better understand what this issue is, they could be, you know? Like I used to, you know, what my law, and I would be better saying, somebody who's a plumber or someone, I kinda had to understand what they did, you know, in a, in a case, that's kinda like this, we have to sort of understand how this works, otherwise, you know?
Oh, my gosh.
We're probably, uh, so.
How is it going? Well, it's. I'm going in here. I, I wish I could promise.
Well, I'm very engaged group.
Yes. We're not only in the weeds, but we're carrying on and into extremist areas. And another thing that's happening that doesn't happen at city council is people are just talking without permission. That needs to be.
Well, I'm the applicant for, um, item five, should I have done a card or anything like that? Or will they just ask as the applicant? I believe the ask applicant is.
As an applicant, or you don't need a card, it's all you want.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I think, I think that's exactly, is this your first time, is this your first? You seem like, you know, that you know how this thing goes. Okay, what? It's good that, you know, you've got some experience.
Or would be all the criteria of the facade. Technically, they could under CUP. That's something that I would, I think you should, as this. Yeah, those words. Well, also, if, if, once you've designated it as a, as a, as a form of business, then you can come up CUP. Right, if they wanna go more. And that's why I think we might wanna look at that criteria and make sure we've got everything in everyone. Well, it's one more way to determine whether that business was bitted to Ojai or not. Who's, who's running the electoral ace, are you running? Okay, they say we can propagate regulations off the commission. We do, yes, we have, we have CUP, we have vital, we have vital say over CUPs, but even this, this order, I can't find it. No, this one I just pulled out from the thing and I still have it in my book, so I have it, and I read it and. Yeah, the commission, and I can't hear the whole thing with my head, the commission may propagate regulations to further define the school. So we, we are the commission.
Right, yeah.
We could look these over as three of them now.
Understanding that anything we do is up here with the city council.
That's true, that's true, but we could propagate another one, right, promote it, say, okay.
It's thirty-three after the hour, we'll restart again. We're now on item four. A design review permit and a conditional use permit regarding expansion of existing rooftop mechanical equipment, et cetera. For the AT&T switch building. Laura, would you lead us through that, please?
Yes.
Oh, oh, sorry. Item four, a DRP and a CUP on the AT&T building at two oh two West Ojai Avenue.
Yes, thank you Chair Quillacy and good evening to the rest of the commissioners. Um, this project is located at two oh two West Ojai Avenue and is a request for approval of a design review permit and a conditional use permit for the expansion of an existing rooftop mechanical equipment enclosure for installation of an unmanned rooftop wireless facility. The installation includes nine antennas and supporting equipment. The expansion of the enclosure includes an increase in the height by three feet for a total of thirty-five feet of, for the building, which is the maximum height permitted in the general commercial zone. And an increase in area of this enclosure by a hundred and thirty-three square feet for an overall approximate square footage of eight hundred and nineteen square feet.
That's within, within the boundaries of the fence is eight hundred and nineteen square feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, the enclosure that's on the roof.
Yeah.
Yep.
On the roof.
Yeah.
So we, we received an application request on November twentieth, twenty twenty, and while we were for this unmanned rooftop facility. And while we were in the process of reviewing the request, the department was made and aware, was made aware of an evaluation from twenty eighteen that included this subject property. The building was evaluated for inclusion in the National Register of Historic Places and California Register of Historic Resources as part of a federal, um, review process. The result was that the property was listed in the California Register as a district contributor to a historic district, the downtown Ojai Historic District. So the community development department was then required to put the brakes on the project that we were working on to bring forward to the planning commission and require that historic resources report be prepared addressing the requested building modification for the wireless facility. We contracted with GPA Consulting through the applicant, um, to have a historic resource report prepared. And the report concludes that the project as proposed would not cause a substantial adverse change to the significance of the historic resource. So this same conclusion was provided by the executive director of the Ojai Valley Museum in an informal review after we, of the, um, the historic resources report that we, that we received. This information was reviewed by the city's historic preservation commission, who have made comments to be forwarded, forwarded to the planning commission tonight. And the specific comments include that the materials are thoughtful and for the reason, and the reason for the height increase is valid. And I wanna just clarify that it's a height increase from what's existing, but it's not higher than what's, um, permitted in the zone. It's three, three more feet, which equals.
Five feet, which is still allowed within the zone.
They are going up three feet from where they are today, but that does not exceed the maximum allowable height in the C-one zone, which is thirty-five feet. They'll be right at the max. They also noted, the HPC also noted that, um, it was good to have a historic resources report for a building designated as a contributor to the downtown, downtown historic district. Um, and that also the proposal doesn't overwhelm the arcade. So per the Ojai municipal code, approval of the CUP is required for installation of a telecommunications facility. Also per the code, approval of the DRP is required when there is a second story addition to an existing second stor-, uh, two-story building. As well as a DRP is required when there's a discretionary permit like a CUP. So regardless, you're looking at a D, uh, DRP along with the CUP. The submittal from AT&T included photos to sim- simulations, a project description, photo survey, noise letter report, and a radio frequency report. All of these items were included in your packets. And for your information, uh, staff also included the historic resources report. Tonight, the planning commission is charged with review and recommendation to the city council of the design review for the proposed wireless facility. The planning commission is also charged with review and recommendation to the council for the CUP. Please note that your staff report and resolution indicate that you are to be making a decision tonight rather than making a recommendation to the council. Just wanna make sure you heard that, okay?
We have to approve the CR, the CUP.
Uh, tonight you will not be making a determination to approve or disapprove. You will be banking a recommendation to the city council to approve or disapprove.
Okay, okay, that's, sorry.
Don't, I thought you were gonna take my mic. So per, per the municipal code, there are specific procedures when reviewing wireless facilities and the planning commission may waive or reduce the burden on the applicant of the criteria that's required. Um, however, per the submitted plans and documents that are included in your packets, staff concludes that the criteria has been met. The Federal Communication Act preserves state and local authority over zoning and land use decisions for personal wireless service facilities, but it sets forth specific limitations on that authority. Specifically, a state or local government may not unreasonably discriminate among providers, may not regulate in a manner that prohibits or has the effect of prohibiting, provision of personal wireless services, must act on applications within a reasonable period of time and must make any denial of an application in writing supported by substantial evidence in the written record. The statute also preamps local decisions premised directly upon, or excuse me, directly or indirectly on the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, assuming that the provider is in compliance with the commission's, uh, radio frequency rules. So under federal law, a local government must allow a wireless facility provider to close a significant gap in the provider's own service. But may, may require that the provider adopt the least intrusive means to close that gap. The provider has to distem-, to, um, demonstrate that a significant gap exists and regardless of whether a significant gap, gap exists, that its proposal represents the least intrusive means to achieve its service goals. In the submittal documents, the applicant provided a written statement indicating need due to a gap in coverage. The applicant also provided a list of alternative sites that were eliminated due to different circumstances. Those included, um, Matilah Plaza, Ojai Unified School District, Libby Park, Post Office Tower, and Soul Park, um, God Course. I, I thought it was Golf Course, but in two documents I saw the word God Course. Okay, thank you. So that was my, my bad. It didn't get caught, cause it was a real word. Okay, so, um, right, golf is also a real word. Um, a radio frequency emissions compliance report was, was prepared that includes that based on the results of simulation, this site will be in compliance with FCC standards um, for general population upon applying specific barriers and signage. The noise evaluation was prepared concluding that the project will comply with the city of Ojai's, um, applicable noise limits that are designed in, in our, um, municipal code. And assigned consent to accommodate a future second set of wireless carrier antennas was also submitted, which would allow, um, a co-location in the future, which is a good thing. So it would be one location with, uh, two facilities as opposed to yet another location. There are special noticing procedures for wireless facilities, including that a notice be mailed to property owners at, of, um, within five hundred feet, where usually we, um, notice to three hundred feet. And the environmental determination for this project, um, request was determined to be categorically exempt under two categories. One, uh, class thirty-one and the other, third, excuse me? Oh, thirty, thirty, sorry, class thirty-one and a class one. Uh, one, uh, the thirty-one is regarding historical resources and the other is regarding that it's, uh, that the project is involving negligible or no expansion of the use. And even though that looked really long, I thought, I thought I wrapped it up pretty quickly. I hope it wasn't too, too fast in my speaking. Lucas has something to say and then I'm open for questions.
I wanted to go a little bit further into, um, planning commission's recommendation to city council. If you read the code, the code actually specifically identifies that conditional use permits end with this body. However, there's a resolution that was put together and adopted by city council in two thousand and fifteen. It's resolution fifteen dash thirteen. In that resolution, it clearly identifies that we go above and beyond regarding noticing. There's a slew of things that are done for telecommunications facilities. Also within there are standard procedures and process. Those standards, procedures and process talk about conditional use permits going before this body and also going before the body of the city council. So it's an additional step.
Is that all conditional use permits or just for telecomm-, wireless telecommunications?
Specific for telecom-, yeah, wireless telecommunications.
And so we do not make a determination subject to appeal, we make a recommendation.
Correct, and that recommendation will be forwarded to city council.
Okay. Let's, so let's see if, let's see if staff is done presenting it. By the way, you did, you did fine. Slow down just a little bit like Lucas does. Watch, watch his pattern of speech.
That's why he's the director.
It's very good.
Um, honestly, I, um, I also had a, a pretty long presentation and I was real conscious of that and didn't, didn't wanna take too long. Um, and I, of course, I'm open for questions and I am finished. I do wanna say, I believe we have, um, the applicant here as well online.
Oh, online, okay, good.
His name is Chris, Chris Toheeny. At, so whatever point you wanna talk to the.
Cause we had, we had an applicant representative here for the next case as well and I didn't see any other persons present. Um, okay, uh, very brief clarification questions for staff.
So, is, was there already a condition? Oh, sorry.
Also, you should ask him and look around and see whether you're the one to go next or not.
Oh.
You may.
Oh, I, I had started asking a question and I got stopped, that's why I thought I was. So, um, is this an initial conditional use permit or don't they already have one?
This is a conditional use permit for AT&T Wireless to have the unmanned facility on the rooftop. And there is not a conditional use permit for AT&T at this time.
I see.
There's already other stuff on the rooftop.
I see, okay, okay.
What is on the rooftop is mechanical equipment. Uh, this is a Pac Bell building and to my, I'm gonna surpass the.
There is a conditional use permit, uh, for, for the, for the use of the parking lot across the street. That's a CUP that was adopted in the seventies.
I see.
Independent of what we're looking at here. When you're looking at a site, um, you can have multiple CUPs on one site and each one of those are then governed independently. And each one of them can speak to each other to a certain degree. This one is operating independent.
I see, so it's an add-on to this building, which is a separate C, CUP?
Correct.
And there's no wireless transmission going on, on the roof of this two-story addition to the original switch building now?
Currently, there is not, that's correct.
There is not, okay. And this is all for cellphone coverage?
Yes.
Okay. Jamie? We have information about what is missing in their pattern and what improvement there would be for the consumer as a result of this. That seemed to be part of the criteria here.
That is part of the criteria and we did receive information, um, about there being a gap. There were not, to my knowledge, there's not specifics as to what's gonna happen when that gap is filled and I think that's a good question for the applicant.
I, I would just jump in here. It, it, the deal with a significant gap in coverage is generally, uh, focused on when there's a, um, a denial. So, uh, the commission or a city can only deny, uh, it's, the city's authority is very circumscribed under the federal wireless acts. So the city can only deny if it, uh, if there is, if the company is not, if there's no significant gap in coverage and there's no, and there is an alternative, a viable alternative. So, that's kinda when that comes into place. If, if the commission would consider that, that information would be helpful.
On this specific topic, I kind of expected to see a map of some sort that said, here's, here's the signal strength that we have or, or the ability to give a cellphone three or more bars out of five in this area today. And there's this other thing that's missing and if we add this equipment, then the, the area that we can provide that service is larger.
So the applicant has.
Something like that from the applicant?
We did, and the applicant, within their presentation, they have a PowerPoint presentation tonight, we'll be going over that as well.
I was hoping to see that, good.
So I have one other question, if I can do it, Chairman? Can I have, ask another question?
Go ahead.
So on, uh, the guidelines and standards in general, location guidelines, you have a list of, uh, eight. And there says priority of ones, and the one they picked is number six. And there's a letter here, you have a letter, but we don't have it, listing the places that they considered alternatives. So I assume they can explain why the first five.
Good question for the applicant.
Yeah, were not considered, but you, you felt, you were comfortable what they did.
Okay. Jamie, were you done? No, I got one more.
Great.
And it's a, it's a design question. And while it may be three feet additional going up to the thirty-five allowable feet. Um, and I've seen the building, but I, what I haven't done is simulated what that additional three feet would look like in terms of the massing of the building and, um. Yeah, it's a six-foot fence. Right now they wanna take up to nine, right?
It, it, yes, it's a parapet, it's a parapet and also, um, just for your, for your information, there is a simulated photo in your packet, so you can see. a simulated photo in your packet, so you can see what it is now and what it will look like. And I know that's not real life, but there is a simulation.
I, I saw that, but I, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to understand is, you know, these things, these, these buildings, particularly telephone buildings and electric company buildings, which are filled with equipment and no personnel, can wind up being pretty easily identified to your eye. You don't know what you're looking at, but you know it's not, it's, it's off, there's something, because it doesn't have windows on the second floor, and its massing is different. And usually, there's some attempt to hide that through ornamentation, or vegetation, or, you know, a roof slope that's really just a, a, a design element that is used to make the building look more like and more sympathetic with the other kinds of buildings that are in its, in its surroundings. Did you have a chance to look at that, that issue, or did you, did, or did you have any concerns about it?
We did look at the design issue and looked at the photo simulations, and the building materials are going to be the same materials, well, they will look like the same materials and be the same color, and we have moved it forward with a recommendation, and also the Historic Preservation Commission looked at it, and didn't feel that the, and the Historic Resources Report didn't feel that the addition, the enlargement, rather, was going to be taking away from the integrity of the existing historic building.
And the part of the building that this is actually mounted on is not the original switch building from the 1920s. There was something added in the 50s or the 70s or sometime, that is, the taller rear portion that now has this fenced mechanical equipment around it, yeah.
Parapet, good, good architectural word, I had to look it up.
Okay, John, you had a question?
Yeah, just two questions. So you notified everybody within 500 feet, yeah?
Yes.
Any responses?
No.
Second question.
Oh, excuse me. Oh, thank, thank you. So there's a, a public notice, a legal notice that goes out in the mail to everyone with, every property owner within 500 feet. However, we also physically post it here at City Hall on the building itself, and also our city website has information about the public hearings and what the recommendation to the commission was from the Historic Preservation Commission.
And the packet is on the website.
And the packet is on the website, right, tonight's packet, and Historic Preservation Commission's packet.
Then, second question. I noticed that there's, you know, a noise finding in here, and it's obviously going to generate some, some noise, lower than our thresholds, which is good. But is there any noise coming from the building today?
Maybe the applicant can answer that.
Okay, all right, cool.
And most, most central offices operate on DC, so you don't have a lot of 60-cycle hum pervading the neighborhood.
Right.
That's how, that's what powers your landline phone at home if you have AT&amp;T, is that DC service. I used to work for Cincinnati Bell.
Yeah, you know a lot about it.
Judy, did you have questions for staff?
Just, just one small comment, and that is, in the photo section that you gave us, page three of four, shows that white current box structure above the, above the other buildings. And when I drove by, my only comment was, it's very...
Taken from the parking lot across the street.
It's very white. One of the comments from the public indicated they thought it would be a little less obtrusive if it were a slightly darker color, kind of matching what, what I see in this photo. Anyway, that's just my suggestion.
So you wanted to match the color of the building?
Of, of the buildings below it.
Below it.
Matches, it matches the color of the AT&amp;T building, but does not match Jim and Rob's and the other stuff that's in...
The AT&amp;T building's across the street.
Pardon me?
The AT&amp;T building's across the street, isn't it?
If you look at that picture, what you see is the very front end of the AT&amp;T building.
Which is sort of beige.
On...
Three of four, the bottom one?
Page three of four.
Yeah.
You're looking...
That doesn't look the same.
No, you're, you're on a different page. Page three of four, Jeff.
Mine says three of four.
Okay, this is, this is...
It's a different three of four.
This is attachment E.
E.
Oh, attachment E, okay, now I see it, okay.
Okay.
I see.
I'm just saying that that would...
I see what you're saying, that is definitely a different color.
The AT&amp;T building is a different color from the building next door.
So that AT&amp;T building just rises above the other building?
Yeah.
I see.
Does today, and it's going to rise a little bit more if we, if we recommend approval of this.
And can we recommend painting the AT&amp;T building so it looks like downtown colors? Or is that going beyond our scope?
If I can respond, so on attachment E, page two of four, you'll see that, when, when you look at this building from, when you look at the whole project building from a different angle, you see the whole project building, and you see that the colors match from ground to sky. When you're looking at it in attachment E, three of four, you're seeing it from across Ojai Avenue, therefore, you're not seeing the entire building, you're only seeing the top of the building. Having said that, the Planning Commission does have the purview to, I mean, you're, you're reviewing the design, so you, you can recommend different colors.
Of course, the building here, whatever is this, Ojai Electric, can't even read it, but anyway, this one is white. So these are all brown, and that's white over here.
Yeah.
I just, I, my only point was, I thought it would be less in-your-face.
From that vantage point.
From that vantage point, if it were a matching color. Although I also have to admit, I've never seen it before. And I've lived here 18 years, I've never looked up there.
Judy, one of the big things you always hear about is the importance, and if you read the, a lot of the code, about the, matching the, the nature, natural decor, you know, so people talk a lot about being able to see the mountains, and looking up, and looking like, you know, and so, I would argue that if it were the same color as the building in front of it, it would be more aesthetic, walking down the street and looking at it. If that's something we care about, or can regulate, I mean...
We do, and we can, and we should.
Yeah, I think we should, because...
By my humble...
Because I don't care what it looks like looking the other way, that's not looking at the mountains. What matters is you're on Main Street and you're looking out.
If you're standing on a sidewalk in front of Jim and Rob's, you can't see the mountains because the building's in your way. This picture is taken from across the street.
Yeah, but that's one of the things...
Stand back far enough, can you see the mountains?
Yeah, but I mean, that's one of the things we talk about in Ojai and downtown, is trying to make sure that...
The viewscape.
The viewscape is natural and pleasant, and I hadn't noticed it myself, but now that I do, I would argue that we, it's not going to cost them that much to paint it.
Well, they, they're going to paint anyway, they're building a new structure.
Why not paint it?
They have not proposed to change the paint either of the existing wall or the existing building.
I, I'm, I'm not asking to change the color of the building, I'm just asking...
The box on top?
The box on top.
Okay.
Is that the box we're looking at right there?
That is the equip and enclosure, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I have a couple of questions for clarification. I have three things I'd like to talk about in the resolution itself, but we'll get to that later, right? Okay. In attachment C, I think that's a question for the applicant. I'd like to, just curious why there's no antennas pointed north? Is there no gap in coverage north?
It's a good question for the applicant.
Yeah.
Yes.
In attachment F, I presume all these other attachments, C, F, G, and H, those are all attachments provided by the applicant?
Yes, they are.
Okay, then I'll ask those questions then.
Okay.
And I have all the clarity I need to proceed, thank you. Anyone else have a supplemental question to clarify things with staff? All right, very good. Brian, could you bring the applicant in, please?
Yeah.
Please identify yourself, sir, and, and understand that you're not subject to the so poorly enforced three-minute limit on speakers tonight. Mr. Dohini, yes, please, go ahead, sir.
He is muted.
Still muted. You're muted, sir. That's a local control. There you go.
There we go. Sorry about that.
He should be able to share his screen too, when he wants to do his presentation.
Yes, yeah, if you have a presentation, please feel free to share a screen.
If you have a presentation, I did share it with Terry today, I'm not sure if you're able to share it from your end, I will try to share it from my end as well. Let me see if I can pull that up.
There we go.
Can you see that?
Yes, sir.
Can you make the picture part bigger, and get rid of the side stuff?
I have a feeling this is some of what we already have in the packet, but there may be additional material. Yes, please go ahead, sir.
Okay. Good evening to everybody, members of the commission, and any public that's attending tonight. Again, my name is Chris Dohini, and I'm representing Smart Lane Group as the applicant regarding this project for a wireless facility for AT&amp;T. I appreciate your allowing me to attend virtually, even though I'm originally from Ventura and still have family there, I currently am living in San Diego, so I won't try not to take up too much of your time, because I know you have had a full agenda tonight, but I hope you will indulge me as I explain a few crucial elements of my job and how we arrived at this point. Hopefully, it will be somewhat informative. Hopefully, we will be able to answer most of your questions from the presentation, and then we can address the others after. First off, I would like to thank the members of the staff with the City of Ojai for working with our team on this project. I will be presenting a brief slideshow that will help clarify how we got here to the proposed location, 202 West Ojai Avenue. With everything going on, the need for communication is vital, from supporting our first responders via the Government First Net Program, to bringing reliable connectivity for people working from home, and students attending virtual classrooms. These are just some of the tremendous benefits that this proposed wireless facility will Next ring identifies our search ring, provided to us from AT&amp;TRF. That's where our job starts with the search ring, which is basically a circle on a map. My first item of business is to figure out the applicable jurisdiction and municipal code ordinances related to wireless communications facilities. I then take the preferences and requirements of the wireless ordinance, coupled with my preliminary conversations with the city planner, and we begin contacting the property This next slide is what we kind of classify as our ABELS table. So, when contacting property owners and selecting viable candidates, I have to keep in mind the five ABELS of site acquisition. Number one, is the site zonable? Am I in compliance with the local zoning code? When I am looking at a potential location for a cell site, I have to make sure the location is zoned for cell sites and allows it. Is the site leasable? I need a willing property owner whom will sign a long-term lease with AT&amp;T. Do I have a property owner interested in leasing space, and will he or she agree to terms AT&amp;T requires? Number three, is the site RF-able, short for radio frequency? We have to make sure if the location is situated correctly in order for the RF, radio frequency, to provide that reliable coverage. The key factor is location and height. Can I obtain enough height without nearby interference, meaning no buildings or trees directly blocking the antenna signal on the wireless communication facility to fill the gap in coverage? Is the site constructible, number four? Are there any construction factors that come into play? I.e., do I have power and telco nearby? If it's a rooftop, do I have enough space, meaning horizontal separation of the antennas? Is it structurally sound to hold the antennas? Are there any underground utility easements that will limit my placement of the facility? And number five, is it regulatory able? Meaning if it meets all the requirements of regulatory agencies, agencies on the local state and federal government levels? I need to make sure that I can obtain a negative declaration of CECL requirements, or that an environmental assessment will be approved on the site. For example, I cannot construct a site on or near a gas station. Our next slide, two pillars of zoning. After I have satisfied the five ABELS, and AT&amp;T has approved my recommended candidate, I am then ready to start working on the zoning application, and when I file an application, I do so with two main pillars of proof in mind. Number one, I have to show that AT&amp;T has a significant gap in coverage. This has not been the issue on this project. And substantial evidence showing and explaining that gap in coverage has been provided to planning staff and is included in the staff report, as well as below, I'll show you further demonstration of that. Number two, the other burden of proof I need to meet is my, is that my proposal is the least visually obtrusive means to fill this gap in coverage. Federal law stipulates that I have met my burden of proof in showing these two requirements. Then, even if I am not in compliance with the applicable local zoning ordinance, then the denial of my application would create an effective prohibition of a wireless communications facility, which would be a violation of federal law, and that denial would be overturned by higher court. AT&amp;T believes, as do I, that we have gone above and beyond our burden of proof to show that this proposal is the least obtrusive means with which we can fill our gap in coverage. Several factors can certainly be considered by planning staff to make a determination of least, least intrusive means. I brought up the five ABELS previously to show that the factors that courts have considered to effectively rule out other possibilities. Slide five is, is a picture of the zoning in and around our proposed facility. Our proposed facility is located in a commercial C1 zone. The maximum height allowable, allowable in this zone is 35 feet, which our site meets. Slide six, which was discussed earlier, is the alternative site analysis, and the properties and addresses that we, individual landlords that we spoke to, we have considered and effectively ruled out several other property locations within and near the search ring. Please keep in mind that of the five ABELS, leasable is a number two consideration. If a property owner is not interested in leasing space to AT&amp;T, it is very rare that the property owner would take the time to put in writing the fact that he is not interested. Generally, they will simply discontinue contact. AT&amp;T has a policy that we give a potential candidate 30 days to respond to numerous attempts to contact, and then we legally assume that he is not interested. Now, we have to do everything in our power within those 30 days, including phone calls, emails, certified letters, and if the property owner is local, we will also pay a visit or two to the owner's location to determine interest. Slides seven, eight, and nine, are photo simulations, also included in the staff report. That I just wanted to also demonstrate here. Number seven, view looking northwest from Blanch Street. Number eight, and you have seen most of these before, view looking southeast from Blanch And number nine, view looking east from the parking lot. Now, I can address any questions after I finish up here. The next slide is, is propagation map coverage demonstration. This first one shows coverage without the site being active. As you can see, this location here is where our proposed facility is, is located. One of the questions that was addressed regarding the direction of the antennas being, pointing, pointing to the north, the area that's going to be served and the azimuths... be served and the azimuths that are provided kind of dictate, uh, where the antennas are going to be pointing to improve the, uh, service as much as possible. So this is the initial coverage without the site being active, and then the next slide shows the difference in the two. So you can see this area here all being primarily to the north, east, and west, and then going back kind of just showing the kind of the difference. Get my mouse here. So you can see the yellow coverage, purple coverage, and then the new coverage to the north, east, and west, where we already have some coverage to the south, um, but it also improves coverage all throughout the downtown area. Keeping that slide there is, the number nine slide basically is a brief description of the various levels of coverage shown on the maps. So for in-building service, in general, the area shown in dark green should have the strongest signal strength and be sufficient for most in-building coverage. However, in-building coverage can and will be adversely affected by the thickness, construction, type of walls, or your location in the building, i.e., if it's, if you're in the basement or if you're in the middle of the building with multiple walls, et cetera. In transit service, the areas shown in the yellow should be sufficient for on-street or in-the-open coverage, most in-vehicle coverage and possibly some in-building coverage. And then outdoor service, the area shown in the purple, which is there more to the north, should have sufficient signal strength for on-street or in-the-open coverage, but may not have it for in-vehicle coverage or in-building coverage. And basically, that's a, this is a summary of those points I just made. So I'm available for any questions, and hopefully I can help clarify some of the items you had, uh, brought out earlier. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Uh, do we have questions for the applicant?
No.
John?
Yeah, dude. Uh, we were just talking about noise prior. Is there any noise, uh, currently coming from the building?
Not currently, no. The, um, the, uh, the noise study that was provided, um, shows that generally, um, we are not providing a, a generator on this, uh, facility, um, and that's, our noise studies usually address any noise that's, uh, that would come from the generator, but, um, in this case, we're, we're not, uh, having a generator.
Okay. But you have other, you have 60-cycle prime power in the building, and that's what you're going to use?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, second question, uh, does it include, obviously, um, internet service, 4G, 5G capabilities?
Well, the level, the level of service is pretty much determined by the, uh, the, the overall network provided for the area, um, whether it's 4G or 5G, I can't speak specifically to that. Um, the site is, is designed to, you know, for the, the latest technology and equipment, but, um, I can't specifically quote one or the other as far as 4G or 5G goes, but, uh, top-level services is, you know, indicated in the, in the project.
So the equipment you're proposing will support 5G, but you don't know whether AT&amp;T will offer it?
Right.
Correct, and defining the 5G, um, specifically is, uh, is beyond my, uh, I guess, technical expertise. Um, in my view, 5G is, uh, kind of a, a network and marketing, um, conversation, and, uh, it's also, it's, it's a, I guess, a, a broad, uh, scope for, uh, services that need to be available to provide that 5, 5G definition.
Yeah.
Including, uh, and, you know, wireless services, fiber network services, um, that are in, in the, in the local community that you'd be, you know, talking about.
Right. Okay. Done, John?
Yep.
Uh, Jamie, you have some questions for the applicant?
Um, no, actually, it was, I was going to ask about, about 5G. I presume that they'll be putting in 5G, you know, um...
Yeah, I mean, the end, the end goal is, yes, to provide 5G services, um, and, and the equipment that's being installed now is, is designed to eventually provide that 5G service.
Um, and you don't happen to know, because I can't tell from the maps that you're showing there, we have a state highway that runs straight through town and then runs out of town, 150, uh, and the through traffic in town uses that route, and there is a AT&amp;T dropout. You can't drive the 150 down the Dennison Grade or up the Dennison Grade without losing, um, uh, a signal for a period of, if you're driving it at the speed limit, probably three minutes.
And it's not clear from the map whether Dennison, where Dennison Grade is on the map?
I have no idea whether it's going to fix that problem.
Yeah.
It, it's the only problem that I've experienced, uh, in Ojai, but I experience it every day, twice a day, so it's irritating. I'd just be interested to find out whether that's being addressed.
Okay. Jeffrey, you have questions for the applicant?
Uh, this is a follow-up, um, that a fellow commissioner raised about, uh, making the color of this building, uh, match more the, the decor of downtown Ojai, not so white.
Of the adjacent building.
Of the adjacent building, yes, so that when you're looking from the street, your building is, uh, not so contrasting, you know, even if it's not all the way as brown as that, that it's more that tone of color, that it would not be so intrusive to our viewing.
Is that part of your contract to decide on the paint color?
Well, it, um, generally, our, our goal is to do everything possible to meet the, the local community architecture, design, and, uh, including texture and color. We do everything possible to, to, to match those colors. Normally, it's of the, the building that we are, are working on. Um, it's a, it's a discussion, I guess, and, uh, how, how far into do we want to go to, to meet the buildings that are around the corner versus the buildings right next door.
The building you're sitting on.
There might, there might be some difference there. We, we would do everything possible to, to match the architecture and colors, uh, of the local area.
Yeah. Okay. More?
No.
Okay. Um, I have four questions. Uh, first is Attachment C. This is the 24-page fold-out. Uh, the antenna plan, I'm just curious why there are no antennas pointed north, and yet you show a great deal of coverage to the north once these east, west, and south-facing antennas are put in. Do you have, do you have a backside antenna pattern from these cell antennas? Is that how you're getting all that green coverage to the north?
When you're referring to not seeing antennas pointed to the north, are you looking at these specific drawings and I've pulled up here?
Okay, let me, let me pull it out. Uh, yes, let's look at page A2, which is page nine of 24 in Attachment C. It shows two or three antennas pointed slightly north of east, of west. It shows antennas pointing more or less east, and it shows antennas pointing slightly west of south. I don't see any antennas pointed to the north. Just curious how you get, how you get the increased coverage to the north without any antennas that point that direction.
Um, and addressing that, I would, um, you know, that is a RF engineer, um, determination. Uh, they provide us with the azimuths, directions that they...
You've got some backside field coverage, then.
I'm sorry?
I say you've got some backside field coverage.
Correct, there is, uh, you know, let me go back to the, uh, the other antennas. This and this AT&amp;T site at this location, in combination with this 4566, the new proposed site, they may have antennas pointing in this direction, but again, that's a RF engineer, uh, best response. I, I could get answers for that.
Okay. Um, I'd like to go then to Attachment F. This is a 21-page attachment, the MD Acoustics Report.
Mm-hmm.
The maps that are in here specifically, page three, and then an overhead aerial shot, page four, they are showing measurements, I think, of signal strength or whatever, uh, but not at this location. This looks like it's a location much to the north and west of 202 West Ojai Avenue. I'm not sure exactly where it is, but it looks like it is, um, well to the north and west. It's certainly not on Ojai Avenue, and so I'm, I, I, I question whether the MD Acoustics Report applies to this site. I understand the first page says they've completed a noise assessment for 202 West Ojai Avenue, but the maps that they present, uh, particularly on page four, it's got a, a light-colored circle and then, and then a, a darker area and five different RF monitoring points, or, I'm sorry, noise levels, uh, monitoring points that are not this site. So, uh, you know, the, the, uh, repeating our noise ordinance and a glossary is useful, but if the analysis was not done on the site for which the permit is requested, then it's of little use to us. Can you help?
I can help, uh, get clarification for that, um, and see why the, how, you know, why the reasons the demonstration is showing that. Trying to see the graphic that you're referring to, but I'm not sure I'm looking.
Okay, it's, it's, um...
Page four, Attachment F.
Yeah, it's Attachment F. It is the F, MD Acoustics. The text is two pages. It's the following two pages that are showing, that purport to show a, a cell site, and then subsequently, a cell site and five noise-measuring locations around that cell site, and that cell site is not downtown Ojai.
Okay.
Who knows where it is?
I don't know.
It's called, it's called Exhibit B.
Exhibit B, future operational noise levels, is what it says.
Yep, yep. Now, I, it seems to me...
You see, I'm looking at Exhibit B here.
Seems to me that OV MAC took up a case with AT&amp;T, putting a cell site far to the northwest of downtown Ojai, outside the city limits, and this may be a noise assessment for that site. I don't know, but right now, I don't know what, I don't know what this report refers to, because it is clearly not 202 West Ojai Avenue.
Then there's a site plan on the page before that. It's not clear that it's the same place either.
Exactly. Page, page three is a, is a, is a engineering drawing. Page four is an overhead picture showing noise-monitoring sites, but it's not this site.
Via Berenca, that's obviously not downtown.
Okay. So if, if we can't, i- i- if we cannot discern what MD Acoustics actually measured and where, I have trouble approving this. Um, let's go on to Attachment G. This is the GCB Services Radio Frequency Emission Compliance Report. Um, it talks on page four of proposed mitigations, uh, specifically talk of lots of caution signs added. I'm, I'm not sure, uh, apparently, these are on the FRP barriers, but maybe they're somewhere else. I'm not sure, but nothing shows on the photos of any of the proposed added barriers, so I can't tell how large and obtrusive the signs are. The, uh, the photo, uh, simulations show no signs, no apparent signs on the FRP barrier around the four sides of the equipment enclosure, so maybe the signs go somewhere else, but I'm not sure. I did not see in the compliance statement, that's on page five, or any of the subsequent statements. I did not notice, at least, maybe they're there, but I did not see any call-outs of where these signs are.
They look like they're inside, inside the, inside the structure there. See the colors in there?
I see, I see on page five, it says, Section B, install three-foot barriers with caution sign two at the left side, and two-foot barriers with caution sign two at the right side. So these are caution signs that keep people that have gotten up on top of the building and inside the mechanical enclosure...
Yeah.
...to keep them from getting too close to the antennas. Is that what we're talking about?
That's what appears to be from the picture.
Correct, yeah.
Walking surface of recommendations compliances.
You see the sectors, they say Sector C, that's inside, Sector B.
So what we're, what we're mitigating is not any signals or anything of that sort. It's personnel safety.
Correct.
It's like, uh, saboteurs or something getting up there, and they were kids. Be warned, not that that would make any difference, but...
That's, that's fine, then, they, then I understand. Uh, let's go to Attachment H. This is GPA Consulting, I think. Is that you, sir?
No, uh...
Oh, no, this is, oh, the historic preservation. I'm sorry. Um, the, the, the report here describes the arbolada as north of Rancho Drive and west of Del Norte Road. I walked that area, and I walked through a lot of arbolada before I get to Del Norte Road, um, and I just, my understanding is the arbolada is primarily east of Del Norte, west of Foothill, north of Cuyama, and has nothing to do with Rancho Drive, and so I'm just wondering, were these people actually here?
Did they do the right... Which page are you on?
Um, page two. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, page, I'm sorry, page 26. You're right. Thank you. Thank you for asking. Page 26.
This is so, uh, long and dense, it's hard to keep up.
Oh, hey, this, that's, that's what makes some of this reading hard. Um, this is in the second paragraph?
Oh, I see it. Libby is also associated with Marvel.
Yeah, so it, it talks about the arbolada, and it's not the arbolada, I understand. Maybe that's not important.
Well, it's not technically relevant to this area.
Because they're really talking, they really should be talking about the building.
Looks like someone just made a mistake in geography.
Downtown district.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, so those are my questions, sir, and the real problem I have right now is, is, um, with the MD Acoustics Report, I don't know what they measured and where, and, and I'm, I'm...
Yeah, I will, I will, uh, go back to them and, uh, make sure that we're referring to the, uh, appropriate property and, uh, review that.
The report does not show the, the requested property.
Does it describe it?
Not really, no. Uh, well, yeah, the first paragraph says they completed a noise assessment...
Yeah, that's it.
...located, for the building located at 202 West Ojai Avenue.
But then they, and then they outlined...
And, and then it says the site plan used for the project is located in Exhibit A, page three of this report, and that's some completely different... And that's some completely different place.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what I am concerned about, is whether or not any of the conclusions they drew, which said, no acoustic problems, were actually measurements relevant to this site.
This, yeah, the Exhibit A is actually 15787 Baranca, Paris, California. This is from Paris, California.
It's not even, okay, it's not even in the valley. Paris is a long way from here.
It's not Ojai, no. So, yeah, we, it would be nice to have a, a site plan that's Ojai.
They do say, I guess they're just saying what this equipment, its noise would be.
Right, but it would be nice to have a site plan that's actually valid in our town.
That's true.
I don't,
Instead of using general.
As a result, I don't, I don't yet believe that they have actually completed a noise assessment for this site.
So if they were doing a noise assessment of equipment, they haven't put up there yet, they would have had to have tested, I guess, at that height in some location to be able to say, that's what the noise would be?
I, I don't know how you do a noise assessment without some active equipment in the area.
So you'd like to put some equipment that would make that amount of noise, and then you would test it down below?
I, I would suggest we, instead of possibly going into deliberations, we, we ask the applicant, um, if, if they're aware of, of this, or any possible problems, um, before we kind of move forward.
Well, I, I don't believe this applicant is in a position to answer that question. Would you say, sir, that you are?
Well, um, as the one gentleman mentioned that, yeah, obviously, they can't do a, a study of the existing the equipment, because it's, hasn't been constructed yet, so I would assume that they, they measure equipment same or similar to, uh, what was being proposed at, at this facility. I'd have to look at this a little bit closer to determine how they, uh, came and included the, you know, the maps that we're referring to uh, in this study, in the site plan that they're, they're showing here. Uh, obviously, it's not the, not matching our site plan, and so we need to get some clarification on that. Yeah.
Uh, because this, okay, I've, I've flown into Paris. I know it's pretty empty out there.
I think it's useful to know what technology they're gonna use, because they're not gonna actually have it built yet, how they would go about the process of determining at that height and that location, what the sound would be like, and then adjacent property or below it.
This is, this is a cell tower in the middle of the desert, basically.
Yeah.
It's all open land for miles around, there's an occasional house. I don't know if, if the same analysis applies to something in downtown Ojai.
You could tape record the noise and go up there and play it.
I don't know.
You can hear it, I don't know, there must be some technology that people use.
I'm not even sure what noise you're talking about.
And, um, again, I want to do, point out that, uh, we, we, one, we don't, are not have a generator at this facility and
Yeah.
the antennas themselves, the supporting equipment, do not have any significant noise levels that are, I would think, could be measurable.
It, it would appear that it is the, uh, air conditioning equipment that is going to be newly installed.
I don't know.
They have a piece of, of, uh, equipment in here with the
Condensers.
With the, uh, with the sound levels emanated by the air conditioning.
It talks about fans and exhaust from cabinets.
Yeah, they've got pictures of the.
Are those, are those things being newly added inside this FRP barrier? Is that the noise we're, we're, we're talking about? It's nothing to do with the wireless telecommunications per se?
No, we would only, uh, provide the study, you know, in applying to our equipment that we're proposing.
And the equipment you're proposing include anything other than cell phone RF antennas?
And the supporting equipment to include cabinets, um, but again, their noise levels are, uh, in, looking at this report, are assuming that they made the mistake and included the wrong images, the wrong site plan and, and, uh, referenced the wrong property.
Oh, interesting. Are you guys gonna be installing a cooling system inside of the?
Inside the fence?
Uh, no, we are providing, uh, outdoor equipment cabinets, so, um.
Oh, so this might be the wrong plan.
So on the findings here, there is, there is noise levels from something listed.
From something.
Uh, but I don't know if those noise levels are at the, where the equipment is, or is it meet the noise ordinance, which has to do with the adjacent property, not the noise up there?
Yeah.
So I think it's worth getting clarification.
Well, yeah, and it's, if the noise is coming from the Flex Air G, GFCS 60, which is not gonna be installed, then where's the noise coming from?
Well, that's the thermal management solution, I, these antennas get warm.
That's this thing.
So.
Noise level projection to the nearest commercial receptors. I don't even know what they, that means, but they did say there's noise.
Yeah. But he said they're not installing that.
Uh, so I'm having trouble understanding what it is you're proposing to do, sir. Is it put in cellular antennas and support equipment, like, you said, no generators, but the thermal management solution is something that keeps these cellular antennas cool, I take it? And that is equipment that will also be on the roof inside this FRP barrier?
Well, we are providing battery cabinets that also have a, uh, include fans for cooling, and so that may be what they're referring to as far as, uh, we measure noise levels of, of the fans as part of the battery cabinets. As far as what we are proposing and equipment summarized here in the project description.
I think we just need to get a clarifying report, because it, the findings reference Exhibit B, which is the wrong place, so you can't very well.
Well, and I understand that they haven't installed any of this equipment on top of the AT&amp;T building. I, I'm not expecting that, I guess.
Yeah.
But it's not clear that the environment that's shown in, in the Exhibit A and B, or the page three and four, that the environment is anything like the environment of downtown Ojai.
Clearly not, yeah.
And, and maybe some analysis shows that it, either that it is or that the differences are not material, and that would be fine.
Well, we just need an explanation.
Yeah, I just need some clarification on that one, I think.
Yeah, and we, and also just clarification on if a, if the four Purcell cabinets with Flex are, are being installed, if you guys are installing that or not.
Yeah. If we're doing a noise analysis, what is it that's causing the noise? And is that something you're installing, or is it something that's already there? If it's already there, I presume that it's, that it's covered under legacy rules, grandfathering, or whatever.
Yes, the, the measurements are for the equipment that we are installing, which includes the Emerson Power Cabinet, Purcell Cabinets.
And the Flex Air Cabinet and fans and all of that.
So you're saying there's no noise now whatsoever?
No noise now.
Because if there was already noise and this added to it, you take the addition, you know, the combined noise.
Yeah. Staff, can you help us with this?
Uh, I was leaving it up to the applicant, however, I will make one, one point, and that is, if you look at the plans, which are Attachment C, page 10 of 24, it does identify new stacked Purcell Cabinets, four in total. It has a new Emerson Power Cabinet, and then there's also the new PPC Cabinet.
Okay, so they are, they are.
They are, they are new.
Okay.
But the, but getting back to the, the point that was raised by the commission, by Chair Qualisi earlier, in regards to the noise component, not having the correct attachment really kind of, um, negates the whole package itself as, as it relates to that specific attachment. Um, the record needs to show the correct information, that's, that's not being shown here currently.
And, and as I say, if, if the analysis shows that the, that the coverage of downtown Ojai is no different from the coverage in Paris over flat desert ground, um, then I'd be interested to see that. And if it's not the same, then I'd like to know what it is here.
You would think a flat, level ground would actually, noise would travel further
Yeah.
than, uh, uh, way up high in.
And if you look at these photo simulations, there are, in some directions, there are trees. And that's gonna cut the noise.
Of course.
But how much?
Noise up high might be easier to hear, too.
Now, my, um, assumption at this point is that the images that they provided do not apply to this study or report and findings that they, they show here. So we need to, uh, those need to match up.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd just like to know, I, I'd like to know how the acoustics, the, the noise analysis applies to downtown Ojai. Because it's not obvious right now that, that it does.
That particular site at that particular height.
Yeah.
What we need. How far would that sound go?
If you look at, uh, Attachment E, page three, you can see that there are, there are trees that appear to be taller than this equipment enclosure that are to the northeast and east. And so that's good, I guess, but I just don't understand it right now.
Well, that's, that's just, that's a pretty empty space in terms of shade, let me tell you, because they go there a lot.
Yeah.
It's a desert, basically. But it's a building.
Guys, I think we just need the right, we just need the right exhibit.
Need to understand the acoustics.
Right, correct, we need the right exhibit so we're confident that, uh, we're referring to the same property.
Yeah. And I don't have, I don't have any other problems with it right now. Uh, the other antenna, the other questions have been answered, except I still don't understand how you get all that northern coverage with no north-facing antennas. So if there's, if you could answer that plus the acoustics question, I'd be happy.
Well, I've got a.
Yes, sir.
On, uh,
Painting.
Page eight, uh, Attachment H, page three.
Attachment H?
Yes, page three of 79, um, which is this is a lot of, um, if you scan down to, at the top, in 1996, they installed new air conditioning equipment and a screen. So we know that the building generates some sound if it already has air conditioning.
Right, and presumably, whatever sound that equipment that was installed 25 years ago created was acceptable to the planning commission and/or the city council at the time.
But the property tests the noise, you need to attach that to the current noise and see what effect it has.
I would think, I would think that would be the, the logical, technical way to do it, yes.
Can't very well just go some other place where they don't already have that noise and say, well, that's the same.
And, and maybe it's, it's the other place, too, Paris is a hot place. But, um, I don't know. Uh, but if we could answer, if we could answer a few of these specific questions, I'd love to have these folks come back and give us the answers and then move this right along.
Yeah, otherwise, I don't.
I'm not comfortable with it unless we can continue it.
Understandable.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and the questions, um, we will go back and, and address those issues.
Terrific.
So before we, I could see that we're, we're moving in a, a certain direction, but I don't know that we actually opened it up to public comment. I know we have the applicant, um, giving a presentation, going back and forth. Were there any speaker cards, and we also need to open it up?
We've, we've asked.
Okay.
Yeah, we've been asking questions of the applicant at this point. And I have a speaker card, um, when, when, when we are at that point.
Okay.
I, I, do we have any more questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay. Then, uh, thank you, sir, for, for your time, and stick around if you would, we may have another question or two.
Thank you.
Uh, then we will open the public hearing. This is a public hearing item, right? Yeah, okay. Um, and we have one member of the public who wishes to speak, Bill Miley.
Good evening, Bill Miley. I've lived here for a long time, 53 years, hardly ever see the building until this is an agenda item and I went and looked. The enclosure on the top of the back building is, is nice, but it's very bright, and my eyes right now are very sensitive, and I find that there was a lot of glare coming from the color. So I would strongly suggest that.
From the existing building?
The, the existing enclosure on the top of the roof, the six feet.
They already have an enclosure.
The one that's there now. The one that's going to go up three feet.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Um, it's very glary, and I would suggest, seriously, the commission consider asking for earth tones, just on the top. Also, I have a comment about the noise. I had an experience about 30 years ago, living where I live now, up on North Signal Street. I can see the valley and I can hear the valley. And it seemed like every, almost every day of the week, or three times a week, two or three in the morning, I hear an industrial noise, ah, going over the city. Was talking to a neighbor up the street, he too saw it. So, one night at 1:30, 2 o'clock in the morning, we drove around, and we found it. It was the, uh, IT&amp;T building, they now have moved to Ochsner. And they made, they were a machinist, parts maker for aerospace. And they had contract machinists who came when they wanted to come. So they were allowed to come in at 10, 11, 12, 1, 2, 3, 4 in the morning. And they had all their filtering construction apparatus on top of the roof. You could tell, because you could see it all. We went and talked to the president, rather than calling the city, and he said, let me work on that. He says, we have a little budget problem right now, but we're gonna put a housing around it. And six months later, they did, and we never heard the sound again. And they didn't top it, it all went up. And I would guess, if all of the machinery you've been talking about is inside the enclosure, that'll happen here. That's my two thoughts, thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Brian, do we have anyone else with a raised hand?
No, there's no one online with a raised hand.
At this hour?
Okay, then, um, then we'll close the public hearing and deliberate, what do we, what does the commission wish to do with this case at this time? Yes, sir?
I would like to see paint samples of buildings around it, and the paint sample of the current building, and, uh, and alternative colors that might be done, because this is going to be higher.
Are you suggesting that this, this addition to the second-story building be a different color from the rest of the building?
Nope. I think we need to, I think we need to see that color, the, uh, that they're planning on painting it.
Pictures?
Vis a vis the paint chips of the surrounding buildings, so we can see how it, how it feels. I've got concern about that building being too bright right now, being too white on the scale. Look, there's a whole range of, of, of things in the arcade area or the historic area going down. Obviously, you know, you see the Keller Williams Building in the north on. Obviously, you know, you can see the Keller Williams Building in the north on Bland. You can see the others which are at contrast to the building. So obviously, then, anything above the building is going to be more in the sightline. And I, I am concerned about the sightline of this when you add three feet on it, and you want to be looking at the hills, and instead you're seeing something that's very white. So I'd like to just know what the paint colors are that we're looking at.
Okay. Judy?
I agree.
I, yeah, I agree with that. I would request that they, see if it's feasible that they could make more earth colors. Just like, almost a request to them to come back with some better ideas.
Okay. Once again, I'm asking, are you suggesting that the equipment enclosure be a different color from the rest of the building?
If need be, yeah. I mean, it would be nice if they made the whole building that as part of approving this. I mean, we just ask them...
I kind of think that's outside our purview.
Yeah, but you can always ask them. But anyway, I think that that's the part that sticks out the most, that, right now, what they've got, and...
I think we've got to be, we've got to be, I hate to jump in here, but I feel like I need to for the design piece. To Commissioner Bennett's point, yes, in terms of looking at consistency. To Commissioner...
Starkweather.
Starkweather, sorry. In terms of looking at repainting the entire building, no.
We can't do that, obviously.
It's outside of our purview.
But we can ask them the part that they're adding, that that be more aligned.
At least, at least know what it is. Get us a color board.
Yes, yes to that.
For the barrier.
Yeah.
But having a two-tone building is not...
No.
Possible. I mean...
No.
No, but maybe they might decide on their own to go off to another part.
If they, if they wanted to repaint that building, they'd have to go back to the HPC and say, "Is it okay if we paint the original historic part of the building a different color?"
Is that a historic building?
And, and then, when your grandchildren are on the planning commission, they might get an answer.
Now, I just want to clarify, it's not a historic building, it's located within the historic...
It's a contributor to the historic district, yes.
The state-designated historic district, yes.
Just like the Elrodar Hotel.
I think that's important to clarify, because it doesn't necessarily follow our strict format from a, a historic, a locally historically designated site or building.
Well, I, I read the, the historic resource report, and it has a little map of what the historic downtown historic district is.
Yep.
And this is in it.
It is, it's right on the edge, it bookends on the west end.
So they would have to get somebody to approve painting the rest of their building?
Oh, yes.
Yes, but, yes.
Okay.
But it's outside of the purview of the commission in terms of the entire building. But looking at the specific piece that we're talking about, to Commissioner Bennett's point, yes. And how that fits into the, the building in which it's cited on, and how that then interacts with the rest of the buildings, I think is within this commission's purview. So to your point, in terms of asking for paint samples, absolutely.
Or a color board, whatever.
Or color board. Color board would have the paint samples either way.
Yeah.
It's difficult sometimes, and to, to the applicant's point, at one point, I'll, I'll just mention, when you're looking at a, a photo that's been printed, that photo doesn't necessarily look the same as what's going to be out there. The paint sample, that's the physical sample that you're going to actually see out there. So...
Well, we had, as we discussed through questioning the applicant, we had three things, I think, that needed to be clarified. This is, the color board is a fourth.
Right.
Do you, you have those down?
Let's go through them.
There was the acoustic report. There was something about the air conditioning equipment that was put in twenty-five years ago?
Oh, current sound.
Existing.
That there's any sound coming out of that would add...
Existing noise levels.
Existing noise levels.
Because one of the reports does say that they put in air conditioning in it.
It's a fair point.
What's the third one?
Yeah.
The third one was the color, but then I were asking for a color board. There was two ones.
Okay, so that, that would be the same thing. Yeah. So my feeling is, at least one appropriate path for the commission to take right now would be, would be to, to suggest continuing this case to a date certain, so that the city doesn't have to go renotice people, and figure out a time when the city has, when the applicant has time to answer these questions, and the city has time to look at those answers before re-presenting the case to the commission.
I have a question for Claire.
I asked it to be added to the list, the question that we did not get an answer to, which is the public benefit. What gap is it filling? We have a problem on the 150, which is the state road, the biggest...
Ah.
...piece of, of transit infrastructure we have here. And there's a, there's a lot of dropout on AT&amp;T as a subscriber. It's the only place...
It's like it was all going to the north.
Yeah, it looks like north side of town.
They're not solving that problem.
No. Maybe that's another gap.
It does not, it does not appear to be solved. The major addition that they have is coverage to the north of the project site. It would certainly be a useful question to have answered of, does anything that is proposed here, or any other thing that AT&amp;T is doing, which would probably be something that they do through the county? Because these, these cell sites, we're not talking about Loran, where you...
Yeah.
Talking to ships two hundred miles offshore or something. These are relatively small cell sites in terms of their coverage.
They're line of sight typically.
Well, line of sight, yeah, not over the horizon. But even line of sight, FM radio's line of sight, you can get Los Angeles stations.
So that analysis is not here?
Yeah, so in terms of, that would be something that their RF engineer would need to, need to address. And I, I think...
I would, I would personally like to see the, the two maps of coverage before...
That'd be nice.
...the project, coverage after the project, that are, that are of a size...
That we can look at.
That I can actually look at a superimposed street map, highway map, whatever.
And then to Commissioner Bennett's point...
Does this have anything to do with the coverage at Dennison Grade, or is there other, some other plan? Though, one could argue the relevance to this case, because I, unless they're proposing that this solves the Dennison Grade problem, then, then it's not something that we're considering. But it's a useful question to ask, and a useful answer to get if they have the answer.
Well, shouldn't they have to say, "What is the gap?", and describe it, and be clear so we understand it?
Well, the, the two maps, the two maps that were there showed a definite difference in coverage, but they were very hard to read.
But is it, are they solving a real problem?
Yeah, does it meet the standard that is required to justify...
Does staff have those maps?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So maybe you could produce them at the next meeting in a, in an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven or eleven-by-seventeen format that would be...
Yeah, I think they're an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven. So, yeah, we can absolutely provide those for the next meeting, so they're a part of an attachment. Can we bring on Chris real quick, if, if the commission is okay with that? Because I want to ask...
No, he, I think...
I think we need to ask a question on how much time they need.
Need some collaboration on when it's appropriate, we can come back and talk about this again.
Yep. Because I don't think, the things that we're asking for, that the commission is asking for, sorry, I'm not asking for, the commission is asking for at this point, for clarification and further, I wouldn't necessarily say further analysis, but clarification in terms of the questions that have been asked. And there's not necessarily a response with the materials that have been provided. Chris?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Just fine, thank you, sir.
So you've heard from the commission, the four things that are being, it's four now. It was three, the fourth is the, is the clarification from probably an RF engineer that they have on staff through AT&amp;T, as to addressing that coverage gap along the 150.
Yeah.
And maybe it does, but we can't tell from the maps that we saw up on screen.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I, I agree with you. So I think there needs to be further clarification, or maybe even they have a plan in place already, in terms of how they're going to address it, I don't know.
Yeah.
Chris, that's a question for you and for your team. There's also the other three that were being mentioned earlier. Continuing this, if the commission was to vote to continue this, Chris, how quickly do you think you could turn around these four pieces?
I would expect at the next monthly hearing, next month, I think...
These are, these are semi-monthly, so we're talking...
July sixth would be the next...
July sixth and July twentieth, sir.
Yeah, I'm, July sixth, I think we should be able to turn these items around pretty quickly.
So the meeting is on July sixth. Staff will need to have the items prior to that. We can open up a calendar and, you know...
Like July first.
Right. So realistically, we would need them, what's today's date, the fifteenth?
Today's the fifteenth, yeah.
Yeah, let me see the calendar.
Then it goes to council after us.
Right.
Yeah, but we've got to answer these questions before we can make a recommendation.
Well, yeah, from their perspective, when can they expect to have an answer?
While Lucas is looking up dates, I'm just going to take a little detour and go back to the color board. I heard two different things. One, I heard color samples of adjacent buildings, and then I also heard, or understood that it would be a color sample of the existing building.
I don't, I don't, I don't think we can ask the applicant to provide a color board for buildings that are not part of the project.
That's why I wanted to clarify, because I...
What do you, what do you think, Epi? That, that sounds like not a doable do.
Correct. I, I think that's beyond the, the proposed project and the proposed U.P.
A color board for the proposed project is appropriate.
Correct.
And then, if we all get that, and we go around, look at the adjacent buildings and compare the color board, then we'll have the answer that we're looking for.
So you're looking for a color board with the understanding that you're not comfortable with the color because it's too bright? So it's proposed colors.
I, I would...
You want them to come back to you with proposed colors for the rooftop?
That would be good.
Right. I would just shy away from uncomfortable. I would say, the, the commission wants more clarification about the proposed colors.
I think it's, I think it's fair to, to ask, what are the real colors?
Correct.
Because we can't be sure of the photo simulations.
Okay. Thank you.
But to ask them to start considering painting the FRP barrier a different color from the rest of the building, I think is unreasonable.
Well, then how do we wind up with, with getting something that doesn't stand out? I mean, we've got, at some point, we've got to make a judgment call over, over a color. And that judgment call would be aided if the colors of the other buildings were there for us to look at, so we don't have to physically go out and do it. I don't know what's, why...
Yeah, I think, I think this is Chris speaking. The idea for the, the color of the proposed screening is to propose to have that to match the texture and color of the existing building. If you want to see, you know, determine if another color will work, that would be another, another decision, but not, it's sometimes not within the photo simulations and the light that the photos are taken, they don't always match exactly. But the plan and proposed work is to match, match colors best as possible, and that's their goal.
Color and texture of the existing building.
Correct. Yeah.
So here's the, in order for staff to be able to process this application and turn it around for the, for the, for this body, for the commission on July sixth, Chris, we would need all of this information, these four pieces that we're talking about tonight, by the twenty-second.
That's a great time.
By the twenty-second?
Yes.
A week from now. Is that doable?
Let's shoot for the next meeting. It's the one after that.
Continue to June, July twentieth.
July twentieth?
Yeah, I think that would be best, best to shoot for that date.
Okay. All right, so it sounds like it's not going to be the immediate meeting.
We don't want to, we don't want to ask the impossible of anyone, so...
Yeah, give it time.
Either, either the applicant or the staff.
Yeah, because it does, it, so I appreciate that. Moving it back basically a month is what it sounds like, which is...
We, we need to make informed decisions, and you need to see stuff before we do. It's all, all, it's all what happens first.
So for the, for the July twentieth hearing, you would need our research by July sixth?
So, yeah, I would need it by July sixth. Or sooner.
That's three weeks from now, yeah. Okay, then, then a motion would be appropriate here to continue this case to July twentieth, a date certain, and ask the applicant to come back with answers to the four questions that we've discussed tonight.
Can the motion be ISO move?
Sure.
ISO move.
All right.
Second.
Second.
There we go.
Jeff got the second, okay. Any discussion? Then, Brian, would you call the roll on the motion to continue the case to July twentieth, please? Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Terrific.
Oh, you're unanimous so far tonight. You know, we took a long way to get there.
We'll kick this can down the road. Uh, let's go on then to item five. This is another Mora case, sign permit, comprehensive sign program for 345 East Ojai Avenue. Mora?
Thank you, Chair Quillisi and commissioners. Yes, sorry. Um, yes, this is a request for approval of a comprehensive sign program for a multi-tenant commercial building located at 345 East Ojai Avenue. Subject property is located on the southwest corner of South Montgomery and East Ojai Avenue. It's comprised of a single-story building. It's a multi-tenant commercial building with four tenant suites. Per the Ojai municipal code, a comprehensive sign program is required whenever five or more signs are proposed for a new or an existing development. The applicant is proposing several, seven potential signs for the, for existing tenants. The intent of the city's sign standards, which ties directly to the proposed comprehensive sign program at the site, is to preserve the historic small-town aesthetic and character of the city while also avoiding visual clutter and any other adverse impacts to pedestrians or vehicles. The planning commission may approve the comprehensive sign program, which may modify the standard development standards for signs. That's why it's comprehensive sign program. There are four sign types. The sign maximum, the sign types and the maximum sizes are described in your packet. They include wall signs, projecting signs, and directory signs. All four tenants are proposed to have a wall sign, and two of them are proposed to have an individual projecting sign, and, but they, the two businesses fronting on Ojai Avenue can share a projecting sign. As proposed, the signs meet the intention of the municipal code regarding comprehensive sign programs, in that the signs are unified in colors, materials, style, and all current and future tenants would be required to follow these guidelines, should you adopt them tonight. And with that, I'm available for questions, and I think we have an applicant who's been sitting here through the, patiently through the meeting.
Patiently.
Do we have clarifying questions for staff? Jeffrey?
Just one. Well, page three of five, Attachment A, number eight, says the signs are in keeping with the city's East End sign guidelines, as referenced on pages...
Ooh, a new book for you to read.
Thirty-six, thirty-nine of the guidelines. I don't see that here. Is that something we've...
Well, what I did was I...
We just accept your word for it.
I took part of the guidelines and put them on page three of three in your staff report. It's attachment, oh, I'm sorry, I also, you should have attachment B.
B, that's the regular... B, that's the regular.
No, that's, no, you're, you're right. Those are the comprehensive sign standards.
I mean, I trust your word, it's not that big a deal, but it'd be nice to have it, if we're being.
The East End Design Guidelines, like the other design guidelines, are on the website, on the city website, I'm pretty sure. I've, I've downloaded and printed copies of them.
That's what I tend to do if I, if I know that they exist, but I didn't know it until I read this, that they existed, so.
Yeah, yeah. We have Downtown Core Design Guidelines, we have Arcade Plaza Design Guideline, we have East End Design Guideline, and there may be at least one more that I can't remember right offhand.
So, those guidelines are within the overall science standards, but they're more detailed?
Yes.
There, there, there's a lot of philosophical words in there that have to do with small-town character and stuff like that, too.
I see, I see. So, just clarifying question. So, we have, is it four businesses and seven signs?
Yes.
Got it.
What's the fourth business?
There's a restaurant that's within, within the.
There's a restaurant inside the brewery.
And this all came about because they'd like to have a, their individual sign on the front of the building, and that bumped them up to.
Sammy's or something like that?
Yes.
Yeah.
And with, uh.
Okay.
On attachment C, page nine of nine, tenant three, they have both the wall sign and the projecting sign. Is the projecting sign listing two businesses or just one?
I'm sorry, um.
It's all four.
It's all four?
Yeah, that's what it says on the instructions.
Oh, the one on the corner is, does, yes, you're right, that is, that is listing all four.
Okay, so that's the one on the corner, but what about the one that's tenant three, 105B Montgomery Street? Is that just one tenant sign?
Yes.
That's the dry cleaner.
Okay, so they'll, they'll, the dry cleaner will have a hanging sign with their name on it, and then they'll also have a, a wall sign with their name on it. And just one business. And then the one on the corner has all three businesses down.
The projecting sign, yes.
Has all four.
Got it, yeah.
Yes.
That's designed so when you're walking down the street, you'll see it, but you might not see it if you were just, you know, had to look at each one of those places.
Exactly.
That's a lot of signs for a dry cleaner.
Are the, are the the dry cleaner, for instance, or the decor are flat to the wall, they're not projecting, right?
They are, they would, they would be allowed to have a wall sign and a projecting sign. And I believe, I went out and took pictures, I believe they already have that.
So, the corner sign doesn't satisfy that.
Correct.
So, you'd have an initial projecting sign when you go around the corner? And then you would, as you walked, you would see the individual ones?
Yes.
Is that what's supposed to, okay, okay. Well, it's good, it's good, what you call it, wayfinding. Tells you where things are, which we need a lot more of in this town, I think.
We have here an admin report and then attachments A, B, and C. Attachment A is the resolution.
Yes.
B and C are submissions from the applicant?
Uh, one of them is a submission from the applicant, and I believe the other is the sign standards that are from staff. From the code.
Oh, okay, yeah, sure. Alright, oh, that's the right. A is the resolution, B is the code, C is the submission by the applicant, okay.
So, can you, someone just summarize what city east, east end sign guidelines say on page thirty-six to thirty-nine that you would argue that it is in compliance with?
Yeah, it's, it's, so what you're seeing with the signs is a wood, like a wood backing.
I see.
That is certainly something that's within the East End Design Guidelines. They're wanting more natural materials.
So, they're emphasizing sort of quality of the sign and whether.
Yeah, and you see that with the signs throughout the city, with the wood signs, with the, um, street signs and, and whatnot.
Yeah.
So, you're looking for some, some continuity, but also adding a modern touch.
Wood and you outline what you want the lettering to be, and then you eat the rest of it away so that it sinks back into the sign.
Metal is, is also another piece, and you're seeing that with these signs as well.
That's allowed as well.
Could you tell me, um, what will change with the current signage? Is it just the restaurant that plans to add a sign? They, they currently have a, what do you call that, a little A-frame thing out on the corner, but they want something on the wall. Is, is that all that changes here?
Well, they'll be allowed to then have their sign that complies on the wall, and they'll also be able to have the projecting sign. Right now, there's not a projecting sign that has all four tenants.
Okay, it, it just has the one.
Right, but I believe, and I'd like the applicant to, to clarify, but I believe that the existing signs that are on Montgomery Street kind of folded into this, so they would be allowed to stay. And then the other thing that'll change is, well, it's not necessarily a change, but if any new business comes in in the future, they have to comply with these signs.
This chart on page two of three, the four sign types and the sign maximum sizes described below, it lists, uh, you know, three different types of signs and then locations. But all but one of them say they're existing, so what does that even mean?
Well, that means, like I said, that the sign program is really wrapping in the existing signs, and the intent is that they're, they're already, um, they made a sign program around, around the signs that are already there.
I see.
And then the one that does not say existing is the new business that's, the new restaurant that's inside of the brewery.
I see, I see, okay.
The, you, you trigger the need for a comprehensive sign program by asking for more signs than would ordinarily be permitted, but it doesn't, it doesn't preclude you having some permitted signs already.
Already there, you just have to get that extra sign, you have to do the comprehensive plan under the ordinance, okay.
Right.
Any other questions for staff? I just have one myself. I think, Maura, you said something about the tenants fronting Ojai Avenue having a projecting, a projecting sign? Or did you mean it was the multi-tenant directory sign?
I was talking about the multi-tenant directory sign.
Okay, fine, 'cause I didn't see any other projecting signs for those folks. Alright, we've gotten the clarification from staff. Let's, let's bring the applicant up, sir. Thank you for your patience. I, I hope, I hope that we, that, that our grist mill makes the little pieces of you no smaller than has happened to the folks that have been here already this evening.
Yeah, I hope so, too. Uh, so, you, you described it pretty well. The intention is all the.
I'm sorry, did you identify yourself, sir?
Oh, I'm Eric Compton. I work for Dave Signs, and we're working for the Becker Group.
Okay, thank you.
I'm the applicant. The signs that are there now, the intention is that those will stay, and if, the, is this, was this attachment C or? This is our, the sign program that we made up, and if you look at page six of that, this is the directory sign. This is, this sign is new. And if you look at the next page, we don't, we don't have a design for the Samba sign, the wall sign, but it's, it's shown as tenant two, sign type A on page seven.
Near that left, is that a window there? Near the left window there?
I'm, I don't know if it's a window or not.
Is that a door? There's a wall that's kind of blocking. I can't tell if it's a door or a window. That's a door there, okay.
Actually, on our front page, there's a picture of the building.
Oh, okay, yeah. I've been there, but I can't remember that specifically. Not very often. Oh, I see it, yeah.
Alright. Any questions for the, for the applicant? You, you've laid out in your attachment C, the nine-page thing, what you're asking for.
Correct.
I, I guess I'd have one quick question.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Is, is the sign gonna be similar to the color and look of the Topa Topa Brewery sign that's currently there?
Um, you know, I, I don't really know. I, I would think it, so they did the design for the projecting sign, the directory.
Yeah, I saw that one.
I, I would imagine it's gonna match that, but actually, I don't know.
Okay.
Why, why does the projected group sign on page seven not have Topa Topa on it?
Um, I don't know the answer to that question either.
Okay.
You're talking about the, the directory sign.
Yeah, I mean, Sama is.
Says tenant one or two. One is the brewery and two is Sama.
I think it's because the Topa Topa Brewery's got, you know, everyone knows what it is, and it's got a big sign in front of it.
They don't need a sign.
So, these are signs for the sub-businesses confined them, I assume.
Yeah, I would even go a step further, I think.
Other tenants.
Yeah, I think certainly you're on a, a really good path there. It's internalized, Somas is internalized, so you're not really, that's kind of what, what sparked this discussion when the sign program was even discussed. It's a hidden, someone argues it's a hidden gem, you're not, you're not aware of it until you're there, right? The sign provides that.
Yeah, I didn't realize, 'cause I've been there a few times to prevent, and that's a separate business. But, you know, you think it's all one, because it's, you know, in the same big brewery building.
Which is probably partially, partially part of the reason why you're not seeing a Topa Topa sign there for one and two, instead you're seeing the Somas.
Yeah. It's the only eatery.
Other, other questions for the applicant? If not, I have a couple. On attachment C, page three, there is a table there showing tenant matrix, and it shows tenant one and two, that's the brewery and the restaurant. Page three of nine. And it shows a twelve-foot sign, a ten, a twelve-square-foot sign, and a ten-square-foot sign. Those are wall signs, the twelve-foot being the existing Topa Brewery wall sign.
Yes.
Okay, and then it says, a little notation off to the side there, if only one tenant occupies 345, that is facing Ojai Avenue, I guess, total square feet may be combined to twenty-two.
Correct.
Does twen, does a twenty-two-square-foot sign meet with the code?
Well, through a comprehensive sign program.
We can make it meet the code.
Make it whatever you want it to be. You don't have to meet the sign program. Or with, within reason, of course. You don't, I mean, I'm sorry, you do have to meet the sign, comprehensive sign program, but you can change the standards through this.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering if the notation in the packet submitted by the applicant becomes part of the code, or part of the sign program?
It becomes part, it is the sign program for the site.
Okay, so if little Sama moved out, then we might wind up with two signs facing Ojai Avenue that both say Topa Brewery.
Or one larger sign.
Would that require a change to the comprehensive sign program to, to have one twenty-two-square-foot sign? I'm not particularly worried about what the answer is, but I think we need to know what's legal here.
Right, so if you were to approve this comprehensive sign program, which states that there can be one twenty-two-square-foot sign, then that could come in, and if, then staff would look to make sure that it met the other requirements, which are on page three of three, which have, that has to be sandblasted, wood, um, single-sided, thus and such.
Same kind of design guideline.
Yes, it could be approved, because that's what it says in the sign program.
Okay, so conceivably, if little Sama moved out, and that drawing that we see down, sort of down low on the left-hand side of the front of the building, the old city garage, then Topa Brewery could, under this comprehensive sign program, take down that diamond-shaped sign they have up front right now, and put in a larger one that would encompass twenty-two square feet?
Yes.
That would all be allowable under this program?
Yes, it would.
Okay. That's a good clarification. Uh, sir, one other question. On your, on your page nine, it calls out the directory sign, the type D, at the corner of Ojai Avenue and Montgomery in the text. But then, it also calls out type D projecting signs. I think that's supposed to be a type C projecting sign?
No, it's the east.
I think it's D, 'cause it's, we're calling it a directory sign.
The directory sign. This is the projecting.
This is the multi-tenant directory sign. That's the ones that's up here at the corner.
Yeah, and then there's, these are the projecting ones.
Okay, if we go back to the table.
I think they already.
It's different. I think the projecting signs for the tenants, this is back to the staff report, page two, the projecting sign type C, maximum six square foot existing sign, those are projecting signs.
Fronting on Montgomery.
I'm sorry?
Fronting on Montgomery.
Yes, for tenant three and tenant four. So, those are existing signs, but if you go over to attachment C, page nine, it shows projecting sign type D, which is eight square feet. So, what are we actually approving here? Are we approving the existing six-foot projecting signs? Or are we approving eight-foot projecting signs, which could be involving taking down the existing projecting signs and putting up larger ones? I'm not sure I care what the answer is, but it doesn't, it's not internally consistent right now.
Oh, this one.
So, let me, let me see if I can get this right. I'm looking at, there is some inconsistencies here in terms of what I'm noticing, which is, if you look at attachment C, page eight of nine, and then you go over to page nine of nine, and you're looking at the east elevation, you're seeing tenant type C, and then you, so that's eight of nine, and that's.
And page nine says type D.
Two of those three signs, and then you're seeing type D for those three signs, so the.
My thought was, page nine should be saying type C for those two projecting signs.
For the two signs along Montgomery, further south. I would agree with that, but I would also go to the applicant to get clarification on that.
Yeah, I think that's a typo. I think that this sign, the, the, the directory sign, that's D.
Yeah, that's D.
And the ones that are there now.
That's the multi-tenant sign that goes up at the corner.
Yeah.
And the ones that are there now are the C, so this, this.
Okay.
Page eight of nine is correct.
So, you can correct that?
Page eight is correct. Page nine should change, change D to C.
Yes.
Correct, I think that's correct.
Yeah, that's, that's not right.
Okay. That's all I have for the applicant. Yes, go ahead, sir.
On your proposed resolution, 'cause I noticed this in the letter from the applicant. So, the applicant is the owner of the building?
No.
Well, we're working.
The Becker Group, says representative of the Becker Group submitted an application. So, they're representing the Becker Group. They own the building.
This is the representative.
I know, but the, the person, what we're approving it for is for the owner of the building. Who, who doesn't matter who files the application?
Yeah, the owner of the building isn't Becker Group. They manage the building.
Okay, they're, so that's who we have to enforce things with, ultimately, okay. So, then you go down, community development department conditions. So, the tenants have to get approval, the landlord. I don't know why we have that in our condition. That's an internal thing between them and the, and the landlord, it seems like.
We're now, we're now talking about the resolution itself. Yeah, I have a number of questions there.
So, I, I, you know, I don't know that we are in the business of telling the landlord who needs to get approval, but. So I, I, you know, I don't know that we are in the business of telling the landlord who needs to get approval, but I am the next one I have a problem with. The tenant shall be responsible for the repair and damage of any building caused by the installation, maintenance and the sign.
Right.
You know, the tenant could leave and the sign could fall apart and if they're the only ones responsible, I think the, the property owner, the, the applicant should be responsible.
Break, break.
For maintaining.
We're, we're into deliberations here rather than questions for the applicant.
No, we, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Finish off questions for the applicant.
Should finish off with the applicant.
Okay, sorry, I thought we were.
And, and in particular, and I know you're new, um, but I went through this same process myself. When I see an admin report, if I find things that are internally inconsistent, I'll call those out. If it's, if it's just changing puppies to small dogs and it's the.
Okay.
And it's the admin report, it doesn't matter. If it's the resolution itself, I think we need to make that as letter perfect as we can because that's a legal document.
Yeah, yeah.
So, when, when we get to deliberations, I have seven questions on the resolution myself, so we'll get to that. Uh, do we have any more questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Brian, do we have anybody else that appears to want to speak on?
No one online.
On item five? Okay, then we can open the public, we can open the public hearing on item five. I didn't have a card for you on item five, I'm sorry. I had four and six.
You, if you just turn it over, maybe you can make one for me.
All right, ahead, Bill.
I only have one comment, it's on page seven of nine, attachment C.
Page seven?
Of nine.
Sorry.
It has to do with the projected sign that tells people that there's businesses around Montgomery Street. I'd just like to know whether the letters are gonna actually say tenant? Or are they gonna indicate the business? It seems to me like.
I think the top picture shows what the sign more or less should look like and the bottom one is just a plan form.
Thank you.
I think he was kidding.
All right. Anyone else here present or in the waiting room who wishes to speak on item five?
There is no one on the waiting room.
Very good, then we'll close the public hearing and we'll go back to deliberations by the commission. Yes, ma'am?
I was just indicating that I'm here to answer your questions.
Oh, terrific, yeah. Okay. Well, Jeffrey's gone, I presume he'll be back, but I have some questions about the resolution. Let's go, this is all attachment A now, five pages worth. Page two, condition three, I think this is where Jeffrey was starting in on this. And, and we have had, we have had these discussions about other cases in the past. And I don't know the legalities of it, Epi can, can comment on this, but my personal feeling is if we're making, if we're making a decision here that, that outlines the management of the building, we should be saying that the building owner is responsible for maintaining the building. Anything, anything that involves owner and tenant seems to me is a private transaction, and as Jeff started to say, if, if a tenant moves out and the tenant is by law responsible, how does the city find the tenant to enforce that? I think making the building owner responsible is a better way to go.
May I just ask a question on your question?
Oh, please.
And that is, is Becker the management company for the building, or are they?
Does he own the building?
Does he own the building?
He manages it.
He manages it, so should we have the owner, if you want the owner?
Do we know who the owner of the building is?
Yeah, I don't have the name in front of me, but yes, we've, we've worked, sorry.
We've worked with them on a couple of different occasions. I will say this, though, um, the Becker Group, typically when we're working through, um, this, this property owner, we're working through the Becker Group first, they're pretty intimately involved with, with the property owner, so, and they're not local.
Who's not local?
The property owner.
Oh, okay.
Well.
It, it says property owner.
Responsible for a building, as opposed to, because, I mean, land use runs with the land, not with whoever's managing it.
I, I would, I would caution the commission and, and Legal can tell me if I'm wrong here, from putting it on to the management company instead of putting it on to the property owner.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's.
And let, let the management.
Property owner can delegate responsibility to anybody they want to, but they're still ultimately responsible.
Regulations run with the land, not with whoever happens to be managing it then.
Right.
The resolution lists the property owner as the Becker Group, so.
So that would need to be corrected.
Yeah.
I agree.
Right, first sentence, page one.
Oh, yeah, the Becker Group. So we could get rid of three there, then, because that's really not our business.
In the first recitation, then, the Becker Group should be re- replaced by whoever the building owner is. Good, there's one. Yeah, back to, uh, condition three. All tenants shall obtain landlord, landlord is the Becker Group? Or is landlord the building owner?
I don't even think.
When, when you were speaking to, to number three, but then we got off into the building manage, um, building, um, maintenance, you know, if a sign is removed or something, I was looking at number three and when we receive an application, it has to have property owner's signature on it. So, all tenants shall obtain landlord approval for signs, they have to have the property owner's signature on there. And I think if the property owner designates their property management for signing for them, then, then that, then that's who's signature is gonna be on there, but that's the intent.
Didn't understand who landlord was.
Okay.
But why is it any of our business?
Well, we, we need.
How it gets to be their approval?
Yeah.
I mean, the landlord.
Staff has, um, we're, we're, and I think the landlord probably should be replaced with property owner or designee. But, the intention is, is that there's, that we're receiving an application that, um, the property owner is aware of.
Right, oh, sure, sure. So in, 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 uh, condition three, then can we change landlord to property owner?
Yes.
Or designee?
Do we need something in writing from the?
I think, or, or delegate.
Or, or designee, or.
Or designee, or delegated authority, or whatever, I think is, is implied in normal legal parlance, is that right, Epi?
That's correct, yeah, that would be, that would be appropriate here.
So we don't, we don't need to add a bunch of other verbiage, we just say the property owner?
Never hurts to add the verbiage, but, uh.
Don't we need the, this approval to be submitted to the town, then, if we're actually regulating it? Otherwise, we wouldn't even know whether the landlord approved it or not.
Well, this, the application.
Thing between them.
The application is submitted to, um, the community development department and then when we receive the application, we make sure that there's a property owner's signature on it.
So, wouldn't that be better to say that the, any application for a sign ordinance must have the signature of approval from the property owner?
My, my original question was, how will the city know this condition has been fulfilled?
So, why don't we just say, when, any application for a sign, uh, approval needs to have the signature of the?
So I, I suggested adding wording, something like, a- at the, at the end of this, by submitting to the CDD a signed agreement with the landlord or property owner for the proposed signage.
Well, that, all they were saying is needed is just that the property owner signs the application that they approve it, is that right?
That's correct.
So why don't we just say that?
If the application shows all of the signs.
And then.
Then that's a signed agreement by the property owner, yes.
No, it's just an application to us.
When the next tenant comes in and they want to put a new sign up.
Yep. How do you know, how do you know what's gonna happen and how do you manage it?
Well, they submit a sign application, which has, um, a drawing of the sign and an application that has a property owner's signature. And we make sure that, we know that there's a sign program on that site because we look it up in our, you know, when we look up the, when we look up, uh, the address, we see that there's a sign program on the site. And we make sure that the sign that's being proposed complies with the sign program that was approved by the planning commission.
So why can't we just literally say that, that the application for the sign, uh, any sign approval must be signed by the owner? Or something to that effect.
Or is that already inherent in the application?
The tenant shall obtain property owner's, um, approval for signs prior to installing, so I think it's kind of implied.
Yeah.
I, I've got a question about this, and as relates to the brewery and the restaurant, one of which, I, I think you'd almost call the restaurant a, a tenant of the brewery, but I mean, it's, it, it's housed in the brewery. Do we really wanna make it a matter of simple math? Meaning, th- those two businesses leave and now you've got a big space and one person wants to take it over, do we really wanna add A plus B to come up with a, a sign that is the mathematical, um, addition of A plus B? Or, do we wanna put it back through some re- review?
Put it back to the twelve-foot sign?
Or put it back to something that can be reviewed by this body, so that, uh, you know, I, I, uh, I'm quite frankly afraid about a very large sign on, on the main street of town.
I agree.
I do wanna say that just as somebody who, reviewing signs on a regular basis, that I'm, I believe the intent is, and I could be wrong and the language may need to be, you know, more explicit, but that it would be a maximum, and not that you want it to be that big, but it would be a maximum of twenty-two, it wouldn't have to be twenty-two. If one business wanted to come in, okay.
But, but most, a lot of people with commercial interests want signs to be as big as they can be, whether or not it's, it's.
Yeah, that's, that's attachment C, page three, that's why, why ask the question in the first place? Do we really want a twenty-two-square-foot sign?
Well, if the business leaves and there's just one business, does that change the fact that there's not a comprehensive sign and plan anymore?
No, the comprehensive sign.
That has to do with the number of signs, not the number of businesses.
I see.
And the comprehensive sign program addresses the fact that there could be one business and one sign.
I see.
So I mean, yes, all I'm saying is, could we have a clause in there to say if these two businesses become combined, that the plan is, has to be reviewed before they can assume that they can have twenty-two feet to work with as a sign for that combined?
Or, or we could, or we could simply change the notation on page three.
Eliminate it.
That says, if only one tenant occupies three forty-five East Ohio Avenue, total square footage, total square feet, instead of may be combined to twenty-two, shall be twelve.
Or just take that out?
Well, then it leaves the question of, if there is no tenant two, what do we do with the tenant two sign? I guess my solution doesn't answer that either.
Yeah, I would say leave, probably leaving it in is appropriate, adjusting the square footage to a square footage that's, that's.
That's what's existing.
That's what's existing, so if it ends up being twelve, it ends up being, yeah, ten, fifteen.
And Topa Topa's been there on its own with a twelve-foot, twelve-square-foot sign.
Yeah, that's what's already on the building.
They, what, what they, um, came forward with initially.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see that, that notation changed. But let's, let's go, let's go, well, is there, is there agreement in the commission about what we do with this thing? What if Sama leaves, little Sama?
And what can we legally do in terms of practicality of writing that?
We can approve, this is a comprehensive sign program, we can make anything of it that we want. We could grant them forty-two extra signs.
But we're, we're conditioning on some future action that has not arrived yet.
Right.
So we have to describe it, can we do that?
Yes, within reason, I think, I, I think when, when staff and, when working with Dave Signs and the, um, management company, we were looking at the combination and just simply adding those two numbers together, that's really, that's the simple math there. It's not a matter of, oh, we came up with twenty-two because this is, this is what we thought was appropriate.
Oh, no, it's, it's clearly twelve plus ten.
Yeah, the question is, is reducing it to a level that is still appropriate to Commissioner Bennett's point. So is it twelve, is it fifteen? I mean, fifteen square feet is three by five, right? That's what you would typically see for, in terms of a sign.
All I'm thinking is, if tenant two goes away, then, then I, I feel like that ten-square-foot sign should go away. I don't mean that it needs to be removed from the building, maybe it just becomes a bulletin, a community bulletin board or something, but if a new tenant two were acquired by the building management, there'd be a ten-foot sign there for them to use. And so I would just propose to have the note next to the table on page three of attachment C, say, total square feet shall be twelve. Page three, work for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Without, without prejudice.
Sure.
Because if tenant two comes back, there's still a tenant two sign.
I'm not arguing that. I, what I wanna do is give this commission some more information.
Great.
So the property owner is obviously not Becker Group, but they closely manage this property, so anytime that we're working with, um, this, this building and the tenants that are within it, we first start with the Becker Group. But underlying the Becker Group is a company referred to as Michelle R. Kim Trust, and that's the owner of the building.
Is it a person?
Yes.
A trust is not a person, it's not, other than legally, it's not a person.
Right, but that's who, that's, that's the entity that owns the building, manage, and the management, then, is the responsibility of Becker Group at this time.
Well, it gets deeper, deeper and deeper.
I mean, look, as a practical matter, people walk in there thinking that the restaurant is, the, that the, is the bar in the restaurant.
It's all one thing, yes.
They think it's all Topa Brewery.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And, and Sama wants some recognition. Reasonable?
Well, I think maybe they're probably, I'm guessing, they're thinking that, most people just think it's a brewery unless they happen to go in there and go back there and say, oh, I could buy some food. So they're probably trying to.
Oh, okay.
Market that.
Make the public aware of.
If you're walking down the street, oh, there's an eatery, it's not just, not just beer.
Seems very reasonable, yeah.
It's like a marketing thing, I think, I suspect.
Public awareness thing, yeah. Okay. Condition five, I think this is where Jeff was going. I think the property owner should be responsible for the repair and any damage to any part of the building. Cause it's the property owner's building.
Yeah, definitely.
Instead of tenant, I think it should be property owner.
Noted.
And then let, let the property owner and the tenants and the management, whatever, work it out amongst themselves. But we need, we need a belly button, and if the tenant walks away, we don't have one. Attachment two, attachment A, page two, table? Oh, something said the, um, oh, this was back in attachment C, it said the type D sign was existing? Was that right?
All but one were existing according to this.
I'm sorry. I think it's in the admin report. Yes, is the type D sign actually existing?
On the admin report?
The type D sign is not existing, that's the one that's at the corner.
Two new ones coming.
Oh, the eight-foot total one is, but that is existing.
I don't, I don't see two new ones, I only see one new one.
The, the, the Somas ten-foot square sign will be one new sign.
Okay, right, the tenant two sign and the multi- The tenant-two sign and the multi-tenant directory sign are new. Okay.
Exactly. Although there is a sign there now, but it is not as comprehensive as the new one will be.
As the new illustration. Okay.
Can, can we ask them in the context of this to remove the folding sign that they put down on the corner?
Yes.
Sandwich board?
Sandwich board?
Yeah.
Woo-boy! There are san, there are sandwich boards all over this town right now.
Is there any way to regulate those?
Sure there is, but we don't have any regulations for it.
But this isn't.
Right. We, this was a big, a big.
Yeah, I think for the context of what we're talking about here.
A couple of years ago.
I believe the A-frame signs are governed under a different, all, obviously within the sign program, sign standards of our existing code. Taking that away is probably a little bit more restrictive than what we would typically see. I would probably caution this commission to stay away from that.
You mean, take away someone's individual sandwich boards that are regulated elsewhere?
Right.
For all businesses?
Right.
Is there a time limit on sandwich boards?
That I don't, I don't remember off the top of my head.
I suspect it's something like the operating hours of the business that's advertised.
I see.
But I don't, I don't recall for sure.
Size limit, height limitations, yes.
I see. Mr. Quillisi, number six. It's no big deal, but I assume that's up to you, Lucas, to decide whether the sign has been painted in a professional manner and in professional design.
Yeah.
Staff reviews the signs when they, when they come in and, so yes, it's.
I don't like that kind of language because it means nothing.
Are you looking for?
I don't know that we should, why don't just say you, you know, you approved the signs, but.
Well, professional and workmanlike and things of that sort are standard legal language, and I'm not sure that any of them ever actually get adjudicated.
I don't know how you could.
But they're, they're, in there is sort of a warning to people, I think.
That it's going to have to be professionally.
And it continues.
Does that mean a professional has to do it?
It also continues on that the colors and materials have to match the, the colors and materials that are, that are included in the program.
So it has to be a professional sign maker, I guess.
Condition nine, sign, I think, should be signs or signage.
Yeah.
We'll change that to signage?
Your choice.
Okay.
But it's not a single sign.
Understood.
Condition 10 says, "Which would require planning commission approval." I don't think that is correct. I think the CDD has the authority to approve minor changes.
There's a.
Without PC review.
There should be a period after department, Community Development Department. And you're correct, which would require planning commission approval.
Yeah, I was thinking of something.
Well, no, actually, I want to take that back. Any modification from the design must be reviewed and approved by the Community Development Department, which would then, well.
Do you recommend it?
I'm, I'm going to just say what it, what it should mean, and then we can change the words. But any minor change can be reviewed by the director and potentially approved. However, it, any, anything that's not minor will have to come back to the planning commission.
Yeah, I, I was thinking just changing number 10 to say that I would take out "which would" and say, "or may require planning commission approval depending on the specific changes."
Well, so they, do we have a definition of major and minor? Is that what we're looking at?
That's up to, up to the director generally.
The director sort of determines if a minor change has been made, that he could approve it, but of course, the applicant, he has the right to determine what's major and minor, and then the applicant could appeal that, and then.
Yeah, here's, here's the interesting thing. It really is up to the commission. If the commission, like for instance, if an A, if, if a wall-mounted sign or a projecting sign ends up getting changed, meaning the, the size of it or the materials, they're recommending modifications to it. Let's say the prop, let's say the property owner sells the property, a new property comes, comes in, anytime that, that you see that, a lot of times, they're always looking at.
Changes everything to purple and lime green.
Changes, yeah, they're always looking at changes. So if the commission wants to put some sort of a stamp on what that minor piece could look like or what that major piece could look like, you could certainly put that within the conditions and identify what that is.
I'm perfectly happy letting Lucas decide if something is major or minor, and if he decides it's major, then we probably should look at it.
So do we need to say that in there?
We, we could, we could just change the "which would" to "major changes."
Major changes.
Or, or may require planning commission approval.
Well, that's, no, I'm saying that would, that would stay. All we're doing is changing two words, "which would," into "major changes."
Oh, change "which would" to "major," put a semicolon and "major changes."
Which would what?
Major changes then would require planning commission approval.
Well, why don't we put any minor modifications and then say, where major changes would require approval?
Well, even a major change has to go through him before it gets to us.
I see.
And a major, and a minor change stops with him.
Right. And the processing would still start at CDD and then continue through.
A major change would be a recommendation, not an approval.
Correct.
So it's slightly different.
Good words.
Thank you.
Okay.
Whatever.
Number 11 has that phrase again, "which would require planning commission approval." This feels like a specific example of the modification noted in number 10.
I would assume that if they're adding.
I'm not sure that number 11 is even needed.
But if they're adding new signs that are not part of the plan, is that what you're talking about? Additional signs?
And that would be a modification, as Chair Quillisi just said, which would be the same as number 10.
Well, we could, again, after Community Development Department, we could, we could put a semicolon and put the same caveat, "major changes would require."
But this is not changes, this is actual signs.
Yeah, these are new signs.
These are new signs. So it would seem to me that you would need to go to the planning commission if they're going to add new signs.
Yeah, I would agree with that because I think this is really getting this.
Kill this.
Okay, yeah, 10 was identifying modifications, and that's not necessarily saying additional signs.
11 says new signs, and that comes back to us.
Correct.
You would not consider that minor.
I would not consider that minor.
Great, okay, so we leave 11 the way it is.
No, no, we just say that.
I would leave it in because that gives express authority.
Right, I just jump in here. Even if it seems redundant, it's better to have the, this in the resolution just to, so that we have something to point to.
Clarify, okay.
As opposed to just saying, "Oh, no," in, in the code. It's always better with the fail-safe systems.
So it should say the approval of the planning commission. That should just take out the other stuff in between without approval of the planning commission because that's essentially what you're requiring.
Well, there could be a.
He's making recommendations.
Could take out "which" and put in "and," "and would require planning commission approval."
Yeah, but even if the, the Community Development didn't approve it and we did, then that's who would decide.
Well, if he didn't approve it, then, then the applicant could appeal it to us, but we might never hear of it.
Exactly, we wouldn't see it.
I don't know. I mean, if someone has a building and they want to put a new sign in, it's, and the, the decision is the planning commission, then it should come to the planning commission. But everything always goes to the Community Development Director first.
Right.
To review and give us recommendations.
What this is saying, yeah.
No, it says approval of the Community Development Director. That's different than a recommendation.
Well, right, but it's going through him first, then it gets that, and then he approves it. Yeah, I got it.
It's confusing sounding, anyway.
What do you think, Epi?
I think it's, it's fine as written. I understand Commissioner Starkweather's concern, but I, I, like Commissioner Trent was saying, I don't envision.
Okay, well, stat number 11.
Yeah, let's keep it as is.
Number 12, I think we're back to the same argument as for number five.
Yeah.
We'll make that the property owner.
The property owner is going to remove the sign?
They can, they can direct the tenant to do it.
I got you.
They're responsible.
But they're responsible for it.
Got it, cool.
And page. And that's it for me. The rest of it was attachment C, stuff that we already covered.
All right.
Any other, any other refinements from commissioners?
Well, when you get into C on page four or five, because it, over here, it talks about the owner-applicant, which makes, seems to make sense. We should probably duplicate that language over here.
Said page four of five. Oh, okay.
Where it says, "If the applicant assumes," shouldn't it be the owner applicant just be consistent all the way through?
Probably should put owner applicant. You're talking owner, property owner, applicant.
Well, that's what you have over here, legal, the owner applicant on behalf of itself or whatever. So I just, I would think like you keep that language just consistent.
So change, change 12C to read the same as 12A.
Yeah, so that's just all, every, everything, every reference to the person responsible is the owner applicant.
Yeah.
So the last two paragraphs just have the applicant. The owner could say, "Well."
Good catch.
Yep.
Have we beat this horse to death?
I think so.
Well, I see. This is an interesting property because it's a great, big, flexible building and likely in the, in the life of it to have all sorts of configuration, commercial configurations.
Yeah, that's true.
And I want to make sure that it comes back. If it's anything substantial, it comes back.
Right.
No way to sort of use what we've done to stop that.
So as I see it in our deliberations, we have come up with changes to the first recital to conditions three, five, nine, 10, 12, and 12C. Is that what you have?
Well, all the way through this, because on B, there's, just gives the applicant, so just.
Oh, okay.
Just consistent language wherever.
Throughout 12, just make sure wherever applicant appears, it says owner applicant. And then attachment C, page three, the table, we changed, "shall be a combined, shall be combined to 22 to shall be 12." Any other changes that we suggested here?
I don't think so.
Then, then a, a guess here, please go ahead.
Did we also talk about eight of nine and nine of nine in terms of the consistencies? But I think was sign D versus sign C.
That's right.
Making sure that, that.
Page nine of nine, we agreed page eight was correct.
Yes.
Page nine, the type D in each case for the tenant three and four should say type C.
For consi, yes, for consistency.
Very good.
Way to catch that.
So what would be appropriate at this time is a motion to approve the side, the comprehensive sign program in question.
Go ahead, yeah.
With the changes that have been brought out in our deliberation.
I'll make that motion.
Make the motion.
I'll second it.
All right, there we go.
Very good.
I'm a quick motioner.
Yeah. You're a quick mover.
No much, I just like move things along, you know?
All right. Any discussion?
Is it clear? You've got all the changes. You don't need us to respell it out.
Yeah, cool, great. Brian, call a roll, please, on item five.
Quillisi?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
And Starkweather?
Yes.
Terrific. Item six.
Yeah.
Priorities of planning commission and the CDD. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
You didn't want to wait till after midnight?
Looks to me like, Lucas, we have, we have take the, taken the first step on formula business ordinance. It will come back.
Yep, so we've got two items going to council on formula business, one item that will come back to this body at, at a date not certain, but just understand that it will be sooner rather than later. The, let's see, are there other items? Okay, so general plan update, elements, affordable housing goals and policies. I think it's important to note with that one, I know that was just a, an item that was added as a priority, understanding that that's going to be the top priority for this commission. On July 28th, there is a planned workshop for, for the general plan update. So just mark your calendars, that's a Thursday.
Eight o'clock in the morning until midnight?
Till, till way past dark.
It's a 5:30 to 7:30.
Oh, okay.
And it'll be at Kent.
Ah, okay.
I know I mentioned this at a previous meeting, but I think it's, I'll be mentioning it every meeting.
July 28th, 5:30 to 7:30.
Yep.
Are you saying that we'll just be looking at the affordable housing goals on July 28th?
A piece to that. So it's not necessarily the housing goals. We're focusing, the general plan update is, is encompassing about five different elements. Housing element is within that. What this workshop is going to focus on is two of those, transportation and land use.
Transportation and land use.
I had the transportation, land use and transportation workshop as 3:30.
Mm-mm. You can show up at 3:30 if you'd like and, and wait at Kent Hall until it starts.
Transportation and, and land use?
It starts at 5:30 though.
Land use and transportation workshop.
Everything is land use, okay.
So this is 5:30 to 7:30.
Yep.
What is going to be the process? We're not just going to sit here and start BSing, I assume.
I don't know, it'll be interactive. It'll be interactive.
Process.
That's the whole point.
This is at Kent Hall, which is next door.
We've just visited, some of us did, anyway.
Yep. It's a recently renovated and open for.
It's nice, very nice. They got to get the kitchen going though because we, you know, we got to have a drink.
There's some more work to be done with that, for sure.
Anything else you'd like to add to discussion of this list of priorities?
Could you just, what date are you talking about? The 28th?
28th, the Thursday.
The Thursday.
I, I want to mention one thing here.
It wasn't on your calendar.
So we have a parking committee supposed to be, it's kind of a weird parking committee because it's just two commissioners and gets some staff.
Council members, there's two council members.
Shouldn't we?
Can't be three.
I realize that, but shouldn't we actually have a real planning subcommittee or something where we, we have a little more of the community involved and maybe somebody on the planning board and actually get some input about, you know, just two city council members? I don't know how you're actually getting any sense of what's needed.
I think what's, what the.
They're just walking around asking?
Yeah, I don't want to get into the details on it, but I, I think what the purpose of, of having the ad hoc committee with the two council members is to, is to kind of gauge and figure out what sort of parking situation or problem there is or there isn't. And then from that.
Come back to us with more specific guidance on things we look at.
Right, I think from a processing standpoint, that it'd come back to the full council, and then they'd give direction that then would come to this body.
But it's, well, of course, it's not for me to question the council, but it just seems like, how do you know what the problem is if you're not out in the community and getting their input?
I think it's more than just the two.
But also.
There's some staff members that are involved in that as well. So I, I would say this, the, the council has already started taking, taking a step forward on that. I think it's this body's duty to wait, to, it's a kind of a wait and see.
Guess we have to just comment.
No, it's, it's a fair comment.
Okay. Okay. Anything else on item six? Great. Item seven.
You're going to come in on it.
I apologize, I apologize. I did have one that said it, it.
Are we gonna be able to get any item that he doesn't comment on?
No. Please come up, sir.
Uh, Bill Myler, this is actually the one I came for. And, you know, I've gotten involved in all the rest, so. So, one element of the general plan I have lots of interest in is the noise element. So, I just refreshed my memory yesterday evening by perusing the whole thing. It looks like, and I hadn't seen it in twenty years, it looks like it's been prepared, it was prepared by a technically skilled author with editing to fit the plan's format. There's a lot in it. I expect there is not much to update that, except for integrating it into the other elements of the new plan. However, considering Ojai seems to be getting louder, in my opinion, examining it, examining the element could show better ways of dampening down peak noises, troubling mufflers, and repetitive intrusive sounds like pickleball pops. I would hope your commission places, I would hope your commission places this, noise element, the noise element, on your agenda for a full review, especially how it is supported by the Ojai City Municipal Code. Noise ordinance. Our noise ordinance, in my opinion, is very weak on noise complaints and their enforcement. And this opinion has been formed by my participation in two main noise issues that the city council has dealt with over the last year or so. In which, both of which are still not completely resolved, one of which is very actively ongoing. Paragraph. New technology is available with decibel meters having digital memory for various recording times, second minutes, hours, days, with a calendar, so you know when it is, how often. And it can be offloaded into a computer for data and for record keeping and presentations. Our city needs much better digital recording ability that covers time periods rather than one moment. Does your call, the officer shows up, gate enforcement, I don't hear anything, because I have to hear it in order to enforce it. Now, what should happen is, there's a digital recorder there for hours or whatever, as a standard procedure in the ordinance to get that. And I think you mentioned that somewhere about digital recorders, someplace, okay. Oh, at the, at the Pacific Bell thing, yeah. Our city needs much better, yeah. Our city needs much better digital recording ability that covers time periods rather than one moment for noise code education, code education enforcement. Also, the state legislature just recently approved a pilot program for five cities to be named to street measure roadway vehicle sounds. Because they recognize it's getting louder and louder. And they're also gonna do video so they can capture license plates. All research. The results will hopefully reduce road physical noise. And when completed, the study results will return to the legislature for review and maybe law enforcement enactment. In the last week or so, driving on Ojai Avenue from the Y, you know this, to Kenyatta Street, the new pavement changes the road noise from vehicle travel. And while I was waiting over here, I looked up some evidence, the state says that rubberized asphalt concrete can reduce road noise forty percent and beyond. So last.
Two DB.
A new concept for me is soundscape mapping. The national parks are doing this now, other cities are doing this. We need to consider it here and hopefully build it into our ordinance so we can do it annually and knows, know what the noise levels in, are in various parts of the city, mainly downtown. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
Could I ask questions on the follow-up of that? So, um, do we have a proposed noise element?
Yeah, I should just.
There is a noise element in the, in the general plan.
Existing, we're gonna go over one.
Well, hold on. I think I should be clear that this update, this general plan update only is doing major changes or updates to five of those elements.
I see.
The housing element, land use element, transportation element, safety element. And the new one, which is being folded into all of the elements, is the environmental.
Beloved environmental justice.
So if we were to deal that, the council would have to ask us to look at that.
Take a closer look at it.
It's not within our current.
There's updates to the rest of the elements, but it's for consistency with state law and the rest of the elements that are receiving updates. So if there's policies that are being adjusted, it's gotta make sure that it's consistent throughout the rest, the rest of the elements.
So the kind of expansive stuff that Mr. Myler was talking about would probably need to be lobbied directly to the council and say, we would like.
Like to have you ask the planning commission to look into this.
Yeah, because.
Yes.
Huh? You could lobby that. Personally? You may know, he could lobby it.
Yeah.
Oh, like, I could lobby it, but I'd probably get in trouble.
He could, he could lobby it.
He can lobby it. Um, the other thing, well, we'll get into commissioner comments, but this, when he mentioned the enforcement thing, that made me think about something, anyway. Oh, maybe I'll wait on that.
Let's come back. Item seven, future agenda items. Could you give us twenty-five words on what the things on July sixth are all about? Or would you?
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at a concept review for the former bowling alley, which is.
Oh, twelve oh-two East Ojai Avenue, yes, okay.
Which one is that? That's line?
Ojai Mountain Farms.
Yep.
Ojai Mountain Farms.
We've seen a couple of plans for that property in the past and.
What are we looking at? What are they talking about?
Well, we'll see it on the sixth.
Don't you wanna give us some?
I can't give you a whole lot of information on it.
A concept review is.
I can just tell you that it is ready to move forward for concept review and comments.
I see, okay.
As, as you may recall, a concept review is where they come, talk about what they wanna do, we give them feedback and they go away.
Yep, no decision, it's, a lot of pressure's taken off the commission, but the applicant certainly wants to hear from the commission in terms of, of where it's at at this point.
But we're gonna get something in our packet in advance so we can see what it is, so we can be ready to respond.
You'll have plans, a description.
It's a regular, it's a regular case, it's just a con, concept review instead of a DRP.
I see, okay, okay. Sure.
Structured. Yeah, the staff report's structured a little bit differently because instead of a recommendation, we're providing comments and typically there's feedback from, even from the staff level.
But it's not, it's not a joint. Everybody can do their own feedback, I guess. We're not gonna come together and agree on what the feedback is, or do we?
No, it's, well, yeah, I mean, you could. I think we all ought to talk about it.
Yep. Identify some concerns that you're seeing as an individual commissioner.
I guess to the extent that we agree on them, that would be more powerful with the, with the applicant.
But I, I take it as my job to make sure that each commissioner's thoughts and feedback are included in what the applicant hears.
Good, sounds good. That'll be fun.
And the lot line adjustment is, that, I didn't realize there were two parcels there.
Yeah, there are.
Two fourteen, Brian. One, one has the, the buildings on it and the other is the open storage area.
However, the line goes over one of the buildings. So we have, we have an issue with the, one of the property lines going over, directly over one of the buildings. So we're looking to address that. But there's been some other things that we've looked into. This commission was gonna see this item earlier, but there's, we've had to do a deeper dive to make sure we're checking all the boxes.
More questions asked and answered.
We kept having more questions and then the, those responses led to more questions, so I think we've exhausted the questions and now we're ready to take it forward.
Given the applicant time period of people at the, we, we already know what we're gonna cover. There's not, there's nothing that can be added, I assume, or can?
Um, there could be another item or two, not likely two, but there could be another item added.
Tentative agenda items, these dates.
But they have a deadline for getting in their application.
If, if it's a public hearing, then certainly they have basically next week.
I see.
The lot line adjustment is definitely a public hearing.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Concept review is not.
It is not, but we typically provide notification to the surrounding neighbors.
Notice the three hundred foot margin.
Right. Probably won't go into paper, but I think we're gonna do the three hundred foot radius.
Okay. And then the twentieth, we'll have the twenty-one units on Olive Street.
Yep, as a concept review, and then on top of that, we've, we'll be seeing the wireless facility back.
Follow-up on AT&T.
Yep.
Okay? And.
And there's a couple other items that.
Somewhere is ten-ten West.
Yes, it is, oh yeah, that's, it's on pending right now. Ten-ten West, they're, they're reviewing their whole plan right now, given the concepts that we've, and the code sections that we've identified to them that they need to comply with.
And when the time comes for a joint meeting with city council, we'll have enough warning that we can discuss it at one of our meetings beforehand.
What are they looking for a joint meeting on?
Wait, you're, what, what we were just talking about? I'm sorry, I wasn't listening. I mean, I was listening, but I don't think I was completely understanding.
Joint meeting with city council.
Oh, yes, the joint meeting with city council. Um, that, I can't say for certain when the date is, but I think we're about probably two months out from it.
And what'll be about?
So the, you're, you're not familiar with the joint meetings? They, they typically cover the work program that we've looked at. The item that we had earlier this evening, the formula business, is a part of that, that work program. So you're always, we're always checking in with council. Previously, they've been done twice a year. It all depends on the progress. I think our last one was August of last year, I wanna say, or was it September?
Been a while.
Trying to remember.
Uh-huh.
Um, but we're, we're just about due for another one, I would say, a check-in.
Any more questions about the future agendas?
Is Bill Wyrick our guy now?
That's, that's, that's an assignment that the city council makes on its members on a quarterly basis. I'm not sure who it is right now.
I think it's, I think it's council member Blatz.
He was, he was here last.
Right. I, I think Commissioner Trent is right in that, uh, council member Blatz was at the, the last meeting and even spoke, I think, at the end. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, directors report. Anything else you wanna add to the, to the stew here?
Nothing this evening.
Okay.
I think I've done enough.
Uh, commission member reports, anything that you wanna add for general consumption?
I have a few, real quick.
Let's be brief.
One is the municipal council. On the twentieth, they're gonna have a very important meeting.
Municipal area council, yeah.
Municipal area council on the chain, the MAC, the MAC.
Are you looking to go to that?
I go to them all, so regardless, but I'm not suggesting you change your schedule here, but this is, this is related to something that I brought up, that they're gonna be talking about the changing, they were out of compliance with state law and they were using what's called level of service and they're supposed to be using vehicle miles travel for looking at.
That was something I was gonna ask about with the sign pro, was it the sign program or the other?
I did see some, something that looked like LOS in here, but I can't even remember it now.
Yes.
It looked like you, they were applying LOS rather than VMT, because it, it talked about the level of service. I forgot about that, but it, in one of these things, it might have been that one.
Why, it was the wireless facility.
Yeah, it talked about LOS essentially. It said, and it should be VMT, because that's the state law. So I don't know if that is relevant. We got time, since it's coming back. I, I forgot about that. I, I noticed it.
I remember, I, I had written down that question and I forgot to ask it. This was in the resolution, page five, sub paragraphs five through seven. They all address effects of the project on LOS and I think it should be VMT now.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember that. Glad you reminded me of that. Anyway, I would highly recommend everybody come to that meeting, because it does also affect City of Ojai, because this is the county's regulations around the issue of vehicle travel for new.
Won't you have them all wired up by then, so we can watch it from?
God, we need to put, we, I wish we would pass a resolution asking them to videotape their meetings, but I don't know if that's appropriate. But, uh, I think they should.
People will see it and people may have questions.
I think they need to, but, uh, so far, they said, we don't like to be on, on.
We don't like a permanent record of what we said.
Yeah, that's what they said. We might say something and people don't like to hear. And I thought, that's crazy.
Yeah.
It's like a jaw drop.
So, uh, can we make a resolution asking them to videotape their meetings and make them public?
I think that is more appropriate coming from the city council.
Okay, okay. Um, okay. So anyway, um, the other issue I had, I talked to Lucas about it, is, um, the parking lot behind the AT&T building, behind the museum?
Behind the museum.
Behind the museum. Um, that was part of a, as I understand from talking to city council members, that was part of a, an initial CUP and it was some kind of vague agreement that it was gonna be public space.
That we could have some museum parking using that space, I think, yeah.
They supposedly wanted so many, was it eight? But they're not using any of those spots, because they don't have people working there anymore. Because it's, you know, wireless. And they come in to fix, or I don't know, they bring in trucks, but they go inside that gated area. So we have this parking lot out here that's not being maintained, that doesn't have good signage, and we're complaining about parking and that's like right downtown. So, uh, I would request that we, we, if we can enforce anything, that we ask them to upgrade that or do something, because it's kind of a waste.
Yeah, well, I, I would ask Epi, is it within the city's police powers to dictate the condition of private parking?
Supposedly it's public parking. They agreed to make a.
But it's private property. It's parking on private property.
Right, I, I'd have to review the code, um, about what the, the Ojai Municipal Code says here, but, um, no, as far as I'm aware, the fact that they open it up to the public as long as it's, it's safe for, you know, the parking of public cars and there's no hazards involved.
Well, I think that, that's part of the question.
Right, right. So I, I think I'd have to know more about the factual situation than just what I'm, what I'm hearing first time tonight.
Bill Wyrick was the one who told me that this was part of an agreement that was made, that they were gonna make that public, all the spots they didn't use.
In, in return for some sort of consideration?
They were allowed to go up higher than they would have been ordinary. They were gonna go underground and there was some kind of a problem with.
Yeah, I don't wanna get into the details, but it's true.
It's a complicated thing, but that was a deal that was made.
From the, it's from the seventies. The, the reality is, is that that parking lot has eight spaces that are dedicated. Starkweather's correct.
Dedicated to AT&T?
Dedicated to, to public purpose, public benefit. Um, the, the only other mechanism that we would have is to reach out to them and identify inconsistencies that they have, either with landscaping or with striping of the, of the parking lot.
Hazard to public safety or some words like that.
We have to tie it to that to some degree. Um, and we gotta make sure that we're, like Epi was saying, we're tying it directly to the code. And we're specifically going after those, those compliance regulations through the code. So, it doesn't necessarily need any sort of action from this body.
No, I didn't, I was just bringing that, because I, I didn't wanna just not have it become public. But the other issue is the signage, can we do anything? We're like, it's just about requesting the town to look at it.
Yeah, so the, you're talking about like wayfinding signage for, from a.
It would be, see, they have a sign there, but it doesn't say public parking. It just says, when you can't park. So it oughta say, public parking, and then when you can't park. And then it would be nice on Ojai Avenue to have a sign saying, parking lot, free, like all towns.
Something like free parking, you know, we have that on Montgomery that, that has an arrow.
Faces public parking that way.
Mm-hmm.
But they might give it all to them, because they're not even using any of them.
It stayed, it's been vacant. I don't know if anybody's driven or walked by it, but it's pretty vacant.
I've walked, I've walked by it a lot.
Yeah, and there's, and never any cars in there.
The, the surface is in kind of rough condition.
Very bad. It's a, it's a lawsuit waiting to happen.
And the cars that are in there are not.
Who would they sue?
Not their employees.
City?
Whoever owns the lot and that would be.
That's AT&T.
Of course, there's also a homeless shelter right there too, right in the middle of it.
In the middle of the parking lot?
There's, there's a wall. When you go into that parking lot, it goes like this, right when you walk into it.
Yeah.
It's kind of part of. It's kind of part of blocking. And right behind there, there's a guy that is permanently living there, as I've talked to him before, and he leaves all his crap there too.
So we're working on that internally to address it.
Not a homeless shelter. Okay. Is that, is that the end of your report, sir?
Uh, there was something else, but I'll wait on it, because it's more detailed. I'll talk to you privately about it.
Okay. All right. Hearing no other evident business before the commission at eight, eleven thirty-one, we are adjourned. Thank you all.